All right, welcome everyone to the city council meeting for this evening. Happy Election Day. I hope you have all voted. If not, you still have time. City Clerk, could we get a call to order?
Mayor Pro Tim Betancourt.
Here.
Council members Bishop.
Here.
Loa.
Here.
Osen.
Here.
And Alakon.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Mr. Austin Bishop, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
It would be an honor and a privilege.
Okay.
We're going to do a brief moment of silence after the pledge, so. Everyone put your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. City Clerk, if you will please play the public code of conduct.
Ladies and gentlemen, may I please have your attention? The meeting of the Palmdale City Council is now in order. A code of conduct will now be read, and we request that you comply with it to ensure the efficient administration of the meeting. Members of the public, it is your right to participate in today's city council meeting, and the council encourages such participation. However, the right of the public to address the council must be balanced with the need to ensure that public comment does not interfere with the orderly course of the council's business. All are reminded to abide by the following rules. Speakers must cease speaking immediately when their time has ended. Public comment on agenda items must relate to the subject matter of that item. General public comment is limited to subjects within the jurisdiction of the council. Public comment does not include the right to engage in a dialogue with council members or staff. Please remain respectful of the form and refrain from uttering, writing, or displaying profane, personal, threatening, derogatory, demeaning, or other abusive statements towards the council, any member thereof, staff, or any other person. Members of the audience should be respectful of the views expressed by speakers, staff, and council members, and may not excessively clap, cheer, whistle, or otherwise disrupt the orderly conduct of the meeting. Any person engaging in conduct that disrupts the meeting is subject to being removed from the council meeting. Finally, if you witness conduct or behavior by other members of the public that disrupts your ability to remain engaged or participate in this meeting, please notify city staff. Thank you for your cooperation.
Thank you very much for that. And as the Chair of this meeting, as the Presiding Officer of this, I would like to remind everyone that the city follows the Rosenberg's Rules of Order, and this meeting will be conducted in accordance with those rules of decorum and procedure. Disruptions cannot and will not be tolerated. If a disruption occurs, first I will issue a warning and request that the disturbance ceases. If another disruption occurs, I will recess the meeting for 10 minutes to allow everyone to compose themselves and ask the deputies to clear the room. After a 10-minute break, we will resume the meeting. If a third disruption occurs in accordance with the Brown Act, I will either clear the entire room and have the individuals who are disrupting the meeting removed from the room. There'll be a first step that would be a warning to you that you're being disruptive or that you're causing a disturbance. The second step, I have the right to call a 10-minute recess and ask that the deputies clear the room and then bring you back in 10 minutes later. And the third step, or excuse me, the third step would be the third disruption. The city must conduct its business, and we will not allow you to be in the council chambers, but we would still conduct our meeting. So yeah, there's three steps. Let's hope that we don't have to use them. Hope everyone's on their best behavior. All right, so right now, we're going to watch a cute critter video. Thank you. City Clerk, will you please acknowledge the observances for the month of November?
The City of Palmdale would like to acknowledge the following observances: Long Cancer Awareness Month, National Native American Heritage Month, and also Veterans Day on the 11th.
Thank you. City Manager, are there any items to pull from the agenda? No items. All right, then we'll move into item number four, which is now is the time for public participation, and we'll call for public comments. Do we have speaker cards?
Will the following individuals come forward for this section? Jason Zink and Ben Goke.
Is Ben here? Come on up. Oh, hi, Ben. I recognize you. All right, Jason, carry on.
Yeah, this is regarding the closed section I read on the paper today. And I'm kind of disturbed that a city council member or a member of the public would have to sue their city to find out about billing records with a city attorney.
Is this the consent calendar? This will be a non-agenda public comment?
This is not non-agenda. This is... This is supposed to be for consent and for closed session.
No.
Just consent.
Just consent.
Right now.
Oh, just consent?
Yeah.
Okay. That wasn't stated, so. Okay. Regarding the, I'm just happy with 4.6, which is a city sewer master plan. I'd like to see that, I'm glad to see the city's doing this, and to make sure all of Palmdale and the areas in the sphere of influence of Palmdale are included in this plan, because there's a lot of areas in Palmdale that have no sewers, and we need to master plan this, and it should have been done when the general plan was being done. Also, the 45th Street East trunk line to bring sewers at Four Points, I'm glad to see that moving. And then the acceptance of Sam Yellen Park Phase Two. I was, although I'm very happy that we have Sam Yellen Park, I was very disappointed in the way it was developed and built without any... I don't understand the elevations of why it's way up here and the people can't even see the kids play at the park. There's no fountains, there's no Mr. Fountains, there's no trees along the sidewalk where people can have shade when they're walking along the sidewalk on Avenue S or inside the park. There's no basketball courts. I mean, this is a 20-acre park. To think that there's no basketball courts, there's no chargers to charge your phone. They got these benches where they have shade on top with a solar panel, and you can sit there and charge your phone. This is 2025. There's no grass in the dog park, there's nothing for the dogs to practice and do tricks on and teach them. I would just think with $18 million, so much more could have been done to make this a better park. Those kids are playing in those fusel courts, and there's no shade. And there's no shade for the people watching the kids. There's no pickleball courts. You know, it's great to build things for kids, but maybe for people my age, you know, 50 and over, maybe we'd like to play pickleball. So maybe one of those courts can be converted. But the elevations on this park, I've never seen any park like it in my life. And I am deeply disappointed that things... The community building should have been twice as big, it should have had a district office there for the 5th District. It's just, there has to be more planning, more thought. We're in a high-heat zone area, it's going to get worse. So why don't we have more shade in our parks? You've even said, "Why don't we have more mature trees?" I mean, there's so many grants out there for this stuff, so thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Ben.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I just want to take a few minutes to express a little bit of concerns on Agenda Item 4.4. This is the Oasis Wellness Village contract. This contract has been now in place for eight years with the city, and my concern is that with that development agreement, which includes women-owned businesses, minority-owned businesses, and lower healthcare rent for offices here in Palmdale, there has been really no observable work done since eight years, since that contract has been signed. And I think it's really, this delay is keeping our community from the healthcare access that I think the agreement was originally intended to create. It's a limiting agent as far as medical office space to recruit physicians into this community, and that medical office space is much needed. So while I am in support and think it was a very visionary agreement for the city to enter into, I do want to urge the council to press the developer to fulfill those terms immediately so that we can help these medical offices get up and running for our residents in the community. Thank you for your time.
Any other speakers?
No further speakers.
No further cards? Okay, I'll go ahead and close public comments. Council, are there any items that you would like to pull from the consent calendar?
I'd like to pull 4.3 and 4.4, please. And if there are no other items to be pulled...
4.6. Oh, 4.6.
I'll make a motion to approve the remaining balance.
Anybody else have any other items to pull? Andrea?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll second.
We have a motion to second. Let's go ahead and call for the vote.
Add the motion in. Thank you. The second, add it in. Start voting. Motion passed unanimously.
Very good. So let's go ahead and start with item number 4.3. Could we get a staff report?
Good evening. Item 4.3 is to approve an agreement with Wildan Financial... Sorry. Sorry, is that better?
Okay.
That's better. And this is to approve an agreement with Wildan Financial Services for comprehensive professional services to complete a full cost of service and user fee study for the city for a total not to exceed $150,000. Questions specifically, or do you want me to go and tell them about...
I mean, can you just elaborate on what it is so that the watching and listening public can understand what kind of assessment this is?
Sure. So the last time the city did a fee study was in 2018, and what we do during a fee study is we align the fees... Gosh, we look at all of the fees that we charge in the city. And we look at engineering, we look at operations, we look at building and safety, we look at parks and rec, all of the areas. We look at those fees and what we charge. We don't charge anything over. It's not a revenue-based fee study. It's simply to ensure that the current fees align with the true cost of services.
Great. Okay, that was a brief overview. So I have a couple, one comment. I'm thankful that the agreement contains some provisions in it that account for what the council has previously directed staff to consider, to take a very close look at what fees we can eliminate and what fees we can subsidize, specifically for vulnerable populations or those that are living with fixed incomes, seniors, veterans, and, you know, if there are children, children's organizations, or other kinds of considerations that we want to account for and provide subsidies for or to eliminate or reduce fees that are imposed upon our community. I think that's really important. There are three provisions in the agreement. One, that says that the consultant will evaluate opportunities to establish fees for services currently offered at no cost, and then they will provide guidance for subsidized park and rec programs and activities, and that they will review appropriate subsidy percentages where full recovery is not feasible or desired. So I just, I want to thank you guys for incorporating that into the new agreement, because that wasn't really a consideration in our 2018 study, and we've had to sort of do this on an annual basis whenever we increase the fees. Second question, or my first question, that was a statement. How was the contractor selected in this process?
So we went out for a request for proposal, and part of that is, in that request for proposal, we lay out specific criteria. And then there's a scoring sheet, and so we have a confidential team that they sign. Everyone signs a confidentiality agreement. They come in, everybody scores individually. There's no group scoring at all. Everyone scores the proposals individually. They look at the specific criteria, they see that the proposer has provided specifics for everything, from how they're going to lay out the plan, how they're going to move forward with questions, how they're going to provide the responses, what they're going to provide to you all once the reports are completed. We score those, and then the highest score is the awarded contractor typically.
Right. So it says in our staff report that there are four main criteria that were considered. One is project management and methodology, two is project approaching capabilities, three is project staffing, and fourth, of course, is cost, right? So you mentioned that there are confidentiality concerns in the evaluation process. Are you saying that both the names, the identification of the people on the evaluation committee and the score, score sheets are confidential?
The score sheets are available, but we keep the individuals confidential, yes.
The identity of those that have provided those specific score sheets, but the identity of the panel themselves is not confidential, right?
So traditionally, as a past practice, the city has kept that confidential.
From whom?
From whom? I'm sorry?
From whom?
Just in general, right? So we don't provide it to... It's, once you're on that committee, that's it, and the only people that know are the people that are on that committee.
So how, so in that case, how do we then discern whether or not those people on the evaluation committee have any sort of conflict of interest?
So we do a conflict of interest confidentiality agreement prior to them even being on the committee.
Agreement or a check?
It's a, it's a, it's a whole document, and then we look at it, and if there's any perception or anything that leads us to believe that there's maybe a conflict, we'll have a conversation.
Okay. So then that leads to my question about the criterion to be considered, the cost, right? So we've, the staff recommendation is that we award the contract to Wildan Financial Services, right? And there were four proposers?
There were.
And then attached to our staff report is Wildan's actual proposal. How much are we, where, or is being recommended that we award this contract for?
$150,000, not to exceed.
Not to exceed. So their cost proposal, it says, Exhibit A, Section G, cost proposal, says Wildan proposes a fixed fee of $39,730 to conduct the comprehensive fee study.
Yes.
If their fixed fee proposal was under $40,000, why are we proposing that we award them $150,000?
So part of the process could lead to additional questions, further need to dive into things that come up, and we can't foresee that. So we wanted to have that available, not necessarily that we'll use it or need it, but we wanted to have it available so that we could continue without interruption if needed.
So that's essentially triple, triple, triple the value of their fixed fee proposal. So was there additional scope that was incorporated into this? Or is it just we want to create a $110,000 buffer?
No, it was, it's, as we dive into it and as we look at some of the questions that were asked and we look at the proposal and then things that came from staff even after the proposal went out, we wanted to make sure that we had what we needed to get a thorough and complete proposal.
Okay, so I have a couple concerns. Thank you for that. And this is not any, it's not indictment of you, or, but I have a concern because if we're going through a public competitive bidding process, we have to be very clear on scope so that each of the proposers has the opportunity to provide competitive pricing on all items being proposed, all work being proposed to be done under that contract. If we increase the scope in any way after the RFP has been released and we provide for that in a contract in excessive amount, that then violates procurement policies because the other proposers were not afforded the opportunity to provide competitive offerings on those items. I have, I don't see any reason why, if the fixed fee proposal for the full year's worth of the comprehensive fee study is $39,000, why we need to add $110,000 buffer just in case that we have additional questions or additional items to be explored? It seems quite excessive, and I don't know that I have any justification, am hearing any justification for that. So maybe, City Manager, can you address why we're, why this is the recommendation before us?
Pro Tim, members of the council. It goes back to what Don had mentioned about going back and adding some sort of, looking at other aspects such as the discounts for residents, things like that that came up after we released the RFP. We came back and had other questions, and it's not just going to be the study itself, it's looking beyond the study, how else we can afford to maybe add discounts for residents, how else we can afford to add discounts for other, in other places that we can, and recoup those costs in an equitable and fair manner.
If I could just jump in, I, we had like a, I think when I went through our briefing, it was like an hour and a half long, dug into the fee schedule. I was on the council in 2018 when we went through the fee schedule. I think, I believe that was the first fee schedule I ever went through on a, on a city council, and then I realized we have like seven or 800 different fees. There might be over 1,000 now with the different services we offer. But I did, I did dive into it, I did look at the price, I did look at Wildan, I did do some research on them. They've been around since 1964. They're one of the big three top financial consultant firms. They work with Santa Clarita, Victorville, Adelanto, Hesperia, Lancaster, which I think it's good they work with all the neighboring cities around us because then they'll understand what competitive fees look like, and they'll see if our fees are kind of on point with the others. But I did reference it in contract amount with the other cities. It looks like Lancaster had $142,000, Victorville was $128,000, Santa Clarita was $190,000 for their contracts. So it seems like everything falls in line with what, with what I've seen in comparison to the other municipalities around us, and it seems comparable to what we did in the 2018, 2018 fee schedule. I don't know what we exactly spent on that, but...
Do we have the cost proposals for the other three proposers?
Yes.
They're not in the staff report. None of the costs are included in the staff report. I had to dig to get it. So where are they?
So I have them here, but that's something that, we tend to not provide that publicly.
It's public, the available information is publicly...
Until it's awarded, right? We can provide everything, but the cost...
No, until the recommendation is made so that we can consider, because we're not required to go with the staff recommendation. We, as council, are afforded the opportunity to take into consideration your recommendation, but also to discern amongst the proposers, but we don't have the information before us. So my question and my concern is, if they provided a fixed fee rate, less than $40,000, why are we building in $110,000 buffer for additional scope of work? Whether or not Lancaster and Victorville, you know, their contracts were in those ranges is irrelevant, quite frankly, to what we award a contract for, because their scope and their RFP might have been completely different than ours. We didn't compare, you know, their RFP scope to ours. And so I, there's, that frame of reference is not really relevant in my thoughts. What is relevant was what was included in the original RFP, the scope of work that we put out to the public on Planet Bids and said, "We need X, Y, and Z." And all four proposers submitted a flat fee for X, Y, and Z. And then they gave us a bid of $39,000, and now it's being recommended that we build in $110,000 on top of that, essentially triple the amount that they're proposing, and I just don't understand why.
So my concern is, if I was a business owner and I said, "I can do it for $39,000", and someone says, "Well, you can spend up to $150,000", I'd find a way to spend that $150,000, keep my company going.
And the other proposers, they would have undercut their bids too, or they would, I mean, who knows? It just, it deviates, and that's why there are such strict requirements in procurement policies, because we need to make sure that it's an even playing field for all proposers at all times from the release of the RFP and the scope of work to the contractor award.
Chairman, members of the council. I think recalling back on this proposal, I believe initially we had, when we released the RFP, it was initially for a couple departments, which would have been, if I remember correctly, engineering and economic development. After that, we wanted to expand it, but when it was proposed and when it was bid, all the bidders bid on the exact same thing. And I want to make this clear that this is not, and it's not an NIB, a Notice of Inviting Bid, where we require to go with the lowest bidder. This is a service that we're providing. So the dollar amount is just a fractional part of what is being scored here. It's also the service that we are scoring as well. It's not just the dollar amount.
Where is this company from?
Wildan.
They're from Anaheim.
But if I can just jump in here, it's just to say, you know, I trust the staff. I trust the City of Palmdale's staff. I trust the staff and our city manager, the work that they're doing. Yes, the bid process is discreet until it's awarded. That way, you know, there's no, there's no special, there's no violations or there's no special interest getting in the way. We have to trust our staff to do the work. I did the research in this. It's a legitimate company. Our bid price stacks up to all the other municipalities that are around us, give or take. It's...
I think we're subjecting ourselves to, we're exposing ourselves to liability here. That's a big concern, because increasing a contract that is being proposed and recommended at $39,000 and then we're awarding it at $150,000, the proposers who didn't get the award, they're going to say, "Wait a minute, hold on a second", then they're going to file public records requests, then they're going to file claims, and then they're going through Discovery, get all of the information, and see what exactly went on. I'd want to avoid all liability here. I really don't hear $110,000 additional scope that we already know about that justifies $150,000 contract. If they're proposing it at $39,000, we want to build in a buffer, okay, I think it's reasonable to make it a $50,000 contract, and then we can always amend it. We have jurisdiction to amend it, and we can, we can do that then, but I can't support a contract that builds in $110,000 buffer for scope that we don't even know and that additional, the other proposers didn't have an opportunity to offer competitive pricing on. But I want, just in context, we've got this item on our agenda. We also have our grant program proposal on our agenda. What's being proposed is that we establish a community grant program for an annual cost of $100,000 for all the community organizations that they want, that want and need and are requesting support from the city. The proposal is that we only set aside $100,000 a year for those community organizations. Those people are the ones that provide direct services to our community in target areas and directly to kids and directly to seniors and directly to those that are facing food and housing insecurity. $100,000, that's it. And we're limiting those, what's being proposed is we're limiting those grants to $5,000 each organization. That's nothing. We're offering, or what's being proposed is we're offering our, our community organizations pennies, but we're going to build in $110,000 buffer to a contractor in Anaheim for scope we don't even know exists or can't define? I have a real problem with that. So I just, I need you to understand in terms of context why this is raising issues, but I also think it raises concerns in terms of violating and deviating from standard procurement processes. So I can't support this. I would, I would, you know, support reducing the contract to $50,000 to create an $11,000 buffer, which is a 25% buffer because it's $40,000. So it's, I think, within reason. If they need to come back and increase that, that, we need to amend the contract to increase the cap, no problem, but I don't see why we need to, at the outset, award a contract above, $110,000 above the fixed price that the proposer recommended.
Okay, Mr. Richard Loa, you're up next.
Yeah, I have a similar concern, not only in this one, and I pulled 4.6. In the past, we've actually posted the various bids that have been proposed by the, whoever's proposing it. And then somehow, and this has happened over the years, we get them to put it on the agenda to disclose exactly what happened. to disclose exactly what happened, you know, what, what the different bids were from the various people that were applying for this, and then it slips away. And so that, that happens in this one and it happens every, almost every single council meeting, we have the same situation. So I'm bringing it up again. I think that we need to have the bidding from each of the persons that are applying so that we can see exactly what the competitive bids are as far as money's concerned. The same thing is, is the issue with four point six. Again, and that's a pretty substantial, very merited plan to do this, this sewage study. But, you know, we only get to see the one thing that was supplied and we had actually four, four bids on that one. So I would request, Mr. Mendez, that we have a disclosure of the various bids that are being presented on these different projects where competitive bidding is, is ongoing.
Madam Chair, members of the council, I, I can see where that happens when it's in NIB, like I stated earlier, that's a, a notice of inviting bids where we are contractually obligated to go with the lowest responsible bidder. In this cases, if we would just put the dollar amount, it would just be a small part of what the scoring is based on, rather than the whole story of how we score these projects. That would give a, a, that would give the public a, a wrong interpretation of how these, these, these projects are awarded in that manner. We would just show them a fraction of the scoring that's there, rather than the whole picture.
So I, to dovetail off of Councilmember Loa's comments, I, in a former capacity, was the president of the Los Angeles Board of Public Works. We awarded eighty-five percent of the City of Los Angeles' contracts amongst, across all City of LA's departments. I'm really familiar with procurement policies and standard practices. And to your point, every staff report that we used to get would have costs and, and it would have various informa, you know, propose, certain, certain, certain key pieces of information that we would request that they extract from those proposals, they would put them there so that they can make the recommendation, but we could take a look holistically at it. So for instance, we have the bidder name, but we've specifically, I know that the location and of their headquarters has been added to our staff reports because I've made it an issue, I've previously raised it as an issue because I want to make sure that we take into consideration as often as possible if they're located and headquartered in City of Palmdale or at least in the Antelope Valley. So they now add the location. So we can add the location, we can add other, other components of the, the proposals into our staff reports so that we as a council can make holistic assessment, take into, take into consideration the staff recommendation, but also use our own discretion in, in evaluation of the proposals based on, on key indicators. So I, there's nothing that legally prohibits us or precludes us from, from doing that moving forward.
And we've done it in the past repeatedly, and then all of a sudden it slides away and it's no longer there.
I'll, I'll give an example, there, there could be, let's use this one for example. And I don't, I didn't, I don't know who scored them, I didn't see the scores myself, but we could have had a lower bidder that bid it for half that cost, but maybe this is the first time they do this type of project. And maybe our request says we need, we need a certain amount of experience. So that's all part of the scoring matrix that's embedded in our scoring matrix. So if we just showed you the score, that would not be fair.
That's not what we're asking for.
We're not asking for the score, we're asking for the cost, but also...
The dollar amount, excuse me, I meant the dollar.
You, you mentioned that, that the, the increased proposed contract amount was because you might have, there might have been initially just the thought that, that this study was going to only pertain to wrecking parks in a few select departments. That's not what the proposal is responsive to. It says a comprehensive fee study of all city imposed fees. So it's, 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 it's a, it's a full-scale global review of our fees. So there really is no, there's no added departments, I don't, it, it just doesn't make, it doesn't make sense. One plus one does not equal two. And then my, my last question is, what other contracts does Willden, do, do, do we have with Willden?
I would have to get, excuse me, I would have to get that list for you. We, we have a couple other contracts with Willden. Off the top of my head, I couldn't speak to them.
So I know of one that I just, I just Googled and it's a city, it's a press release. City of Palmdale selects Willden as consultant for new innovation and smart city program. Was that competitively bid?
I'm sorry, for which one?
The smart city program, but that's not a, I don't know that you, Mr. City Manager, would you, is, was that competitively bid?
I wouldn't be able to tell you off the top of my head. I believe that, I, I can't tell you right now off the top of my head.
Yeah, I checked the agendas. This was October twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. I checked the, both October agendas and the first agenda in November twenty twenty-four. Didn't see it on our agenda, so however, Willden got this contract, I don't see that it came before us. I might be wrong, maybe it's somewhere buried in there, don't know. But Willden got this contract, they might have another contract somewhere else that I couldn't find. And now we're, we're proposing that we give them another, an additional hundred and ten thousand dollars on top of what they proposed as a fixed rate. I just, it doesn't feel right and it doesn't sound right. And I think legally it's precarious. And so my recommendation to the council is if they, i- is that we move forward and, and award the contract at a lesser amount at fifty thousand, which provides for a twenty-five percent buffer on top of what their fixed rate proposal was. And if not, if the city, if the council's desire is to just move forward with this, I cannot support it as is.
So I'll just chime in that legally it's okay, but the concerns that I'm hearing are about the buffer or the contingency that is built in. And that is a, that is within council's discretion to determine if that amount is something you would like to award or proceed with just the original proposal amount. But legally, the, the process is okay, but I, the concerns that I'm hearing are valid. Those are valid concerns about building in a contingency into a contract. As Mayor Pro Tem indicated, I would do the same thing and spend all the money. So valid concerns, legally okay, but sometimes just because something's legally okay doesn't mean it's the right choice.
I don't know, I don't know. Legally, it's okay to award the contract so much so, to the extent that we don't know exactly the differences in the scope that's included in here from the RFP. There's not been an assessment, a specific assessment, and so there, there is some potential for risk, legal risk.
Well, and I, I would add, I, I understand Councilmember's point, which is the original RFP did not include a citywide study.
No, it did.
Oh, it did?
It did.
But we didn't include all the departments?
No, that's, he, the City Manager was saying that he thought that that might be the reason. No, that the, our original RFP was for a full citywide study.
Okay.
So now we, we're doing the full citywide study, that's what we set out. They provided a response, thirty-nine thousand, fixed rate, flat fee.
Okay.
And then now it's being proposed a hundred and ten thousand on top of that forty thousand.
So it's, yeah, the contingency, and so it would be council's discretion if that is too much based on the cost that was submitted in the proposal. I think it's a valid concern.
Councilmember Olson has a question?
Yeah, just one quick question. If the scope of work changes, that doesn't have to go back out to a full RFP, right? We could amend at that time. So I, I tend to agree that we should probably award this at a lesser amount. If they need more than that, then bring it back to us at that time.
So, so Andrea, you have a motion on the table for fifty grand?
I would like, yes, I would like to move that we approve the agreement with Willden Financial Services for comprehensive professional services to complete a full cost of service and user fee study for the City of Palmdale for a total not to exceed amount of fifty thousand for a term of one year.
Do I have a second on that?
Will this, will this get the fee schedule done or are they going to come back and say, "We've dug into this, it's going to be more"?
There, there are provisions when they, when proposers submit bids, they are required to, to, to maintain and hold and, and honor those, those cost amounts for. I don't know what our provision is, our standard provision, is it sixty days, ninety days after submission of the bid?
Yes, they're, they're standard provisions.
So they have to uphold their cost.
As long as, as long as they, they're, they're required to do what's provided in the scope.
Right.
As long as we don't ask for additional add-ons, which we won't at this time, but if we feel that we need more, we'll come back to the council and make those requests.
But Mr. Mendez, if I may speak.
Yes, please.
I would second it, but I don't know what the other proposals are. I don't know whether the reduced amount that's being proposed in this motion or this alternate motion covers the amount of money that's required for this. And we can't tell based on the information we have here.
Should we, should we table this item until we can get the additional information?
I, I think that going forward, we need to have the competitive bids given to council and posted for the public to view as well. That's what I think needs to happen. And then we can, we, we would have a better basis in which to analyze these things. And I've asked for that in the past, it's been provided, and then it slides away and I get tired of asking for it, and so I'm asking for it again.
I've asked for it as well.
Mr. Olson.
I can't argue with anything said, so I think we probably should table this thing.
All right, I have a motion to table. Well, first of all, we have to address Andrea's motion.
So I'm happy to, to rescind my motion so long as when it, when it comes back, we do a couple of things. We, we incorporate into our staff report and make publicly available the key components of each of the proposals, but also some, like at least a section on other contracts that Willden has with the city or, or the recommended awardee.
All of the, all of the people.
All of them, yeah, right.
Every contract they have with us.
Every contractor, like who they've got.
Is this time sensitive in any way whatsoever?
The fee schedule. I mean, it was just...
They, they had a year to work on it. The, the goal is to get it in before budget cycles to, to project how much we would need, but we, we can wait till the next council meeting.
Okay, so it's a motion to table then?
I mean, we are motion to table, Mr. Loa.
The, the, the RFP was released on, in, in August, like a couple months ago, so I don't know that that...
I'll second the motion from Mr. Loa.
All right, so we have a motion to table and a second. Right, yes. Here, there you go.
To table and bring back with the revised staff report incorporating key proposal information.
Incorporating the, the competitive proposals.
Yep, agree.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, could we call for a vote?
Loa?
And, and Bishop.
Yes, that is correct.
Do we want to switch that to Loa and Bishop?
Oh, yeah, it would be Loa.
Okay.
For the motion.
Will do.
Either way, as long as it gets the job done.
So we have a motion and a second?
Start voting.
Go ahead and vote.
Table the approval of the item. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, colleagues.
Okay, moving on to item number four point four. Andrea?
I, I pulled the item, if you can just give a staff report. I think the, we received some public comment that raised some, some legitimate concerns. So if you can just sort of give an overall summary of what's before us and maybe address some of the concerns that were raised. Thank you.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and members of the city council. The item before you is a development agreement to receive and file the annual activity report. As the gentleman mentioned, there has been no activity. I do want to point out that this project was approved in two thousand seventeen and has a twenty-five-year development agreement. So one thing that we could probably do is work with City Attorney's Office to see how we can remedy some of these things and maybe negotiate a new agreement if that's on the table.
So they have twenty-five years to get this done? I'll be dead by then.
Was there, was there like a time schedule, like a milestone, like they initiate or like any kind of staging of it or, they start at year twenty-four?
There's nothing that precludes them from starting in year twenty-four? Correct. It's a very good deal for them.
Why did we enter into this? It sounds like they just locked us in to not developing a, a significant portion of our community.
It's just sitting there with nothing being done.
At this time, correct.
Are there any, I don't, can I see, can you, can we get a copy of the original agreement and all, is it in there, but all, any amendments? I just, there's got to be maybe some means by which we can either amend, revise, hold, like hold them accountable for damages or, there's got to be something that's built into the contract that, that like...
Like some milestones?
We can capitalize on.
A progress chart, I mean, something.
When this, I believe when this came to the city years ago, I don't think any of us were on this council at the time. I believe it happened when Palmdale Regional was under construction or just freshly built and there was a lot of high expectations for the medical industry to come to Palmdale and the Antelope Valley. And it's been growing, maybe not as fast as we'd hoped, but I think definitely there's some density issues, I think as far as holding the development up, that's been problematic. We talked about that in the briefing about how, I think ideally we're talking about how a parking structure is ultimately what's holding this back because they want to build so many units, they want to build so much on that corner that ultimately they're going to need a parking structure, which none of that even pencils out. So yes, we probably need to come to the table and, and really do an appraisal and look at what's, what's feasible in today's world because what was realistic years ago when this agreement was made and when Palmdale Regional was under construction and when there was a lot of high hopes is a different story of what, what we're, what we're looking at today, unfortunately. The medical industry is coming, they're just not coming that fast.
Right.
So.
Yes, Mr. Loa.
Yeah, so I think the parking structures are going to be an impediment forever because I mean, there's just never going to, it's just as Bishop has pointed out, it's never going to pencil out under current conditions. And this is Mr. Allen, right?
Yes.
Okay. So it seems like it'd be appropriate to try and get a dialogue going again. I don't know, when is the last time you, your department negotiated with them or at least had a conversation about what's going to happen there? I know that at least one business person and possibly two moved when it was published in the newspaper that this whole thing was going to be imminent, that it was all going to happen, and the business people got frightened and, and they left. And this was, this was several years ago. And I don't know whether there's been any other dialogue or conversations with Mr. Allen and his company. Has there been?
Besides the annual report, not much.
Yeah. I mean, you know, that's a, that's a prime corner in Palmdale. And I mean, it's just in front of, of Palmdale Regional, that's an important regional player that needs to, that needs to be taken into consideration.
Mr. Olson?
No, if there's no other comment, I think obviously we have to receive and file the annual activity or non-activity report. But do we also have to include in a motion to reengage conversations with the individual? But also instruct the attorney to look at maybe remedies or ways out?
Yeah, so I just took a, a brief glance at some of the provisions to see if, if there are any means by which we can renegotiate the agreement or, or negotiate an amendment to a section, Madam City Attorney, section eight point one-three, timing of development references Parte V City of Camarillo that apparently restricts our, or at, at that time, which is a nineteen eighty-four case, restricts city's abilities to direct the timing of the initiation of the work. It says that, that it deems the owner in their sole subjective business judgment can deem when they want to start the work. But my question to you is if you can do some research to see if since nineteen eighty-four there is any differing case law or presidential law that we could refer to that, that gives a little bit more deference and flexibility to municipalities to mandate that they initiate the work. And then also I'll point you to section thirteen point one-two, time is of the essence, time is of the essence in the performance of the provisions of this agreement, of which time is an element. So maybe sort of looking at all of those and then in coordination with remedies, we could figure some way out of this.
And I don't think we need to go at the company or the individual legally at first. I think, you know, as far as I know, they're very reasonable. We can come to the table and talk to them and say, "Hey, you know, we know that this pencils, this project's not going to pencil out. What, what can we do in this corner to make it work?" And, you know, what, what does this look like if you have the appetite of still developing something on that corner, so.
So since I can't address the audience, I'm going to address it to you and maybe you could pass it down to Ben. Has Ben or his group talked with this company since we've talked to them? Oh, sorry, you can talk to her. We have, we have these rules.
No, she, she's the developer, she can come, or she's...
She's the CEO. Okay, come on up.
I just don't want to break any rules.
Yeah, I'm Palmdale Regional Chief Executive Officer, and my concern is they've had this, the negotiation began in twenty fifteen, I read the whole contract this morning, and there's been no communication with us. You know, I've had several conversations with different parties here that we are interested in expansion, we are building, and when we don't have that opportunity to look at the biggest piece of land next to Palmdale, it's right in front of Palmdale to the left, so it, it's really essential for us to have some progress. it, it's really essential for us to have some progress. And the last thing Palmdale needs is a parking lot. We need MOBs, we need ASCs, we need primary care to the community, and that's really what we want. And so we would love some kind of influence to get this going.
Should we set up a meeting with?
Yes.
Absolutely. We'd love you to mediate with us, and we can have a better discussion with them.
Motion to approve, receive and file, and we'll set up a meeting with, with all partners involved in this project.
Before, before we do that, can we get sort of a, a general, at least a preliminary assessment as to, we need to know what's, what powers and strengths that we can leverage in the discussion.
Before we have a meeting.
Before we walk into the meeting. But also, City Manager, if we can identify maybe some potential funding availability to, to maybe offer as an incentive to get moving, and then we can work cooperatively with Palmdale Regional, maybe they can also chip in and we can all work collaboratively together, we can create a cooperative agreement. We can do something to get it moving. But we need a couple pieces in order for us to walk in with something to work with.
Agreed. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for being here.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we call for the vote? There we go. Sorry. It was not responding. Okay, excellent. We'll get that moving for sure. All right, item number 4.6, Richard.
Yes, um, well, I, I had similarly concerns about this one, and I'm glad Ms. Alarcon brought up the, the points about the bidding process and the procurement process and so on. But, but I didn't ask to include it in the table motion because I don't know what the timeline is on this, what the urgency is on this, but if there isn't any urgency, it ought to be brought back. It seems to me with a contract that's almost a million dollars, $840,000, for something that's needed. I'm not minimizing the need, but the thing is, I do believe that the council should be provided with what the bidding was, what each of the competitive bids was, so we can have some detail on that. If there are concerns about the lowest bid, lack of experience, first time out, whatever, that's something that, we have a very able staff that can articulate those concerns and include them in the, in, in whatever report we're being provided, but I think we need to have the financials on these, on the bidding process. We've had it before, as I've said already three times, I think we can get it provided again, and then any concerns can then be rationalized by staff, and then the City Council would have a better handle on how to approach it. And, and I appreciate, and first of all, accommodating me on briefing me this afternoon instead of yesterday, I couldn't come up yesterday. And, and I appreciate it also that you've mentioned that DUDEC apparently had dealt with the City of El Monte where you happened to work before, and also with, with Linwood where you had previously worked before. Have you had any communications with them about this?
I, I, Madam Chair, members of the council, I never stated that I worked with them in El Monte.
No, no, I know that, I didn't say that. I said they had prior contracts with El Monte and Linwood, according to what you told me, and that was just a.
I, I never stated that they had prior contracts in El Monte, not that I'm aware of. I did state that I believe they had a prior contract in Linwood. Would I, and what, in my communication with you and that was that they're a firm that has done this type of work, that I've seen that before.
I agree.
That was my only reason for stating that.
Okay. But you didn't have any commi, you didn't have any involvement in this one here?
I, I don't, I don't know anyone from DUDEC, nor have I ever spoken with anyone from DUDEC.
Appreciate that. So anyway, my concern is, I don't know, is there any urgency for adopting this, or could we table this one so we can get what the different bids were?
Let's ask Public Works because these are important. There are deadlines on these, on sewer stuff, so. Hello, Director.
Good evening. There, there is an urgency because the last time we did this was back in 2009. It also helps us plan out the upcoming CIP program, so we know how to prioritize projects and determine what our needs are. So there is an urgency, but can it wait, can it wait a month?
I mean, I, I really don't want to, I mean, I think the need for this is great, but I'd be satisfied with getting the bidding amounts and any rationale for why they weren't selected if they were lower. And, you know, if someone wants to move this item.
Was this?
But I'd like to have us get what the bidding were from the competitive companies.
Was this the lowest responsible bidder? And do you have the bids on you, and can you read them?
I do have the bids, and they were sealed when the, the proposals were reviewed, and again, like the other ones, professional services are based on qualifications and experience, not on the bid proposal. But I can read out to you the, the bids that came in.
If you wouldn't mind.
So FEI, the second on the list, did not provide a proposal cost. Pacific Advanced Civil Engineering, 1.215 million, and Royal Dan Engineering, 619,316. So they're all within the range of what this type of project would cost. Being such a large city, there's a lot of comprehensive work that needs to be done, research, viewing, pipelines, so it's a pretty expansive project.
Did you say DUDEX costs? Oh, yeah, it's here in the thing.
Yes.
Right, 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 right.
$764,180.
It was a 10% contingency, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Well, that's better than 300%.
In the past also, when we were provided this information, they were ranked according to the bidding amounts. So we knew how they were ranked financially. Now I understand there's other considerations. So, I mean, it's good to get the raw information in terms of the dollar amount, but those proposals usually come with a lot more information and, than just the money. And I'd like to see that happen again.
I'm gonna throw a motion out there for a couple reasons. A, this work needs to get done, and it's important, and B, because I trust the City of Palmdale staff. I trust the staff to do their job to pick the right contractor for the right price, and historically, that's, that's always what's happened here. And I do the homework, I check, like with some of their other contracts and with other cities, because that's really all we have to compare it to, is what other, other municipalities around us in all directions are doing and, and what the prices are. And that's it. I'm just gonna throw that out there because I know the work needs to get done, and I also want to reinforce the fact that I trust the city staff to do their jobs. And we're here to approve these items, and I don't want to get into a process where, where the council is picking and choosing which contractors to get the jobs, because that's never something I've had experience with, and I think that's something that council should probably stay out of. I think the staff should do the scoring, and they should figure out who the best people are for the job, and the council should stay out of picking which contractor should get which job. Historically, that's always been the way it's been with my tenure on this council.
No, I, okay.
Oh, sorry, just a quick question. So, um, the DUDEX cost, you didn't state it, what did they put in their proposal? Because in the, in the, the fee schedule or whatever the spreadsheet is, it says the fee estimate, and this is negotiated, that was negotiated, that was just determined after, with the city, right?
Yes.
So what was their original proposal?
I, I don't have that original proposal. It was a lot higher than 764.
It was a lot higher?
Yes.
So can, again, I, I, we don't have it, but you have the other three?
I have the other three. I was, I asked for the other three.
Uh, okay.
Because of, because of the fight.
Well, elected response to.
Yes, Mr. Loa, go ahead.
Thank you very much. When I first got elected to the council in 2001, I went to League of Cities in terms of relationships between the City Council staff and the City Manager. And yes, it's important to have confidence in your staff, and we do. I think each one of us up here does. But it's also a matter of having enough information to see that whatever the staff is proposing is appropriate for us to pass on. And so trusting is one issue. But having information to make intelligent decisions that's being presented by the City Council is as important, if not more important.
No.
And so all I'm asking for is that we get these proposals so that we can see what they are, and if for some reason the lowest bid cannot be the, the one that's contracted. I'm not saying that we're gonna negotiate with these contractors. I'm just saying that after all the information is, is presented, that we can support what staff is urging us to do, but we have the information on which to base it. That's the point. Not to negotiate on our part with contractors. I think that's misplaced.
No, that's what I was gonna say. But it, so if Mr. Loa is happy with the information that was given.
Plus, plus the, I mean, I'll vote for it, but I, I would like to see the competitive bids.
Right, going forward, okay. I'm going to second Councilmember Bishop's motion, but I agree, like, we should have no say in picking and choosing who gets awarded, but I don't want to get in a habit where council does not have all the information available.
All right, and so can I get the competitive bids? I mean, in the next day or two, or within a week?
Yes.
Okay, and provide it to all council members?
Yes.
All right.
Now, I will say, for the future, yes, it'd be nice to have all the prices listed on every bid, every department. I'm sure every department here is reading the tea leaves.
I mean, so, so it, just as a sort of juxtaposition, City of L.A., where we would open sealed bids at Public Works, we would do it publicly at our board meetings, so it, and then, so when so Wildon proposes at page whatever they flip, announce it. Next one proposes, and so that there was clarity for everybody. It was a very transparent process because there's no real reason, once it's submitted, it's a public document, it's a competitive process, there's no me, there's no reason really to withhold that information, and it really is important consideration. We have a fiduciary responsibility, to Mr. Loa's point, to discern, you know, how appropriations are made, and so we gotta make sure that, that there were awarding contracts at the appropriate cost, you know, at, at every juncture. So all of those, those proposal, key proposal components should be incorporated in our staff reports.
So, yeah. Okay, so we have a motion by Austin Bishop and a second by Eric Olson.
Start voting.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to item number five, public hearings. Now is the time for the public participation in each public hearing, and we have several tonight. So each, each public hearing will have its own public testimony. So I'm gonna go ahead and open a public hearing. Staff, would you like to provide a report for item number 5.1? And on 5.1, there is no voting, this is just a public hearing and a call for testimony.
Good evening. Megan Taggart, Director of Economic and Community Development. This evening, I'm filling in for Sofia Reyes of the Housing Department. For this item, we have our consultant, Carrie Bullock, presenting.
Great.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and City Council members. As Megan mentioned, I'm Carrie Bullock with LDM Associates. I'm here tonight to request a public hearing to obtain resident input on community needs and priorities for inclusion in the 2026-2027 Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant, also known as CDBG, and home investment partnership programs. The city receives annual allocations for federal funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, for CDBG and home funding, and a public hearing is a requirement to receive the annual allocation. These funds are the principal federal program providing local governments with grants to improve physical, economic, and social conditions. These funds are essentially used for developing local programs, addressing affordable housing, providing public services, and infrastructure improvement needs. Prior use of funds includes acquisition of the property for the saves facility, commercial facade improvements, ADA improvements, rehabilitation for the current saves facility, fair housing services, tenant-based rental assistance for seniors, multifamily housing projects, and senior housing development. The city must follow specific requirements to remain eligible for the grant programs. These requirements include conducting a public hearing for community input and approving the annual action plan by May 14th. We will be back here before you in May with the draft action plan for approval. A public notice inviting oral or written comments either prior to or at this public meeting was published in the Antelope Valley Press and on the city's website on October 4th, 2025. We're available for questions.
I don't have questions, I just wanna, just, in real simple terms, this is sort of a full-spectrum opportunity for the community to give feedback on where we will use funds. So for senior services, low-income housing, tenant, you know, eviction protection assistance programs, mortgage assistance programs, all of these kinds of things are all that go into our action plan. So if anybody has any thoughts on when we receive those monies, how we should spend them, this is where we want to hear from you.
Okay, so let's go ahead and call for public testimony. Do we have any slips?
We have two speaker slips. I'm calling individuals. We have Jason Zink, and we have also Eugene Hernandez.
This is for public hearing 5.1.
I just think, you know, when the community looks at this and they see 2026-27 Action Plan, but it doesn't say what it is. Like I say, like you guys are feeling, I feel like this, the community, the public is not getting enough information. It should say 2027, or 2627 Housing HUD Action Plan on the agenda. Because I was gonna come up here with about, you know, 100 projects, so for citywide. So see what I'm saying? If we could just have a little bit more effort, a little bit more passion from the staff to do more, just like you guys were explaining, we used to do everything Loa said, we used to do all that stuff. Ever since the last city manager, we've had less transparency and everything's harder to get information from. Let's go back to the old days. But what I want is, on this HUD stuff, is there's 300 units that the city has agreements with for low-income housing, right? And I, for the last, over a decade, I've asked for those units to have free internet and free basic cable, so these seniors don't sit in their units looking at walls. You, you, what these, these nonprofit or profit housing people are doing, they raise a rent $45, but the seniors only get 25 more dollars from Social Security. So every year, they get less and less and less, so they have to cut and cut and cut, and it's not right. You guys need to stop these, these rents from keep on going up. And these were like giveaways, like low-interest grants, these people, these investors got a great deal, so why not give a great deal to our seniors in their golden years and give them the internet? Also, you know, you get a half a million dollars from Spectrum. They can go in and buy bulk, it's very cheap to buy bulk internet for apartment complexes. Lancaster has it, why doesn't Palmdale? And like I said, we need more rental subsidies for our seniors. Because of that situation of the rent keep on going up, two of my aunts became homeless that were living in those units, and the city wasn't there for them. So we just gotta do more, and I'm asking you to make an ordinance requiring that all senior housing, that the, the owner of the apartment complex has to provide internet and basic cable. And we also need a lot more sidewalks and gaps, you know, sidewalk gaps, projects and stuff like that around the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Next speaker? Hi, Eugene.
Hi. You know, the, the last two items had me worried about the city staff regarding their recommendations. It seemed to me that if some big developer or other people can wine and dine the staff, they charge, they, they give them the whole, the whole banquet free. But my, my chief concern is that last, last time we met, the AV Edge, it's, the city gave them $300,000. They didn't have to provide a list of who were the board members, they didn't respond to any of the requests that were sent by, by Ms. Alarcon to them, and two weeks later, they got another $300,000 from Lancaster. I mean, what, what the city needs is very simple, rent control, because I'm dreading my rent going up on January. So other people who cannot afford, and we know we're in an economic crisis, food stamps are being discontinued, why don't you give a break to the people who are working, who are suffering? Give them rent control. With the $300,000 you gave AV Edge, you could implement rent control for the City of Palmdale. It's ridiculous that we have to struggle while you give these businessmen, who I don't even know AV Edge, $300,000, and they get another $300,000, and they don't have to reveal anything. Who are the members? What are they using the money for? It's totally, you guys just, I, I know Austin Bishop just loves giving away this money to businesses, but I, I disagree with you. You know, people who live here. but I, I disagree with you. You know, people who live here deserve the best. And the best thing is to develop a, an action plan for rent control so that people do not go homeless. When, when they become homeless, it becomes a whole different problem. They, they, they go, they need medical care, they need psychiatric care, their, their whole family suffer. But you, I don't, I don't think it gets to, to the person like Austin Bishop's head to do this for the people. You only think about businesses, what do they want? And that's not right. You have to have a heart for other people, for the Chicanos, for the blacks who live here, who are poor whites who live here. Why don't you open your heart beyond the, the businessmen to other people, Austin? You know, think about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers on this item? Yes.
Hi, I'm Michael Ross. I just wanted to say, I agree with what Jason Zink said, that we need more information on this stuff. You know, we're being asked to be more involved in the community, which we're taking very seriously. And when we get stuff like this, it's hard to understand. You know, we're, we're starting to learn this stuff. We're willing to do the homework if we can just get a nudge in the right direction. So I think on stuff like this, it'd be really great to have this come back at some point where we can actually intelligently speak about it after we get more information. And that does seem to be kind of an ongoing problem, doesn't it? That information isn't getting out to you guys, certainly not getting out to us. So I just wanted to throw my two cents in on that.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Olson? Oh, there's one more, sorry.
We have one more. Dan Gwoki.
Thank you, thank you for the time again. I'll be, I'll be very brief. As part of this, you know, action plan, I think to include workforce development housing would be something very important for this city. We've been blessed for many years with very affordable houses, houses in our area, which is starting to price some folks out. A lot of folks do have to commute in our area. I think offering some sort of workforce development, higher density than your typical neighborhood, but affordability in some amenities would go a long way, especially for some of the businesses that are being recruited into this area, for those workforce members to have those sort of amenity-style, low and middle-income workforce development housing, I think would be crucial in something like this. So, thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you. Mr. Olson?
No, I just kinda wanted to defend my libertarian-leaning friend, Austin Bishop, because a lot of businesses do come to us looking for handouts, and he's the first person to say, no, you can make it on your own. I think what he voted for was setting conditions for businesses to be able to succeed in the city without giving business money directly. I just had to defend that.
Thank you, Councilmember.
I, I, Andrea, go ahead. Thank you. I just want to sort of echo the concern about transparency in, in what the item is, which is why I asked the staff and sort of summarized in sort of layman's terms what we're asking, what we're considering here today in this public hearing. Is there anything that would preclude us from conducting another one before the development of this? So that we can, so my suggestion would be, whenever we do something like this, because we've had a couple of these mandatory hearings, right? But whenever we do it, so, like, maybe for instance, attached to it, last year's programs that were awarded. So people have, have at least some sense of what kinds of programs have historically been funded so that they can consider, oh, well, maybe if they can do that with that money, maybe we can do with this, and maybe they have ideas there. Oh, but just saying an action plan, nobody knows what that is.
Andrea, excuse me, Andrea, I just want to make clear that she did talk about the programs that they did last year.
Yeah, no, but I'm saying in the agenda, like, like a staff report saying, this is an action plan, this is the type of feedback, these are the types of programs that we do, and last year, we did. So that people can, in advance, when it's published, 72 hours in advance, people can read it, review it, and say, oh, and then maybe they can think about it over the weekend and come up with a bright idea, or they, they know something at the park or at the senior center that has been, you know, the, the web, you know, the internet access, all of these things, they can sort of think to themselves and know what to be, be prepared to, to offer comment.
So, may, may I jump in? This has to come back either way, right?
It does, yes.
Okay, so.
Because we're not voting on this tonight.
Yeah, we're just, we're just talking about it.
But I'm, I'm talking about creating another non, another, just another public hearing where we receive input.
So if I hear what you're saying, you're saying ink is cheap and we should use more of it?
There you go!
So, and just.
And I, I, I know you guys get tired. I feel like a broken record. I have to do this every single time. It's like, what, or why are we withholding information from our public? This is, but we, we work for the public, we represent the public, we, we, you know, appropriate public dollars. The information should be publicly available.
All right, so when this comes back, and just so everyone has time to think about this and chew on this, CBDG, the federal government gives us around $1.2 to $1.6 million a year. A lot of it goes to SAVES, ADA, sidewalks, it gets, it gets divvied up pretty good. We, we make it go a while. So when it comes back, can we get a list of how line item, where the money went, and then we can see what we want to take away, maybe what we want to add, that kind of stuff. But it's a lot of money, but it doesn't go as far as one would think, and it fluctuates every year based on how much the federal government wants to get to us. But we do use it every year, and it is something I think us and a lot of other cities have relied on heavily.
Yes, so I would say a few things to that. One, we are required every year to publish what we did with the money previously. That's called a CAPR, Consolidated Annual Performance Report. So that's all online. So everything, every year that we spend is accounted for, and we explain every project that was, CDBG money was spent on. There's also a five-year plan called the Consolidated Action Plan, which you're probably familiar with, because that just wrapped up for the next five years. So that's also online with, with a plan for spending for the next five years. So each annual plan and five-year plan is all online. So if people want to see kind of what types of projects we use the money on, what we can use it on, that's all online already, and then we can come back before we approve the next annual action plan in May. The timing of that public hearing, we can shift if we want to make it earlier, but we will need to bring it back to council for final approval as well, so.
Yeah, so, thank you for, thank you for saying that, but in the staff report, it doesn't reference any of those documents, so people don't know, it doesn't attach the, the previous CAPR, it doesn't attach the five-year consolidated plan, and there's no summary of either. You could put a link, you could say it can be found at this website somewhere. We, there's gotta be something more than just this, you know, two paragraphs. People don't know what an action plan is. It could be a lot of things. I mean, I can create an action plan for cleaning the house. I don't know, you know, I mean, who knows what an action plan is if you don't tell them what it's for?
Understood. Thank you.
Okay, so are we gonna, we don't, there's no.
There's no vote on that. We're just gonna move into 5.2. Should I open the public hearing before we read the title? Well, I'm gonna open a public hearing. City Clerk, please read the title of the resolution, and then we'll have staff give a report.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale approving a Form of Density Bonus Agreement AGR 25-0002-A-9332 with Palmdale Family Housing LP to facilitate the future construction of an approximately 264-unit multifamily residential development on one vacant parcel totaling approximately 9.95 acres located on the west side of 15th Street East and approximately 375 feet north of East Avenue Q, and authorize the interim city manager or his designated to exercise the option to amend the agreement as necessary, including minimal and/or non-substantial changes.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and now call for public testimony, unless you have something you want to add.
I was gonna get the staff report.
Yeah. Oh, okay. I kinda thought that explained it, but, go ahead.
So the item before you this evening is a Density Bonus Agreement to facilitate the construction of 264 multifamily residential units on one vacant parcel totaling approximately 9.95 acres. The project site is located on the west side of 15th Street East and approximately 375 feet north of East Avenue Q. The proposed development consists of 11 three-story buildings containing a total of 264 dwelling units. Two recreational amenity buildings are also proposed and will include a variety of resident features such as a children's play area, a gated swimming pool, a basketball half-court and pickleball court, a splash pad, large and small dog play areas, and a vegetable garden for tenants. In addition, one amenity building will include a centralized mailroom, maintenance area, and laundry room, while the second will feature a break room for resident services, staff, manager's offices, conference room, indoor gym, learning center, and a community room. A density bonus serves as a tool that allows an increase in the overall number of housing units that may be built on a site in exchange for including affordable housing units or for requesting exceptions to development standards to facilitate the project. Based on the site's size and zoning, a total of 298 units would be permitted. However, the applicant is proposing 264 units. The Density Bonus Agreement includes five concessions, which address building separation requirements, providing 125 square feet of private storage of space within the parking garage, a reduction in laundry facilities, and adjustments to parking quantity and design elements. The waivers requested include a waiver from the required distance between buildings and trash enclosures, allowing the leasing office to exceed the 17-foot height limit, and a reduction in the number of EV charging stations requiredly, required. Importantly, all 264 units are proposed to be designated for households with incomes not exceeding the low-income threshold established by HCD. This concludes my presentation. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
What is the low-income threshold?
The low, can I then defer to housing? It's $120,000.
Probably so.
It goes by, it goes by how many people? If you've got one person, you can make like $40,000 to $50,000. If you got two people, you make $60,000 to $73,000, and it goes up from there, but it's.
It depends on which level. So there's, there's low income, very low income, very, very low income, very, very, very low income.
I'll defer the applicant to answer that question.
Okay, and I have a question. I, I didn't hear you mention parking. Because with 260 units, two, two people. Well, that's one of the concessions, but how many parking spots are they going to provide for each unit? Because if you've got 100, 260 units, and you get two people that, within driving age in those units, that's two cars each.
That's a whole lot of cars.
I'm gonna go ahead and defer to the applicant.
Hi there. Good evening, Council and Mayor Protam. My name's Yanero Valcava. I'm here representing the developer here. So to answer your question, we have 450 parking spaces, so it's just about two per unit, a little bit less. We have developments from one-bedroom units to four-bedroom units.
Oh, four bedroom, that's a lot of people.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Any other questions from council?
Wait, you said 450 parking spots, which equates to about two per unit?
Just about. There's a difference in the ratio that we're trying to ask in the Density Bonus Agreement.
Versus the studio versus the, the three or four bedroom.
Correct.
So I just, I hope you can answer this question. There's an 80% increase in, in density. Without the Density Bonus, what would have been the number of apartments that would have been allowed here?
I need to do the calculation, but it's 1.5, I believe, parking spaces for.
Oh, no, I don't mean parking spaces, I mean units.
The total maximum is 298, I believe, and we're asking for 264.
Okay, but what I'm asking, without the Density Bonus, which is an 80% factor, how many units could have been built without the, the Density Bonus?
298. That's what the zoning allows. The Density Bonus that we're requesting would allow us to deviate from some design standards. For instance, we have a two-story amenity building where we have the leasing offices on the ground floor, and then we have the break room, the conference room, and the private offices for the resident service coordinator on the second floor. So that's higher than 17 feet. So instead of building a standalone, additional building that's gonna cost more in construction, et cetera, we want to stack those buildings because they're related uses. So there's those types of deviations that we're trying to request.
It's on page two, so it said, project, the, the maximum density is 298, right?
Per zoning, without the Density Bonus.
But, but what's being proposed is 264, lesser than that.
Correct.
So without the Density Bonus, there would have been 298 units allowed there? Okay.
No, my question is about the parking. How many parking spots would have been required if we were not giving you a concession?
I need to calculate the ratio for that, but it's 1.5 per one to two-bedroom units, and then there's two per for three and four-bedroom units.
I, I would like to know the calculations, and also with the reduced amount of washer and dryer and the other thing. Like, why are we giving concessions?
Sure, I can clarify for the laundry room. So we provide a certain amount of laundry rooms that are accessible from a walkable path to families or to the units. And we understand for the three and four bedrooms, families are gonna have more need to do more laundry if they have children or other family members. So there's actually in-unit washer dryers for all three and four-bedroom units. So that'll, that'll be included. So it's only essentially the one and two-bedroom units that would have to access our two laundry rooms, which have 18 sets of washer and dryers available.
How many total units are sharing those two laundry rooms?
Uh, let's see.
And why do you need that concession?
So that we don't have to build additional washer dryer standalone buildings, and it has to do with cost. So it'll be less than 100 of the one and two-bedroom units that have to share between the two laundry rooms that we're providing here. So all three and four-bedroom units, which are the majority that we have in this development, will have their own in-unit washer dryer. So.
So how many other housing complexes does your company have?
We have operating over 70-plus communities. The company was started in 1996. So we have in the pipeline around 1,200 units in the pipeline, and we have developments all over California. We're based in San Diego, and we have a Northern California office as well.
Would this be your first big project in the Antelope Valley, or you have?
I believe so. We have one underway in Palm Desert and also in Wildemar as well.
Okay, so is your first time in Palmdale?
Yes.
How, how much is this project, how much does this investment, the build cost, do you know?
This investment's, the total is $139.
$139 million?
But it's all from a private investment and private lenders, so there's no city resources being used for this project. So it's a purchase of tax credits from an investor.
No, I think that's, it's important to, to point out, and I know these are the type of housing projects now that are penciling out for a lot of areas. I know it's a little denser than what we're used to, but I don't know if, if any of my colleagues or anyone in the room knows a project called Juniper Grove Apartments. We had the ribbon cutting last there, last year there, and it's, so far, it's been doing pretty well. It's a similar product and same density, give or take, and, and it's a very nice-looking product. It doesn't, it doesn't look or feel as crammed as, as one would think, so. And I've seen some of your other products online, and it looks very similar to that. Can you talk about some of the other, the other communities you have, that how does this stack up with some of the other density and units and parking and, and, just to, just to kind of line it up? Because I know there, there, you have some similar proj, projects in other communities, right?
Yes, we do, including in like the, you know, Carmel neighborhood in San Diego. So we have quite a few garden-style apartment complexes where we try to really front-load premium amenities, right? So they mentioned the splash pad, the garden, the pool. I mentioned the in-unit washer dryers. So we really try to make this be accessible and not be like giant towers in the communities to fit with the rest of the neighborhood. We do have higher-density proj, projects like in downtown L.A., downtown San Diego, that fit that urban fabric a little bit better. But for Palmdale, you know, that's why we are building less units than what's already allowed by the zoning, because we want to be able to match the, the, the density sense that is already in the neighborhood. So we do have quite a few of those garden-style communities throughout California in more suburban neighborhoods to kind of fit in more with the neighborhood and the needs of the community.
And I think they look nice. I think it's a nice quality housing project. I think it offers a lot of the amenities that, that people need, and, and it's, it, it looks nice. I've seen, I went online, I saw some of the, the pictures of some of the other communities. It looks very presentable. It doesn't look crammed. How does the parking work out? And, I mean, that's just, that's infamous. I mean, these types of housing comp, I mean, everywhere, it's.
They're, they're assigned to each family, and then they're, we're, we're giving more of the parking spaces to the units that have more bedrooms, because we recognize that there are gonna be more cars in there. But we try to give one at least to every unit, and then the two-parking ratio will go to like the four and the three bedrooms first. And then as the communities get vacated, then those parkings get reassigned by our leasing office. So it is a process that, that we have for, for parking assignments.
So it is formulated and perfectly figured out, because usually, I mean, it, it doesn't even matter, townhouse, condo, apartment, you go to them and it's just like, no parking.
Yeah, I don't have parking in my apartment, so I fully hear, and I live in a dense neighborhood, so I fully hear that concern, and it's. And I live in a dense neighborhood, so I fully hear that concern, and it's something that does come up. But at this point, we're trying to provide this much-needed housing, and the, the cost sometimes, it just doesn't support, you know, three to four parking spaces per unit.
No, I get it. It's all about making it pencil out.
How many stories are these?
Three.
Are you gonna have elevators?
We're gonna have, they're all walk-ups, but we have ADA units on the ground floor.
Okay.
And then the amenity building that's two stories does have an elevator.
Okay, and you said there was storage located where for the tenants?
So there's no, no storage located for the tenants, but they do have balconies.
That's one of the waivers.
And patios on each of the units.
Okay. Thank you.
And I, oh, sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead.
I do want to add that we're also installing a traffic signal at East Avenue Q and 15th Street intersection. So that's part of the scope of our project. We're working with the Public Works Department, and we've hired a consultant to design this intersection as well. And we're also bringing all the sidewalks up to ADA conditions as well. So we're really trying to make, to multiply the community benefit with this project.
And you have security built into your project?
Yes, we have gated security, phone access. We have mon, like, cameras, monitored 24-hour cameras, and a patrol as well for after-hours.
All right, so you did make me feel a little bit better by saying the benefit that's coming back to the city. And, you know, I know that there is a need for housing, and I'm grateful for the investment into the community. But what I was having a hard time wrapping my brain around is if your investors could come up with $139 million, why can't they come up with another laundry facility? Why, how is that gonna break the bank?
And then let me just dovetail off of that. So you said 139, but on the, on page five, it says that the cost... The current project budget is 58 million for, for the four current structures. Are you talking about both of the matters that are being, that are on our agenda today? Or is this, this says 58 million, and that each standalone building is 4.1 million? And that there are 14 current structures being proposed, and so the total cost is, the current project budget is 58 million?
Uh, that, that's not correct, yeah. It might be just for the hard costs alone, so I can, I can give like a detailed breakdown of what it is. So I'm trying to identify the 58 million that you're looking at, but that might have been just the...
Page five, it's sort of the end, right above paragraph three? Where it's asking, the way, it's in the section for waiver number two that you guys are requesting. It's the last sentence. It says the cost over would exceed the current project budget of 58 million for all 14 structures.
Right, so it's a calculation that we did for the cost of each of the amenity buildings. So adding another amenity building to meet the height requirement, that's what it would cost.
Okay, so that, that budget is only for amenity buildings?
Right, so that specific item related to that waiver has to do with that two-story amenity building. So what we were asked to calculate under density bonus law is the financial impact of what us not having that waiver would, would cause. So us splitting that one building into two would create a financial burden of the 58 million.
Got it, but it, it just, okay, so it's just phrased poorly, I think. It says current project budget is 50, so that, that's not the total budget.
Right, so it refers to a specific waiver that we're requesting under the density bonus agreement.
Any other questions from councils?
Last question. Who manages?
His question, the only reason why I raised it was because his question was, why can't you guys, if you're spending all this money on, you know, the overall project, and each building is 4.1 million?
I, yeah, I just want to express that we're stretching every penny right now. There's laws at the state level that have affected the equity pricing. So it's a, kind of like a very exact science, and we're trying to provide as many amenities as, as we can here with the money that we're able to get from our investors. So, but, but I hear you.
So you guys are getting TCAT funding, right? Tax Credit Allocation Committee funding?
Yes, but that's tied to what the investor can, can purchase, and the pricing is based on market conditions. So it's not direct, it's not a direct subsidy from the state.
Mr. Olson?
Yeah, I mean, so I know by law, we're required to do the density bonuses and, and different things, but we're not required to constantly give concessions to developers just because they ask for it. And the way that everything is worded here, it really doesn't explain it clearly. I don't know how many parking spots were required, but I know how many you're asking for. And I just would like to know more, like, how does that break the bank? How does that pencil out? And I want to know a little bit more about what the city benefits are. You mentioned the traffic signal, but, you know, does that offset the increase of traffic to the streets? Like, maybe it's my fault because I wasn't, I was out of country for the last week, and I didn't have a briefing, but it's not listed anywhere in here. So can you just maybe articulate a little bit more what concessions you're asking for, why you're asking for them, and what the city's gonna benefit back?
Sure, so the concessions that were, the concessions under state density bonus law were allowed to ask for five concessions, right, that deviate from design standards. So that's, that's something that by law we're allowed to ask for. The waivers, we need to ask for them because they preclude the design in some shape or form for the project and pose financial constraints to the project. So each of the items makes a reference to these conditions for each of the waivers, right? So as I explained, the, the laundry room would have a design and cost implication related that would make our project not be economically feasible or physically feasible to construct, right? So we're, even though this is 10 acres, we're constrained where we're trying to provide the most amount of units that we can while also providing these amenities. So constructing a standalone additional laundry room just wouldn't fit with the current site plan, and we would have to cut into the units that we're providing. Similarly, with the private open space, all of these are requirements that just simply do not fit in, in our site plan. So that's why is a design standard deviation as a form of a waiver.
Okay. So once it's built, who manages the day-to-day operations?
So we have a management company that we've worked with that's been around since the 70s. They're called Solari, and they manage about half of the developments in our portfolio. So they would be the, the manager, but our asset management team in our in-house, you know, staff would also have direct oversight of the project.
Do you keep staff there onsite? There's a manager there on the property, there's maintenance, there's...
Yeah, we have four units dedicated for onsite managers. We have additional assistant managers that are also on staff. We also have a resident services coordinator that manages the after-school programs for, for children, and the computer room, access to the community room, and lessons for adults. And we also have, I believe, three maintenance staff, full-time equivalents onsite.
That's what I like about these housing communities and complexes. They're like little worlds. You go inside, and, yeah, they're like their own little city, and everything's right there. And, no, I think it's, I think it's good. I, it's one of the reasons I wanted to be on city council is to see Palmdale grow, to see it develop, to see investment coming in. $130 million construction project is not a small investment. That brings a lot of jobs. It's, and it brings continuous jobs after it's built. So, and the bottom line is, people need housing bad. I mean, we need the houses. We need, we need rooftops. We need people, we need people to, to live out here. And more importantly, we need people to work out here, so... That's my support. That's all I'm gonna say.
And then can I just ask the city...
Okay. Thank you. Not to mention that we need these numbers for, for our RENA reports. So, and there's an absolute need for housing. There's always a concern about a major project like this bringing, you know, more traffic, more congestion, and so on. But you have to balance it out in terms of what's needed in the community. And housing is one of the most important needs that we have. So, you know, I'm certainly in support of it, and I think we can get all the numbers we can bring to raise our RENA numbers.
Thank you, and I just want to add that we did conduct a traffic study, and that's why we're working with Public Works to install this intersection as well. So I hear your concern there, too.
You're not too far from a developed residential area that's been there for quite a few years. Did you reach out to that community?
I, I believe so. Our acquisitions director reached out to them as well. And then all the surrounding uses go into the traffic study and the impact study as well.
And you didn't get any objections or any pushback at all?
Uh, no, they just echoed the need for, for the traffic signal, so that's kind of like the big issue that we heard.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you. I have one more question just for my information, but I think it's important for this conversation. Can you just explain to us all what our regional, what RENA numbers are? Where they came from? What our, what our allocation is and how this will help to meet those requirements by the state?
Be gone it, Brenda.
And RENA is Regional Housing Needs Assessment Allocation, and it's a state mandate, but please.
Yes, so each jurisdiction is assigned a number of housing units that we have to come up with. And I do want to point out specifically, this site is within our housing element and is listed as on the site's inventory. So we already certified that, and this is falling directly in line with that. The allocation that we have is somewhere around 6,600 or so. So this definitely gets us a little bit closer to our regional house needs assessment allocation. I do want to point out that we do also do an annual report, and that'll be coming to you in quarter one of next year.
And the timeframe within which we're, we're required to develop those 6,600 and meet that, that element figure?
Correct. It's 2029 is the end. I do also want to point out that you did...
Wait, what is it? So what is it? What's the time requirement?
It's until 2029. That's the cycle that we're in right now.
And, and can you let the public know what the penalty is if we don't make our RENA numbers? These, these are numbers provided or forced on us by the state of California, right?
I'm gonna defer to Alex.
Yes, yes, they are forced on, upon us, upon everyone, every city...
Every city.
In California. And then what was your second question?
Was the penalty if we don't make the numbers?
So they could not certify our housing element, which doesn't sound super scary, but it is essentially the housing element is part of our general plan, and if the state doesn't certify it, a whole bunch of legal things happen to the city, one of them being a builder's remedy, which means people can come in and basically build whatever they want, so...
And, and the state can withhold funding for housing.
Thank you, yes.
If we don't meet our element, that's the key one. They can just stop funding.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry, but just for future, my information for future decision-making, under the density bonus agreement, they're allowed to ask for up to five concessions. Are we required to award up to five concessions?
Yes, and no. We, so, bear with me here. So if they, on, essentially if they are good concessions, you have no discretion to deny them.
Who defines whether they're good or not?
So, second part.
I think the term is reasonable.
The, one is what, the two ways that you can deny a request for concession. One is if there is a specific adverse impact, and you have to make these in written findings. So it's either a written finding of a specific adverse impact or a written finding that the concession does not prohibit, essentially what they're asking doesn't show a cost reduction to the project. So you'll see in the ones that they asked for, she, the applicant kept going back to the fact that it was more expensive to build the project if those design standards were not waived. So in concessions, you can't, depending on your density bonus, you can have between one and five, depending on how many, how much affordable housing there is. Waivers can be unlimited. And waivers, they have, basically, city cannot deny them unless there is a specific adverse impact. So the state really ties our hands on what we can, can say yes and no to.
But the reason why, there's rationale, there's public policy behind what that is. So the, the sort of requirement for us to award a, a certain number of concessions is to incentivize the development of affordable housing that is much-needed in our state of California, so it's an offset. That's why. It's a public policy sort of consideration. If we're gonna mandate certain affordable housing for the developers to, to put in, put in their, their 100 and whatever, $50 million to build a, a project, to make it affordable housing, then there is, you know, we have, we give the concession. So I'm just explaining the rationale, not to say that, you know, we have to have that discussion now because we don't really have any say in it at this point, but that's why it was developed.
No, I, I get it, and I just wanted to fully work that through because, you know, I get that there's the need. I get that there's state mandate. I appreciate the investment, but you're not spending $150 million out of the goodness of your heart. It is going to make a profit for the company. So I just want to make sure that we're not giving these concessions that we don't have to give because growth, you know, investment, I'm grateful for it. There's a reason they're making the investment, though. And, and in a lot of cases, I think, in previous cases, I think we gave away too many concessions without getting a benefit back to the city. So I just wanted to fully understand why we were giving those concessions, and I am grateful to the benefits that are coming back. So I am happy with this, but I just want to be vigilant, because I think under previous councils, we got a little screwed.
Yes, and so under affordable housing, there are, obviously, there's always gonna be a profit margin, right? But under affordable housing, that profit margin diminishes. If you, if you have those 200 and however many units at market rate and can go up exponentially annually, that's a, creates a greater profit margin, so there's, there's a balance of interest there.
Yeah, what I know about these projects is that they're difficult to make them pencil. And so concession helps the developer to actually make this go forward. I mean, after all, we do live in a capitalist society. And, and the point is that we need to, we need to create opportunities for investors and developers to come to the city of Palmdale.
All right, I'm ready to vote. Is there any?
Well, no, 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 no.
No, I know.
I would like to point out that you do...
First, we have to call for public testimony.
I didn't say. I'm ready to vote.
I know you're ready. You just have to wait. So if the council, the council's done, I will open public testimony. Do we have any speaker cards on item number 5.2?
Yes, will the following individuals come forward to the podium? We have Jason Zink and we have Claudia.
I do also want to point out that you received some correspondence related to the item, and yet it's on the dais for you.
Thank you.
You know, I used to go to council meetings in the late 80s and 90s, and the biggest talking point was, we don't want to make the mistakes that LA made. We want a quality of life here in Palmdale. And, you know, so with that being said, how about guest parking? As you know, if you live in an apartment complex or a townhouse complex, you're fighting constantly for a guest parking spot. And, you know, so we've got to think about, an elevator. Can you imagine not having an elevator to put your furniture up on the third floor?
I could never get upstairs.
That's not gonna happen. That's not gonna work. We should have washers and dryers in every unit, you know, a bottom and a top. That's the minimum. We need quality of life. Also, a dog potty area. Tired of having not a designated dog potty area in apartment complexes. A grocery store. Austin Bishop, first thing I told you when you, when you ran was I wanted a grocery store right here in Corson Park, right there, so people could shop, so they don't have to go into a liquor store or gas station to do their shopping, because it's so far away. Vayarta is the closest one, and you have not fulfilled that promise. And it's so easy to do. That's what's so sad. Put it right there, right where Mr. Fry's was. Put, I've emailed you guys. You know what to do. We need a strong economic development leader department in the department, a strong housing, talented person, skilled person in housing. We do not have that in Palmdale. We need 6,600 units by 2029. That's three years. We built 155 units last year. That's, that's why Ronda Perez should have been fired, for that one reason. But there's so many more. A lot more. But the thing is, we need quality of life. Those people need to have, we need to, as a city, say, okay, we're gonna pave a big enough asphalt down 15th Street, down 25th Street, that these people can ride a bike or walk along the asphalt to the grocery store on Palmdale Boulevard, right? We're not gonna leave them stranded out there and say, "Hope you live good." We're not a bunch of hippies. This is 2005. We want quality of life in Palmdale. Huh?
We knew what you meant.
Yeah. But the thing is, I'm gonna speak on the next 5:3, but...
Your time is up, sir. I apologize. Next speaker?
Claudia.
Hi, good evening. My name is Claudia Perez and I'm a realtor here since 2016. And my parents have lived here since 1995. And I think that if you've lived here since then, you know that the sleepy Palmdale days are gone, right? I know that there is a need for housing, but why does someone that lives in, atop of a hill in San Diego, want to come and overwhelm the city of Palmdale? Okay, by, we already don't have enough police or fire departments to accommodate what we have now. So for them to come over here and just say, oh, we're going to build 267 units, which is 20 less than what they could really build, is not okay in my, in my mind. And you, as council members, that represent us, the citizens of Palmdale, should really advocate for that. Yes, you talk about Juniper Grove and how wonderful it is. It is. It's nice. It's really nice. But it's not even close to 267 units. It's 97 units, Austin, and you know that. Mr. Bishop? Right? 97 units? Am I correct? On half the space. So in total, how many units? Okay, so I'm right. It's like 97 units. So 267 units, it's going to overwhelm the city of Palmdale. And it's not okay. And you guys should look out for us because what's going on outside right now as we're all here, we all know that there's a lot of homeless people, mental illness out there. Why isn't that being addressed before you come and overwhelm the city with 267 units? What's going to happen in 10 years? Is it going to be the projects like in Watts? They're going to just be there, built and, okay, they're there and what? Who's going to take care of them? Is that what's going to happen to Palmdale? Because if it is, I'm, I'm out of here. Like, a lot of people from California are leaving. And you guys need to do better, honestly. Like, you guys are educated. You know what's going on in the city. Mr. Sal Mendez, you're new to the, the city because Ronda Perez is gone. But yeah, you guys really, the money is going to come, but in projects that are not going to overwhelm the city. And that's all I wanted to say. Yes.
So.
Mike, there you go.
The.
Hold on, Marcia.
The issue that's presented when these projects come forward is that this city council, as well as every other city council in the state of California, has its hands bound. The state of California imposes this on us and it has severe sanctions if we were to deny a project like this. And so we really don't have a choice. So, and we hear over and over again, people coming in and they protest these, these items. What you need to do is change the legislature. And I don't think that's going to happen anytime soon in this state, okay? Because that's where these laws are coming down from, the state of California.
And Mr. Loa, also, I just want to bring up that we've had some very large corporations want to bring businesses here and they won't because we have no housing for their employees.
That's true, too.
So it hurts us economically because the businesses aren't coming because there's no housing for their employees. So we always have to keep that in the back of our mind. Do you have comments?
And the answer to the housing crisis and homelessness is more housing.
Any other comments? Oh, I know. Okay, Marcia, you're on.
Avenue Q begins at Sierra Highway and ends at 40th East. It is a one-lane each-way road. 25th Street from Avenue P down to Palmdale Boulevard is a one-lane road. 15th Street from Avenue P to Palmdale Boulevard is a one-lane road. We are talking about 536 units being built with access to Avenue Q and Avenue P. Avenue Q has no access to the freeway on it. Avenue P only has access to those going south off of it. If not, they have to swing around and go under the freeway and come around to get on to go south. Electric plugs, I'm not into electric cars. Hybrids aren't all bad. But how's that going to work in these units? Every parking spot will have an electric plug? No. So who's going to get it? If they, if they get one and they sell their car, somebody else is going to get one? You get an electric car, there's not enough spots? What the heck's going to go on? Street parking, is there going to be access for cars to park on the street? Because we know, as it's been said, there will not ever, ever, ever be enough parking in these complexes, never, ever. And who's going to pay for possibly, I hope, a four-lane highway? 25th, 15th, Q, all turned into four-lane roads? That's what's going to need to be done to handle the volume of cars. 536 units between 25th and 15th are going to be built. 536 units with how many cars in each place?
Thank you, Marcia. Next?
Yeah, my concern is, one of the things that Marcia was just talking about is the, the impact on the traffic volume. Obviously, that's something that's going to have to be addressed because you're going to have gridlock all over the place. Before I get to the next one, I want to say this. There are most issues that I've ever seen arise. There's not a perfect solution that, that everybody is happy with. And so I really appreciate that you guys appear to be trying to flesh all this out and get the best possible solution for the largest number of people. Because that's really the best you can hope for. But the other thing I was wondering about, and this is just, it's a sincere question. Has there been any study on what all of these extra units being filled up with, you know, families, whatever? What impact is that going to have on local schools? Because, you know, we've got classrooms in public schools that are overcrowded already. Public schools don't have the best reputation because of that a lot of the time. So I don't know if that's been included on, you know, sort of an environmental impact study, if you will, but with regards to the people. So maybe that's something you could find out about. Other than that, and I'm glad you're sitting down because I don't want to knock you down here. Thank you for doing your due diligence on all of the fiduciary stuff that you're talking about today. It takes time, but I personally am glad to see that. It's something that's been lacking, in my opinion. So I'm really happy to see you guys trying to make sure that the people's money is spent wisely and not wasted. I do think that the AV Edge thing last time, you could have had them give you the information you wanted before you gave them the money. That's just the way I would have done it, but I'm glad to see you asking questions about where this money's going. Thank you.
Thank you.
On this item, real quick, I want to mention, we can't be very hard on Austin Bishop about not having grocery store there. I had a nightclub for 15 years on 27th and Palmdale Boulevard, not too far from this project. There was a beautiful Vons there for many, many years.
There was.
You know why they closed?
Lack of business or theft?
No. Grabbed the six-packs, grabbed the Pepsi and Coke and run out. Robberies, stealing, breaking into that store. Vons said enough is enough. They shut it down. It's been shut down now for the last 17 years. It's embarrassing, really. The closest shopping, I mean grocery store would be Viarta now for this center. It's a, it's a good center. I think we need housing, yeah.
Thank you.
I just, I wanted to ask a question as well. And I agree absolutely with what Rich is saying. This is incredibly great dialogue. Thank you. My question would be, as far as like that, that space and everything there, we're going to have gridlock, what about amenities, like what you're talking about? And, and then the only other comment, it seems like we hear about these things that are going to be mandated to the city. So in my industry, we have to deal with hurricanes. We know they're coming every year. We prepare every year for the hurricanes. It seems to me like there's, and tell me if I'm wrong, I feel like there's a disconnect going on that we know these things are supposed to happen. So why wasn't a lot of this stuff already dealt with? You know what I mean? That's just my question. I know we have to do these housing things and I totally agree with the, that we have to have developers come in. That's awesome. But it seems like, and again, please tell me if I'm wrong or if I'm missing something here. I'd like to learn about it, is in the development, the planning, I know when I'm driving around Palmdale, I feel like, man, in the past, things just got kind of thrown in and there was no real planning to it, you know, that looks good. Have you seen the new place down in New Hall where they've redone the main street down there? Have you, if you get a chance, go. It's totally cool. They've completely redone it and it's got a great vibe. And we need something like that, which is planning, true planning. Of sitting there saying, we want this to be here, getting the public's input in it and then following through on those plans. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
No further speaker cards on this section.
Okay, with that, I will go ahead and close public comments on that. Let me get to the right page here. I guess we should call for the vote. Any motions? Any seconds?
I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and call for the vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Hang on, I have to get to the right page here.
At 3, right?
At 3? At 5.
5.3.
Okay, so we're only on 5.3. And a few more to go. So let's go ahead and. Chair, clerk, could you please read the title of the resolution?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale approving a form of density bonus agreement, 25-0003, with Palmdale Family Apartments LP to facilitate the construction of a 272-unit multifamily residential development on two vacant parcels totaling approximately 9.8 acres, located at the northwest corner of East Avenue Q and 25th Street East, and authorize the interim city manager or is designated to exercise the option to amend the agreement as necessary, including minimal and/or non-substantial changes.
Thank you and welcome back. So go ahead and give us our staff report.
All right. The item before you tonight is a density bonus agreement to facilitate the construction of 272 multifamily residential units on two vacant parcels totaling approximately 9.8 acres. The project site is located on the northwest corner of East Avenue Q and 25th Street East. The proposed development consists of 13 three-story buildings containing a total of 272 dwelling units. Two recreational amenity buildings are proposed and will include an outdoor gathering area with a pergola shade structure, barbecue area and table seating with benches, a children's play area, a swimming pool area and garden courtyards located throughout the site. The project also includes onsite parking and trash enclosures for residents' use. A density bonus serves as a tool that allows an increase in the number of housing units that may be built onsite in exchange for the inclusion of affordable housing units or to request exceptions to development standards that help facilitate the construction. Based on the site's size and zoning, up to 4,905 units could be permitted. However, the applicant is proposing 272 units. The density bonus agreement includes five waivers, a reduction in front, in rear yard setback requirements, a reduction in garage sizes and a reduction in distance requirements between the residential units and required parking spaces and a reduction in building separation requirements. All 272 units are proposed to be designated for households with incomes not exceeding the low-income threshold established by HCD. This concludes my presentation. Staff and the applicant is available for any questions.
So there's parking spaces and garages?
Yes. So they are asking for a reduction in the required spaces and also the reduction in the garage sizes.
So how many garages are they going to have? Oh, sorry.
I think it's a different type of garage design. I think they're going to provide tandem parking and various alternative types of parking, but only in certain sections. But what I just want to say before we get to that, this is, this one is very similar to, but not exactly like the previous one. This one has a lot of amenities. This one's in my district. So Austin had one and I've got this one. This one's in my district. It's got a lot of amenities. And this one specifically doesn't ask for concessions. It, the other one had several concessions that we just awarded and waivers. This one, no concessions, just very specific waivers. So it's slightly different in that regard.
Can you tell me what is next to this proposed site? I can't make out what these long white tube-looking things are.
So that's an industrial facility.
Right next to a housing tract?
I think it's a storage center.
Yeah.
But across from Avenue Q, those are, those are residential homes, right?
Looks like there's a school there, too.
And keep in mind.
Okay. Green Bee's Nursery? Okay.
Right. So that was one of my questions, too. So in addition to the parking, if the developer could address what you're going to do to create a sufficient buffer and mitigate impact to the surrounding residential community.
There was some question about the land uses around the area. So I do want to point out that the property is zoned mixed-use 3. So technically, should this not be a housing project, commercial would be allowed. So it wouldn't all be residential in theory.
I have a question. This is the same, and I don't know, Brenda, you may not know this, but this is the same project that we voted on, the $80 million bond passed through two weeks ago. That was, that was the financing? That's the main source of financing?
That's not city money.
No.
No, no, I understand that, but it's the same project. There's a connection. And then, does the developer from the previous project connected to this one? I mean, the names of the two LPs are very similar. Yeah, family, Palmdale Family Apartments and, but they're not connected. Okay.
Come on up, sir.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Avi Noam Bural. I'm a senior associate on the development team at Lincoln Avenue Communities, who are a mission-driven affordable housing developer based in Los Angeles. You know, with a state and national presence, sort of developing rent-restricted and income-restricted housing all over the country. So really appreciate, first of all, the staff's time. You know, you guys are blessed to have a great staff here at the city of Palmdale and we've been very happy to work with Brenda and her team and Public Works and all the various folks, as well as your time tonight. To, you know, just to recap, you know, we've already been through the planning commission hearing and, you know, we got lucky to have approval on that a few weeks ago. And so we're grateful to be in front of you guys here for the approval of the density bonus agreement related to this project. So to just jump into specifics that you, who had, and there were a few questions. So if I miss something, please jump back in and let me know. But regarding the parking, so, you know, I think here are, the way we're, if you look at the renderings, which I think are really, really gorgeous and I think it's going to be a really great addition to the city, it's, you know, these walk-up projects with a, with tuck-under parking. So, so the tenants will get to have, you know, to park right under their units, which I think is a great amenity. And so we'll have about 186 parkings that are like, you know, this garage-style parking that are tuck-under and 266 parking spots that are across the site, distributed, you know, surface parking. You know, the next question was regarding, you know, impacts on surrounding uses. You know, we are, we do, you know, we, we got a chance to, you know, been here numerous times, you know. And so one of the advantages of this site is that there aren't too many surrounding uses. You know, we have the nursery across the street. There's the storage, you know, which is pretty quiet. And then across the street, you know, there's a residential community and, and then the high school. And so overall, in terms of, you know, you know, impacts of the community, you know, we'll have, the project, the community will be fully fenced in with, you know, CMU walls. So it should, you know, mitigate, you know, impacts in terms of noise and, you know, visual, the visual impact as well. And so that's, I said, primarily the way, the way that the, the community will be mitigated. You know, I would also, just on the broader topic of mitigation, mitigating impacts, I wanted to. I wanted to mention that as part of the community, we will be, you know, dedicating, uh, right-of-way on Avenue Q, dedicating right-of-way on 25th, uh, new traffic signal, there's a bus turnout. So we've really worked with Public Works to, to do a variety of things. Um, you know, and this is a site that, uh, the city's zoned for housing. Uh, and so that's what we're trying to do. Um, so we're happy to be here and answer any additional questions.
I just want to say thank you for working so closely with us and to make sure that this project is sort of all-inclusive and holistic and, and delivers the sort of best end product. Like you said, a fully sustainable community, um, that takes into consideration its, its, its impact on the surrounding areas. My question is, is more to our city manager and maybe our departments. We, the two projects that we're dealing with tonight, you know, 15th Street, 25th Street, 270 units here, 200, you know, the total, over 500 units within a very small area. And I know we look at each development project separately, but have we assessed the sort of global impact to that corridor in terms of traffic congestion? I mean, well, we've got all these units across from a high school. Drop-off, pickup is gonna be a nightmare. And so there's gotta be a traffic mitigation plan, not just for, for, for this housing, but it needs to work in cooperation with the other one because Palmdale High School, you've got Sage, I mean, you've got, there's all the tumblewee, there's all these kinds of schools around that we gotta make sure, um, that we take into account all of this additional population on top of, you know, key times congested, um, times a day. It's really, that will impact quality of life exponentially. A lot of people use Q as an alternative to, to the Boulevard. And so that's, I don't know that that's gonna be an option anymore. So I don't, have we done a more global traffic impact study, um, with both? Not, this is not to you, obviously, but for, for our staff, have we done a global, uh, traffic impact or community impact study? Not SEQA per se, but real, real-life impacts on our infrastructure and on our, uh, with both projects together.
And Andrea, don't forget that the Sheriff's Department is located at the...
And the Sheriff's Department, right, then they, they use Q to bypass the Boulevard, too.
So I can speak to these two projects specifically. Um, this brought, was brought up earlier, there was a question about how this is environmentally assessed. Um, unfortunately, we do have the State of California Government Code section that precludes a lot of these types of projects from SEQA. However, our saving grace is that all of our checklists do have requirements to submit certain studies. So as long as we ask for those at time of submission, which we do, then that's why we do have the traffic impact analysis reports from both of these projects that consider each, each project and it's a cumulative study.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not so much concerned about what's mandated by the state 'cause those are quite convoluted types of studies and reports and a lot of them are cookie cutter and the, the language of, is not community-specific. I'm talking about the city, really looking at and understanding, working with Public Works and our, you know, public safety departments to see what the real impact is gonna be with, um, this level of, of growth in that very refined corridor.
These projects comes with, uh, with impact fees, right? And the city does get a generous amount. We don't, I mean, I wouldn't expect you to know off the top of your head what these impact fees are, but it is, it's enough to either maintain or expand or, or do what, do what we need to do to keep the city functional along these corridors. Is that correct?
Correct, and I do want to point out that the only impact fees that affordable projects are exempt from are the public art fees. So they do pay school fees and traffic fees and things like that.
Yeah, that public art fees are like 1%, 2%, 3%, it's like something like that.
Yeah.
Oh, you mean the fees, the fees that Willdown are gonna assess, right? Those fees, well, maybe.
Okay, so it sounds like nobody's done the, the joint assessment, but can we get it done? Can we do something to, to take into consideration both projects' impact on the east side?
The, the Avenue Q, I just want to say Avenue Q gets very, very busy as the schools are all getting out between 3:00 and 3:30. They're all arterial schools and they're, all those parents are going down Q and I know this because my grandson goes to, uh, Montessori on Avenue Q and the traffic, not just the parents, is horrendous, but the school buses 'cause they all go down Q and then they, you know, cut down the side streets to go to their schools. So it's, it's gonna impact schoolchildren and their transportation to and from, too.
Sure, the city has assessed what's called the Avenue Q Corridor Study.
Right.
So for Avenue Q, yes, that has been assessed for the city, I cannot speak too much.
When was that assessment done? Was that in light of this or that's before?
No, this was around the time that we adopted the general plan.
Yeah, so I'm not talking about all of these mandated annual things that we do. I'm talking about because we've got these two before us now, can we just think like, you know, logically, we, can we just do a, a basic assessment on real-life impacts on, given the likelihood that these are going to be i- in development, in, in construction? This one has to be, uh, what, November 20, November 17th or when is it, 27? Something like, something like that, like in the next couple of weeks, they're gonna start construction. So we need to, like, we don't have time to do, you know, uh, hire a consultant to do an assessment and do all of these things. We can do sort of a, a, a real-life consideration of, of some of these impacts with both projects in that corridor.
Brenda, correct me if I'm wrong, but the traffic impact report, each, each one submitted a traffic impact report, but they both accounted for each other's growth. Am I correct in that?
Correct.
They, so they each did one?
They each accounted for each other's, each other's growth. So, yeah, so it was a cumulative study with both. They each accounted for each project.
Okay, can we get that? I mean, we, that was not included in here, do we have that? Can, can we see it? Because I think that's really what the people in the community want to know, like, how is this gonna affect my day-to-day life? Right, and then to, to Mayor Protem's point, um, I think I heard you say that there's gonna be an emergency access lane, is that correct? Or, or can we ensure that there is one? Because if the, she is absolutely correct, she works for the department, but the, the department is, is located off of, off of that area, off of Q, and they use that, uh, to, to bypass the Boulevard. And if there's, if there's school buses, there's all these parents trying to pick, in pickup lines and there's now 500 new, new housing residential units, how are, how are our emergency responders going to, um, get to and from? Is that gonna increase emergency response capabilities? Is there gonna be an emergency access lane? If there is not one proposed, can we now incorporate one?
Megan, welcome.
Hi. Um, so I did want to chime in on the, um, traffic analysis that Brenda was mentioning earlier. It is cumulative, it includes both projects, it does a very thorough assessment and it is available online. It was, uh, reviewed by the Planning Commission when they adopted the site plan. So it, it is on our website.
Okay, can we put it here and then can we, like, make sure, like, again, can we put, create a link and put it, like, on the staff report? So that, I mean, we as council members didn't know that it, it was there, even though the Planning Commission already reviewed it, the public didn't know. These are the questions, like, if I would've read the, the cumulative traffic study, a lot of the questions that are, we're asking now, we, they would've already been answered before the hearing. So can we get that, um, like, immediately and maybe attach it somewhere that's easily accessible for the public and notify them?
Sure.
Thanks. And the emergency access lane? What did the traffic study, the cumulative traffic study talk about in terms of emergency response and access?
I, so our, our staff isn't, um, well-versed in analyzing the traffic analysis. That would be in our Public Works Department, so maybe one of them can get up and speak to the actual content.
Is there anybody here that, that can speak to, um, the review of emergency responder access along that Q corridor?
Our traffic engineer is not present at this meeting, but we can have him draft a memo and send it to the city council regarding that.
But we gotta approve it and they gotta get, they gotta get their, they're mandated to initiate work.
Did, did you want to come up and speak? You're welcome to.
Yeah, I apologize, I wasn't involved in the review process of city engineer and traffic engineer was, so I wouldn't be able to speak on that.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Any other questions from council? All right, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and open, uh, public testimony.
Do we have Jason Zink?
Jason Zink?
I'm gonna repeat what we should always say. We don't want to repeat what they did in LA. We don't want LA's mistakes, we want a quality of life here in Palmdale. That's why we, a lot of people moved from the basin to Palmdale to have a quality of life and give their kids a quality of life. Can you imagine a three-story building and not an elevator to take your sofa up to your unit? And you guys just approved it without an elevator. I want you to go on 5th Street East between Avenue R and Palmdale Boulevard. Look at all those apartments. Look at all the cars that are parked out in the vacant lots that aren't even, have apartments yet. That's okay. Just go look at that. And look at the mess. You're gonna have, the city's gonna have to buy vacant lots and put parking lots in for those residents that live in those apartment complexes. And they're gonna have to do it here, too. And those are people that live there, not even the guests that come visit the people. I'm thankful for the investors, but the problem is, we don't have the talented staff that's dealt with developments, with developers, master plans, that are planning this stuff out. So most of all these questions are already solved. We do not have this house in order. We do not have the talent, the skilled, uh, people in the city staff. We need highly skilled people. We are the sixth-largest city in LA County, headed to be the third-largest city in LA County, if we do things right. We need a park, we need a city park. On 20th Street East, Avenue Q, the 10 acres there, the vacant land? Buy it, build a park, so these two communities can go. And amenities are great, but kids need a place to run and, you know, and play. And there are schools there. I just want us to remember, quality of life, you know? I know personally, I know, I've been doing real estate for 35 years here. I know land, it's all over. We could build 5,000 units right, right away. But there's no plan, there's no networking, there's nothing. There's no networking of developers and builders and stuff in the city of Palmdale. It's all piecemeal. Okay, you do your thing, I'll do my thing over here, this thing over here. We do need a grocery store, Bishop. Loa, 32 lots. I showed you those lots almost two years ago. Why aren't they built? That's you. That's your district. You. You made a mistake, didn't you? By not, huh? You were lazy. You were all lazy. The staff is lazy. And we just deserve better. We're paying the high...
Thank you. Next speaker? Mark, do you want to come up?
Section?
And then, Mark and then Marcia behind him?
Guys, man, this has probably been one of the best city council meetings in Palmdale that I've been to because of the dialogue that you guys have created with everybody here. These questions that you're asking the staff, that you're asking the people that are coming up here and presenting, has been totally awesome. I feel that it's moving in a better direction for the people here in Palmdale, that you guys really are starting to see something here that, you know, like I said, I'm really impressed on how you guys have handled the meeting today with the presenters. And the questions that you actually threw on the table, those are the questions that need to be asked and I wish Lancaster would do that. But you guys showed me something here today that I was very impressed and I just want to say thank you. Also want to say thank you to Eric. Eric, thank you for accepting our invitation to the meeting tomorrow with Palmdale Freedom Coalition. We're looking forward to having a dialogue with you, a positive dialogue. So thank you, okay?
Thank you very much.
I think I may have dozed off, um, on the 5.3. I, I didn't hear how big, how tall these apartments were gonna be, three-story. And no elevators? No elevators, okay. So I assume that the disabled people, such as myself, will be on the first floor of this one also. I don't know how many units there are. Will they be only disabled? What if a, somebody that's robust gets in one and then a disabled person comes and... Okay, so then we have the mom and the baby and the groceries. Yeah, unless you call that a disability, they're screwed as far as getting up those stairs with the stroller. I don't know how this is gonna happen, anything other than the first floor. I don't know how it can be approved, how it ever got approved in this day and age, that an elevator is not anything even with just two stories. It, that's ridiculous to think anybody that's living in someplace can get all their stuff and their kids, too, upstairs. And that, this is gonna be a disaster, it's gonna be a disaster. And also what will be a disaster is if you make an emergency lane. Because that emergency lane is going to be a racing lane. And then if you think it's not, it certainly, they drive down those changing middle lanes like it's a lane now. So if you think putting an emergency lane is gonna help anybody, you know, it is absolutely not. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcia. Any other speaker cards?
No further speaker cards.
I have one, one follow-up question. Um, so when we did the, or when the traffic, uh, studies were done, did we consult with, um, LASD and, and LA County Fire? And its impact on their operations?
Yes, hello, yes, all of our projects are circulated to LASD and LA County Fire.
And what were their comments, suggestions, responses to the proposals?
Uh, no comments from LASD and LA County Fire. They have their own set of development standards that they need to comply with. So they have to be deemed complete by fire to proceed to public hearing. So there's just...
So what does that mean? I mean, did they support it, did they not? I mean, I don't know.
Yes, they provided, uh, approval and conditions that are included in the...
And they're both here, so I just want to make sure, were you guys aware of this? I mean, do you guys have any thoughts on, on what, if anything, um, we should do moving forward here? If you don't, that's fine, I'm just offering, providing the opportunity. If you have any thoughts or feedback, we'd love to hear from you. Yeah, please.
Good evening, thanks.
Absolutely, thank you.
So what I'm saying is, uh, when this came, LA County Fire predates my time in the Office of Assistant Fire Chief, but I believe before they can propose their projects, they have to go through Universal Fire Code and LA County Fire Code and part of that is vehicular access and roads and lanes. Um, as far as answering the question specifically on the need of emergency traffic lanes, taking into consideration that what they may end up being used for, our vehicles are 42,000 pounds, 72,000 pounds respectful, respectively. And if I don't have a lane to push those rigs through, we end up going opposing traffic and that's a problem. So, uh, just want to answer in plain English, um, and I hope that answers your questions.
That does, thank you very much.
Does it? Okay, sometimes this thing hurts more than it helps and I'm trying...
It was absolutely helpful, so do the, do the joint projects? The county fire stations aren't on Q, yours is there.
The sheriff is...
So these go through the Sheriff's Department through facilities planning. Uh, they go through a review process. At first, they ask for a comment from us, but we usually look at SEPT type principles, trying to make sure it's conducive to public safety-type issues, not anything for planning or roadways ingress, egress, that type of stuff. So we just do a general comment.
My, my concern was that you may have seen one project submitted to you and then a month or two or three later, you got the other project submitted to you. And sometimes I wonder if you knew that they were both gonna be within a half-mile of each other.
To be honest, I don't have any, like, personal knowledge of this actual one, uh, coming through my desk, but I could research it after the fact.
Okay, yeah, if you have any questions or concerns, can you please let us know?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And then now if we could hear from the developer, is there, um, the provision for an emergency access lane?
So, yeah, um, as the gentleman from the, uh, County Fire Department mentioned, um, all the plans were circulated and actually been approved by LA County Fire in terms of meeting all their requirements and access requirements and fire hydrant locations and, um, you know, all that to make sure it's compliant with all their codes. In terms of the, uh, right-of-way, which I think is what you guys are, you know, most concerned about, um, as part of the conditions of approval that Planning Commission approved and that the developer accepted, uh, was a dedication on both Q and 25th of about 17 feet of right-of-way. And so, uh, my understanding is that, uh, that's gonna be used for a, sort of a turn lane on 25th Street, um, going south. And then on, uh, on the 20th, uh, and then on Q, uh, there's gonna be a bus, uh, again, per the city's request, uh, you know, an area for a bus turnout and, uh, a lane to get into the development. So, um, from our perspective, you know, we are providing and dedicating, uh, you know, uh, private property for the right-of-way that the city, um, you know, that the city can then use, you know, as they see appropriate.
So before the project gets this far and comes all the way to the City Council and then Planning Commission, you gotta get through the school district. You gotta get, you gotta get approvals and checkboxes from school district, water, traffic and safety, Public Works, uh, what else? public works, what else? There's like, because I mean, we've been through a handful of projects lately, and, and fire, sheriff, I mean, how many boxes do you have to check from different? I know it's quite the laundry list.
Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty extensive, so, you know, since we received the, the Planning Commission approval, of course, we still have this approval with you all tonight, but we've also been working with the city building department on the plan check to review all the plans, the public works department on draining, drainage, grading, storm, stormwater. And then in addition, there's sort of outside approvals from the Antelope Valley Air Quality Management District, LA County Public Health, a variety of other ones that I.
No, it is, because we've seen a lot of, a lot of projects we approve here, and there was one I remember specifically, it was, I think it was Avenue P and 15th West. And it was another one, we've gone through approvals on projects, and, and they, they, they approve, and we pass them on the council level, but a lot of the times they fail for lack of approval from school or water district or fire. So it's just not us, this, you know, I'm, I'm glad you're going through and you're getting all the approval. Yeah, it's, we're just one of the many boxes that get checked off on the approval process. I'm just very grateful that you're bringing this project to us. Yes, I, I wish the density was lower, I do. I wish there was another type of product that was a little less dense, but unfortunately, this is the housing we need, this is what pencils out, and this is, this is the product that, that the market is offering the city right now, and that's just where we're at.
And I just wish you'd have an elevator for the old people, the crippled people, and the people with kids. Just keep it in the back of your mind. But I know they're very expensive, so. Any other comments from the council?
Yeah, well, just real quick, because I think we kind of threw you off. We asked you a completely different set of questions than we did the previous developer. But it's important that we get this right. And I like that Councilmember Bishop and you addressed the concerns about the schools and the other things, that they do have their involvement, and there are different checks. But this stretch of road has very unique challenges, so we're either going to make this worse, or we're going to make it better. But this is also the stretch of road we named after Deputy Klinkenbrumer, so we better get it better.
That's very important.
I was at that council here, and where you guys approved that.
Oh, very nice. Okay. All right. I don't think we have any more questions for you, but I do need to get a motion and a second to adopt the resolution.
I will move.
Have a motion, have a second? This is just to adopt. So we have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution CC 2025-087. Could we call for the vote?
Motion passes unanimously.
Go ahead and officially close public hearing. And now we have to call for the vote. This is what says on my thing, it says, "Call for vote."
We already voted. We already voted.
I'm just reading my script, it's highlighted in yellow. I don't want to forget anything. With that, we're going to take a 10-minute break, if you all don't mind, so we can use the restroom, get a drink of water, and let you stretch your legs, and we'll be back at 7:45. Call the meeting back to order for the city council, so if you could please take a seat, that would be greatly appreciated. And we're going to be moving on to item number 5.4. So with 5.4, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. City Clerk, could you please read the title of the ordinance and the resolution?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palmdale approving Zone Change 25-0002 and Zoning Ordinance Amendment 25-0003 to address inconsistencies and streamline review procedures and finding that the project is consistent with Program Environmental Impact Report 22-002, prepared and certified in conjunction with the city's general plan. Resolution, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale, California approving General Plan Amendment 25-0002, amending the land use map and finding that the project is consistent with Program Environmental Impact Report 22-002, prepared and certified in conjunction with the city's general plan.
Thank you. I actually have two items that say for us to introduce the motion or the ordinance. So do you want to do the motion and a second to introduce the ordinance now, or do you want me to do it after we call for public testimony?
Well, the, so the, the process is, once it's read into the record, then the next part is to introduce it, just with a voice vote.
Okay, so we're just going to introduce it, so.
Yes, just introduce it.
Could I get a motion and a second to introduce the ordinance?
Move to introduce.
Did you say something, Gary?
I said I'll move it.
Oh, we're just going to move it?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second? It's just a voice vote?
Yes.
Vos, okay. Voice, vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. Now we're going to move on to staff report. Hello again, Brenda?
The item before you tonight is a general plan amendment, Zone Change and Zoning Ordinance Amendment. This item consists of two parts, map amendments and zone text amendments. The map amendments apply to three separate project sites and involve changes to both the general plan and zoning maps. The text amendment involves updates to the commercial standards in the zoning ordinance. Map amendments, let's begin with the first project site located at the northwest corner of East Avenue R8 and 40th Street East. This site consists of two parcels totaling approximately two acres and is owned by Southern California Edison. The site is currently developed as an electrical, electrical substation with no physical changes proposed. One parcel is already designated as utilities, while the other parcel currently carries an inconsistent designation of single-family residential 3. The proposal will modify the second parcel's designation to utilities and ensuring consistency across the site. The zoning for both parcels will be modified to utilities and right-of-way, which corresponds with the utilities designation. The second project site is located at the northeast corner of East Avenue Q and 40th Street East, consists of five parcels totaling approximately 68 acres. The site is owned by the Palmdale School District and is currently vacant. The general plan currently designates the property as both employment flex and regional commercial. The proposed modification will establish a new designation and zone of educational flex, which better aligns with the future uses of the parcel. The third project site is located at the northeast corner of Palmdale Boulevard and 55th Street East and consists of five parcels totaling approximately 41 acres, which are currently vacant. The general plan designation for this site is Residential Neighborhood 2, and it is proposed to be modified to Residential Neighborhood 1 with a corresponding zone change to change the density from 5 to 10 dwelling units per acre. Overall, the proposed map amendments will bring the general plan designations and zoning into alignment with established and anticipated land use, uses across all three sites. Part two is the text amendment. The second component of this is a text amendment, as directed by the city council during the adoption of the Palmdale 2045 general plan. Staff have been working with collaboratively with the Main Street Coalition to streamline and clarify commercial zoning standards. This proposed amendment development, was developed through that ongoing process and focuses on two specific commercial uses, drive-through restaurants and fueling stations. For drive-through restaurants, the amendment will require that any new drive-through restaurant be located no closer than 250 feet from any other existing or proposed drive-through restaurant. The distance will be measured from menu board to menu board of the proposed drive-through to the nearest menu board of another drive-through restaurant in the area. Additionally, the waiver process for the separation requirement will be eliminated. For fueling stations, the amendment will require a minimum separation of 300 feet between any new fueling station and an existing or proposed fueling station. This distance will be measured from the closest fueling pup to the proposed station to the closest fueling pup of another station. This amendment provides greater flexibility in reviewing proposed projects while allowing for consideration of site-specific conditions. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
I have a question for your, your map project 3. Can you explain to the public what the difference is between residential 1 and residential 2?
Sure, so it's a lower-density requirement, and given the market, as you can see, it's really hard to make these types of projects pencil, so lowering the, the density will help bring some development to the site.
Okay, great, thank you. Does any other council members have any questions?
No, I just want to, I want to thank, thank you for the work that you did with the Main Street Coalition. I know that was kind of an arduous process. You were far apart, and somehow you brought it to a point where they're not necessarily 100% happy with it, and perhaps people on our side are not necessarily happy with it either. That's always an indication of, of a good resolutions. But I think that, that you and, and the city manager's office worked very hard to get this done, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
It's a good thing.
Wasn't there a project on 40th and Palmdale Boulevard that was looking for a lower density as well?
There's a project on 40th and Palmdale Boulevard that currently has a gas station. At one point, there was some residential that was incorporated into the plan, there no longer is.
Next to that. Anyway, we get four general plan amendments a year, right? At the beginning of this year, we used three of them in the months of January and February. I don't ever want to see that happen again. We have an opportunity to space these out, to have multiple applications in one like we did here. So, you know, I have questions about the one that's, was asked to be included, that's not included, but I'll do that later, and I just want to say that we need to change the way we do this.
All right. Austin and Thomas, questions, concerns?
This is the, this is the third or the fourth change we've had?
Fourth.
This is the fourth one. Okay, so starting next year?
We start over with four.
Okay. Yeah, I would agree with Councilmember Olson, it'd be nice to space it out. And even though we just did our general plan, as we see, the way things are zoned, certain projects pencil, certain projects don't. Other areas look like they're going to be better for, for some things, but thank you for the job you do, and the last two items, you, you, you got us through. I've noticed a lot of things that happen, take place in the UConn Dev Department. It's, it's about, you know, finding a middle ground, finding something reasonable that works for everyone. I've learned we're not going to make everyone happy all of the time, but finding reasonable solutions to the zoning and, and some livable situations and finding something that works for developers and businesses that come in. It's not always easy, but thank you for making it work, and I know that's what, that's doing here, and, and we appreciate it. Like I said, it's not, it's something that's going to be always evolving, is how we develop and grow our city, so.
All right. Thank you very much. Anything else before we call for public testimony?
No, I've just echoed off of that, because the, the reason it's important to get this right is because there are projects that come forward that, you know, developers and investors might not want to go through the hassle of going through a general plan amendment. If it's not a zoning that's guaranteed for the project to look financially viable, they'll back out. So I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, using our four we get a year early on in the process and making them wait months and months and months, because if investors have to wait too long, they'll back out. That, that's the only concern, and I'm not too mad, it just appears that way.
Okay.
Madam Chair, Members of the Council, we, we listen to that, and that's why we're scheduling them quarterly from now on, so we'll have, we'll have them quarterly spread out.
Okay, that's, that's a very good idea. All right, and with that, I'm going to go ahead and call for a public testimony on item number 5.4.
Will the following individuals come forward? Jason Zink and Kobe Estes.
It gives me no pleasure, really, to call people lazy, but the thing is, we keep thrashing around like a wash machine, all this stuff. We have to get this house in order. We have to do it. We have to hire some talented people in order to run this city in these departments. They need help. The thing about this ordinance, I'm going to ask you guys to postpone it and wait for other applicants to go into it, because as you know, you only have four. This was another reason why Rhonda should have been fired, because she did three right away, when you only get four a year, general plan amendments. So much recklessness. But anyway, you remember going to Robertson Auto, Auto Repair, right Bishop? Because he had problems with the general plan and him trying to open that up and everything like that. I remember a couple months ago, there was a gas station right here, QuickServe, and they had a general plan problem, right? And all they want to do is make the building look nicer, so downtown Palmdale looks nicer. But I don't see his project in here. It's always like the little people, the little, and he's been paying sales tax for the last 20, 30 years to the city of Palmdale. We had El Torreil, Spurlings, Palmdale Trophy, right? 50 years those people have been paying sales tax, and you guys didn't even recognize them when they died. Vince from El Torreil, Mr. Spurling, Roy Spurling. You guys didn't even recognize him. Didn't even have somebody attend their funeral. 40, 50 years paying sales tax to this city, and you guys didn't even do the meeting in their honor. There is something really wrong with this city. But you need to postpone this, you need to go to the planning, Brenda, and Taggart, and say, "How many other requests can we possibly put in this amendment?" And get these people moving and make Palmdale better. That gas station owner deserves you, Bishop. You represent him. Can you go see him? Will you talk to him? See what his project's about? See how we can make it better? Do not pass this until we have, get these, all these businesses in this, in this same amendment, so they can move forward with their projects, please, as a favor to the people of Palmdale.
Hello. My name is Kobe Estes, and I actually came for a later topic, but I saw this one on the agenda, and I am a little bit intimately knowledgeable about this, because I was on the G-PAC originally, along with Mr. Zink, I believe. And we spent a lot of meetings, a lot of hours, a lot of time, speaking with community members, with each other, with city members, a lot of meetings. We did COVID meetings, Zoom, in-person surveys, and it just does seem like that, in reading the text amendment on this bill, that it kind of does start to stray from the spirit of what we learned in that, in all those sessions, where the clarification or flexibility that we're trying to add in by putting things closer together, like gas stations and drive-throughs. My memory from five years ago is that people said, "Let's try to spread out the city and leverage our space and leverage our green areas and leverage everything we have." And it seems like these G-PAC, I mean, these general plan concessions are squeezing us back in, and I don't know anybody here, I don't know all the, everything, I don't know all the politics, I just do know that in those meetings for two years, the one common thread we heard was leverage what we have here in the AV, which is space, proximity, and make sure that people have a good general life and a good general sense of where they're living, and putting things closer together, which this amendment allows from the text portion does seem to stray away from that, so I just want to know, make sure we try to be mindful of that at least, as we make these amendments and changes to the general plan. I know our committee was just a committee to make recommendations, didn't have much power, but we talked to a lot of people and took a lot of surveys, and people were very, very strongly opinionated on that topic, so, sorry, I'm nervous. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your time on G-PAC, sir.
Thank you. No further speaker cards.
No other speakers? All right, I'll go ahead and close the public comments, public testimony. So now I will ask for a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance, number 1663, and Resolution Number CC 2025-085. Is there any discussion by council? Anybody want to talk about this before we vote?
I think it's good enough.
I think I said everything.
You're going to move? We have, we have a motion and a second? Yeah?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second? Voice vote or computer vote?
No, we're doing a computer vote, ma'am. So start voting, please. Motion passes.
Thank you. And I did get a, a text from Andrea, she, she will be back shortly, in case anybody's I, I don't know why she's not here, but she said she'll be back, so, that's all I know. Okay, we're moving on to item number, let me get it, 5.5. So we're going to open the public hearing on this. City Clerk, could you please read the title of the ordinance and resolution?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palmdale amending sections 8.04.410 and 8.04.430 and repealing sections 8.04.440 through 8.04.510 of the Palmdale Municipal Code to prohibit fireworks, finding the ordinance exempt from CEQA. Resolution, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale, California, making its. making its expressed findings as required by section 17958.7 of the Health and Safety Code of the State of California relating to the adoption of ordinance number 1664 prohibiting all fireworks and finding it is not a project per CEQA.
Thank you. At this time, could I get a motion in a second to introduce the ordinance?
Move to introduce the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion in a second?
Voice vote.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. So moving with that, um, staff report.
All right. I was a mouthful. Good evening, Madam Mayor Protam, City Council. My name is Mario Vayarta and I serve as the Public Safety Manager. The item before you is a proposed adoption of ordinance 1664, which amends and repeals parts of chapter 8.04 of the Palmdale Municipal Code to prohibit the use, sale, and possession of fireworks in city limits. So if available for any questions.
Questions, comments, concerns?
Comments?
Yes.
Okay. So the World Series ended, game seven. Very dramatic form. And then I heard explosives going on all over the place. And so people were celebrating. So the ordinance, the one they have in Lancaster, the one that's being, well, and of course illegal, these fireworks are illegal because they're going, they're bursting up in the air. And they're very loud. And, um, so Safe and Sane wasn't involved at all with that. There was no Safe and Sane being sold. That I know of, no Safe and Sane was being burned on the streets anyplace. So an ordinance like this doesn't really have any connection, any nexus to the problem, which is the illegal fireworks. That's what causes the problems. I mean, first of all, just dealing with the pets. They're frightened. And you know, Frank, I don't know that there is a solution to that. Unless we close down the borders and don't allow any influx from Nevada and from Mexico, I just don't know how it's ever going to get done. And so we passed an ordinance like this one. And the effect that it's going to have is on the people that enjoy Safe and Sane, of course, celebrating the Fourth of July, right? Independence Day, that made us a free nation. And without consideration, it appears, and I don't know, I could be wrong if there was any outreach to the 40-something organizations that have applied for selling the Safe and Sane fireworks during the Fourth of July holiday. I don't know if that happened or not. So, um, the point I'm trying to make is there's no rational basis for this ordinance. There is no connection. Now, there's a, a table here that talks about calls for service received, illegal fireworks confiscated, and city administrative citations issued. I would assume, and I could be wrong, Mr. Vayarta, that the city administration citations issued were most, or perhaps all, related to illegal fireworks. Am I right about that?
That's correct.
Right?
That's correct.
Not about Safe and Sane, right?
Maybe a few in there, but yes, the majority would be illegal fireworks.
And, and what would be the basis for Safe and Sane? They're, they're in the no fireworks, there's areas of the city where we can't have any kind of, and that's, and that's, that's rational. We understand that. But for the rest of the city, there's no real connection. Now, and I'll, I'll, I'll end it with this. If there's one place that bans all kinds of fireworks, Safe and Sane, illegal fireworks, any other kind of fireworks, it's down below. And it is the Fourth of July year round. Right? And they have all these laws. They have no basis. I don't think we should pass this ordinance. Thank you.
I'll go. All right. So I know this is very passionate. It's been very heated. And I mean, either way you look at it, half the people love fireworks. The other half the people hate fireworks of all kinds. So this is something that you either love them or you hate them. And I never thought I'd sit in this seat and even have a discussion about banning fireworks because I like fireworks. I think they're, I think, you know, I think they're great. However, this, this discussion became more relevant since the Cal map, the Cal Fire Maps, put half, or a good chunk of Palmdale in the high fire severity zone, which makes it so we can't even have Safe and Sanes in a good chunk of the city. Basically, any, anything on the foothills, anything that has dry brush around it, anything in Rancho Vista, Anaverte. There's a large chunk of the area now where you just can't even have Safe and Sane fireworks. There's even a couple of parts of the, of the city where you can have fireworks on this side of the street. And then on the other side of the street, you can't have Safe and Sane fireworks. So I know enforcement is going to become more difficult. And as time goes on, the maps are probably going to get more strict as Cal Fire makes it more difficult. So I think that's why we felt the need to have the discussion. Also have it not near Fourth of July, where there's time to think about it and there's time to analyze this. I don't know if this is, I don't know if this is something that, that has all the buy-in to bring it there. But I know it's going to have a, it's going to have, it's going to be problematic in the future. It's going to be hard to control, especially seeing that there's a good chunk of the city that these fireworks aren't even allowed. It reduces the number of fireworks booths we can have. And it's just going to make it more difficult. I think that's, that's probably the biggest issue that came forward this year is the different maps and how a large part of the city now is in this zone that is highly combustible and highly flammable. So that is the take on it. I don't know where the rest of the council stands. I think we probably should have some public comment on this.
Well, I, I just want to say that who knew that Halloween was a day for celebrations with fireworks? Because it was like a war zone at my house for Halloween. And there were no booths, but yet everyone had them. Everybody's got them stored in their garage. It's a very dangerous thing to do. I, I personally don't like fireworks. Every year I have to flood my lawn to make sure that my neighbors don't burn my house down because I go up in the morning and pick up all of the fireworks out of my yard that came over the fence, which are illegal. Here's the problem. The people in their minds, I, don't see the difference. A fireworks, a fireworks, a fireworks. Somebody says, hey, you want some fireworks? They're like, yeah, sure. I, I've got a, a son-in-law who has no hands. I, I think I've told you guys that. This is no joke. You get young people, you get them drinking. They're going to start lighting stuff off, whether it's legal or not. And this whole thing of it, it's worthless, it doesn't mean anything. Just because a thousand people want to drive fast doesn't mean they can. But everybody does it. Well, we still have laws against it because it's a public safety issue. And to me, fireworks is a public safety issue. People get hurt, they go blind, they get caught on fire, they blow their hands off, their houses burned down. To what benefit to Palmdale? So people can party? Well, maybe we should just let people drink and drive. That's part of partying, right? But we don't because it's public safety. We don't want people hurt. And that's why we have laws to try and protect people and their property and their pets and their well-being and the quiet enjoyment of their home. Just a couple of days a year, I, I really think that the residents, and matter of fact, one of the number one complaints we got for years was you guys need to get rid of fireworks. We heard it for years, the people demanding we get rid of it. We said, we can't do it. It was a vote of the people. They begged us and begged us and begged us, get rid of fireworks. And we couldn't at the time because we were told that, that what the public votes in, the public has to vote out. Well, we've come to learn that that's not necessarily true. And that's what brings this ordinance forward. So on behalf of the, the hundred or thousand people over the years that have contacted me, begging to get rid of fireworks of all kinds, I think this is a reasonable thing that we can try. Let's try it for a couple of years. Let's see how it goes. That's my opinion. Got any comments?
Yeah, I guess. Maybe I shouldn't, though.
It's not a popular topic.
But this, this came, this came forward, Mr. Bishop's right, about the Cal Fire Maps. So there's a huge portion of the city that's going to prohibit all fireworks altogether. Safe and Sane illegal, it doesn't matter, they're going to be prohibited. So how do we message to people that you can do it here, but you can't do it there? And you can do it over here, but not here? And it is a majority of the city. And I think that we're inconsistent on our messaging because we take out big ads on buses that say, if you light it, we'll write it. Fireworks are prohibited. And then we've got fireworks booths on the corner. And people don't really necessarily know the difference.
They don't.
Right? But I do know that the majority of the comments I get from people in my district and in the emails, yes, I got the ones, there are nonprofits that depend on these booths to finance their activities. We get that. That's why we're going to come up with this grant program that's a new business to help offset that. Because we don't want to hurt the churches and the nonprofits and the community groups. We're here to help you and we will work through this together. But we need to find different ways because with the Cal Fire Maps, with everything else, with the challenges. And of course, there's no municipal citations on the Safe and Sane because they're not illegal. So I don't think that those numbers. None, right? Why would there be?
There's probably, there's some that are for them lighting them after the permitted time.
Yeah, after the, three days before, three days after.
And then also like the enforcement numbers, you know, they're, like you said, the, it goes off all over the city, right? Not every single one of those people are getting written up for that. We don't have the manpower. The Sheriff's Department are short deputies. That's why I think the enforcement is going down. They don't have enough bodies. Because if they did, oh, man, they could make a lot of money writing citations. But they, you know, we're limited on our resources. I think it's just too complicated for us to enforce this and get it right, that this is the best way to go. And we're not trying to hurt the community groups and the churches, others. We will find ways to help them thrive. But we also need to protect the city. And we're being mandated by Cal Fire.
Mr. Loi?
Yeah. First of all, I think that there's a significant amount of conflating going on here between the already illegal fireworks across the state of California and the Safe and Sane. When this, because when we had this discussion a few months ago, I asked whether there was any information, perhaps from the Fire Department, that showed that Safe and Sane was leading to any of the fires. We, we talk about houses burned down. Yes, houses have burned down, but they haven't been burned down because of Safe and Sane. I haven't seen any study. I haven't seen any, any, any response to what I asked for to show that there's a connection between Safe and Sane and any of the hazards that lead to these disastrous results. I understand that we have a significant part of the city. I don't know that it's half of the city that's in the absolutely no fireworks allowed whatsoever. But how many of the fires that have occurred in these fire zones were caused by Safe and Sane? We don't have that information. So we're going forward on the basis of supposition, conclusions, and unsupported facts or arguments. And, and I, I think it's just not a rational law that we're trying to pass here. And one last thing. One result that will happen from banning Safe and Sane is that you're going to have an increase in illegal fireworks in the city of Palmdale. Because you can see that all over the place.
And I, I just want to also remind the public that you don't have to do fireworks yourself. We have some wonderful firework presentations at Maruker Park. They have them in Lancaster, we have them in other places. So you don't have to put yourself, your family, your friends, your neighbors at risk. You could always go to a public display.
That's true. And those are important.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Oh, no. I, I, if, if we have public comment on this, I'd like to hear from the public.
Sure, absolutely. Let's go ahead and stop talking on the council side. And let's open this up to a public testimony.
We have David Harris. I'm going to call off several names just line up behind the podium. David Harris, adorable babies, Jason Zink. And Low Valley Desert Divers.
Hey, um, good evening, everybody. Thank you. One, thank you to the council for approving us this year, right? I know the conversation right before the Fourth of July was, was coming up. Mr. Loi, I appreciate you bringing in the, uh, the graph here in the, in the staff report, right? I, I point you to the, to the numbers that are on a downward trend, except for 2023. Service calls received last year, 149 versus 2021, 556. Alls we're doing with this ordinance is penalizing law-abiding citizens that want to shoot fireworks off legally and provide a safe and sane celebration for their family at home, rather than go out into the public on what could be a crazy evening with fire trucks going nonstop, right? I think another thing I'd like to bring is, it's interesting, we're talking about numbers today all the way through because here on the fiscal impact report, it says that there's zero fiscal impact with this action. I know that our fireworks stand pays fees to the city for their permits. I think that's a fiscal impact right there. It may be a thousand dollars total for all of our stands, which I know it's more. But I'm going to be conservative. But it really probably shouldn't be a zero. So with that, I'm going to, I'm going to say thank you. And I know this is a struggle for the council. I know some of you are our best customers. So thank you for those that, that support. And it's a no-win situation for us. I will, I will say also, while I've got my two minutes here, that our fireworks stand for Community Development Center USA, and I'd like to thank Mark Ritholl, our Board Chair, for being in the audience tonight. Very important for him to, to represent. We, we bring in anywhere between $10,000 and $50,000 before and after expenses. And, uh, the, the thought of a community service program that's going to offer $5,000 to offset that doesn't even cost, won't even pay the annual cost to insure our bus for a year, which is a bus that uses for free to the community that's paid for through this fireworks stand, driver and all. So there are a lot of, of programs out there that will get cut here in the city of Palmdale and possibly move to other cities where we could raise those funds. So, so I just ask that, that we think on it, like you said, it's really, you either hate them or you love them. And, uh, and I understand that. So I appreciate, Richard, your comments. I, I think you're right on with, if we take it away, you're only going to see an increase in those service calls because you'll have a lot more people out there seeking the illegal stuff versus the legal stuff. So thank you for your time.
Rich Gallego, Palmdale Freedom Coalition. I've got a little different slant on this, actually. I personally couldn't care less about fireworks. I neither hate them or, or love them. My problem, if, if I can put it that way, is the council's considering banning something. And, and I don't care if it's fireworks or Dixie cups or whatever all else. What I'd like to know is before you do something like that, have you done any kind of a statistically relevant survey to see what it is the people that you swore an oath to represent think about this? Now, obviously, we have some people here who maybe their livelihood depends on it. As the last gentleman just referenced, $5,000 grants, while I appreciate that that's not nothing. It's not 50,000 that maybe they are accustomed to making with their fireworks stands. But I want to know why it is the council thinks that they, they, they should consider banning something without finding out from the public what the public wants? You know, and I said this a couple of weeks ago, I'll say it again. And I really don't mean it in a disparaging way at all, so please don't take it that way. We elected you folks to amplify our voices, not to think for us. There are plenty of us, most of us that are here, we're engaged, all right? We, we're, they're smart people out here. What you're supposed to be doing is amplifying our voices. And you cannot do that without finding out what it is we have to say on something. This is why we've pushed for the town hall meetings and all that sort of thing. So the, the idea that you would be considering banning something without knowing what it is your constituents actually want? I really wish you would rethink that because that's not the way our system is supposed to work. Thank you.
Hi, I would like to piggyback as well as I feel that we should, you guys are being personal. It's like you said, um, that you don't personally like them because of that. It doesn't mean that everybody feels the same way. And I feel that you should have come to the community and asked us, what do we want? Because obviously, we like this because our children are having fun. It's a nice activity, plus TNT. activity, plus TNT, they have this beautiful show that they put on. So I think that what we need to do is clean up the dry brush, you know, so we will not have that problem, and, you know, make us happy, because we like the fireworks. You've been to my stand, and thank you.
So, so I know I'm not supposed to engage, but I am responding to the community, because they call me constantly, over and over, all year long, talking about their veterans and post-traumatic stress, and their dogs, and their kids are afraid to go to sleep at night because of all the noise. I am responding to public input. I've gotten hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of calls.
But those are the illegal fireworks.
No.
No.
They're not, they're not talking about just the illegal fireworks. They're talking all fireworks.
We do our neighborhood watches, and this is a topic that comes up constantly when people come. You know, I've been on this council three years. I've had many conversations with lots of people. You have no idea how many times this comes up. People don't want it. TNT sent out an email for a lot of people to come up to support them. The people that, who are against this didn't get an email to come out to say that they are. So there might be a disparagedy here tonight in this room, but it is the other way out in the public hearing the community.
I just want to remind everyone that the law that we have currently did conduct a poll. It's called a vote by the people. And now we're putting it to the city council to do away with the vote of the people.
Joseph Hibbs, one of the administrators, pastor of Kingdom Builders Church, veteran, and I've seen these, these, these sales points, you know? And you're right, we're gonna be divided, because you hear from the other half. Now you're hearing from this half. The other half is not here. So we can't hear what you're hearing. But at the same time, if you do take it away, like Mr. Loi was saying, how many more hands will be blown up? You think because you tell them, no, you can't have it, that they won't go get it somewhere else? At least this time, the little kids can hold sparklers instead of M80, or whatever else they're selling out there. How many, how many, you know, people out there? Because I see the little kids, I see, I see the, the families who come. They're not coming for any type of, they're not trying to upset anybody. They're not trying to upset the neighbor, upset the dog, upset the veteran. They're trying to celebrate. Now, you said that the, they have these big events. Those things are way louder, and they're right down the street. You think that makes any difference to the people living in that neighborhood? So when we come to these conclusions on what we should do, nobody's gonna ever, nobody's ever gonna agree on everything. We're never gonna get it 100%. You're not gonna please everybody. Not even Jesus was able to do that. The thing is, we have to not take away from those who are abiding by the law and doing things correctly. I can hold one of those fireworks in my hand and guarantee, I might get burned, but my hand will still be there. And if it can protect a little kid from blowing off their hands, I'm sorry about what happened to your family member, but why? Why go against it? Why put another child in harm's way because you want to ban something that they could get to, they have access to? You can lower the speed limit all you want, it's 55 in the construction zone, people still gonna do 85 no matter what. It's not going to hinder those who want to do wrong to do wrong. It's just punishing those who want to do right without having right. So don't take away the right that the, that the ones who are doing right have to do right, because some people don't like it. I don't like smoking, but if somebody's smoking next to me, I can't, I'm not gonna do anything against them, I'm just gonna go the other way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council members. My name is Jeff Carlin. I'm the president of the Antelope Valley Desert Divers. We're one of the oldest dive clubs in California and a longstanding nonprofit in Palmdale. Our organization, this is our only fundraiser we have all year. The funds raised from our booth are not for profit, but are reinvested directly into our community. We support things like college scholarships for aquatic, in, in the aquatic field. Local youth, community members earn SCUBA scholarships. We rent the Palmdale Parks and Recreation Pools for community outreach events, such as our underwater pumpkin carving contest that we just had at Coruscant Pool. A large portion of our funds also go to the training of local veterans that are service-rated veterans at no cost to get them SCUBA certified. We partnership with Waze Project and Veteran Six. These programs provide therapeutic benefits with studies showing that up to 80% reduction in PTS and traumatic brain injury symptoms for weeks after diving. As a firefighter for over 30 years, serving in both municipal and wildland agencies, I understand the concerns surrounding fireworks safety. However, banning safe and sane fireworks will not eliminate fireworks-related incidents. It'll simply drive more people to use the illegal ones. Safe and sane fireworks are already heavily regulated by the state fire marshal, and booth operators are required to meet strict safety requirements. Instead of a ban, the city could strengthen enforcement against illegal fireworks. Joint enforcement patrols, public education, and technology like drones and hotlines for illegal fireworks. I request that we do a comparative 911 data call related between Palmdale and those cities that do ban fireworks, review fire incident reports of these cities, conduct a community impact study to measure how nonprofit organizations rely on fireworks booth revenue, and what programs or community service would be lost without it. Examine the economics and social impacts of safe and sane fireworks sales, including how many youth programs, veteran services, and scholarships are funded by them. Banning safe and sane fireworks won't solve the problem. It'll only hurt the nonprofits that do the most good in our community. These booths are regulated, permitted, inspected, and staffed by responsible community members who care deeply about our community. Let's not punish groups that are doing right, the ones who use the opportunity to make Palmdale a better place. I respectfully urge the council to reject this ban, or at the very least, delay the vote until a more thorough data-driven study can be completed. Thank you for your time, your commitment to our community.
Thank you.
Jason Zink, there's a pattern here going on. The laziness, but the lack of common courtesy to the organizations that depend on this money. You guys didn't notify them. You guys never said that this would be on the next agenda as an item. There is such a lack of just respect, a disdain for the public. I don't get you guys, I really don't. I would be so much more open, so much more transparent, have more dialogue, more town councils. I don't know, it's just, you guys are weird. I've, for years, I've said that Palmdale needs to do something about their dead trees and all their brushes, just on city property, let alone all the other property owners, homeowners that have dead trees and brushes all around. If you guys are serious about fires, why don't you contact those people and do something about it? I've asked for a citywide cleanup, you know? Why don't we do that, before we discuss this stuff? Why do you want to hurt people, law-abiding citizens, that are doing things right? You know, it's like gun odors. You go after the law-abiding gun odor instead of all the criminals that are doing all the problems? Such a lack of dis- disrespect and dialogue, giving us the opportunity, letting, giving us heads up. You know, as long as this is a young community, and there's Spanish people here and rednecks, there's always gonna be illegal fireworks. There's nothing you're gonna do about it. There's just nothing you can do about it. But you're not, we had a vote, we had a vote again. If you want to put another initiative on the ballot and have a vote again, then do it. You know, I, I have a, an elderly friend, and she always complains about the fireworks and everything like that. And, but guess what? She goes to bed early, and she leaves her dogs there, and then the fireworks go off. I says, why don't you put your dogs in a room with a TV going on? That way it doesn't affect them so much. She's like, you know, old people complain. That's just what they do. I'm starting to complain too, now that I'm 50. Yeah, starting.
Now that you're 50.
But the thing is, you guys should have give heads up to these community organizations, which help people with their mental illness by involving people and everything like that. I just, you guys have to be more common courtesy, the staff does, and you guys. These are, these are people that voted for you guys.
Come on up.
Good evening, Major Bishop, council members, and everybody present. Thank you for your continued service to the people of Palmdale. My name is Leslie, and I am a co-pastor with my husband Juan at Kingdom Builders Church. This is my first time speaking here, and I just wanted to share my heart on this matter. As a member of Kingdom Builders Church, this opportunity means so much more than just financial support for our ministry. It gives us a chance to pour back into our community through the outreaches where we go into the highways and byways to serve those in need. We provide food, toiletry kits, clothing, and prayer to families who are struggling. Having the opportunity to work at the TNT booth helps us to continue making an impact and touching lives and bring hope to our city here in the community. For a decade now, during the holiday seasons, we have done a lot of outreaches to give back to the less fortunate and partner with many other organizations in the Antelope Valley to help with their efforts, as well as with free food, turkey dinners, toys, bikes, clothing, and so much more. We have a women's program, but I just want to say thank you for hearing my heart and all that you do here at the community.
Hello.
Hello, everybody. My name's Jody Kymen. Most of you know me. I belong to probably 10 different organizations here in the Antelope Valley. I work with several that do fireworks booths. I also live in an area that you can't have them, but that's okay, I have no problem with that. One of the, you know, I'm with veterans groups, so I see the veteran side of it. One of the groups I work with is a first responders to prevent suicide. What they do is then help the young kids that are in the explorers program at the Sheriff's Department, because they don't get funding. So they get funded by another group, which is Help for Heroes, that does the fireworks. I have worked the booths for years. First of all, the explorers come and work the one booth. It teaches the kids, first of all, handling money. It teaches them responsibility, teaches them to view the, you know, they check IDs. You know, there's always adults there, but it gives them an opportunity to earn what they're going to get to take on to the next task. For Help for Heroes, we use that money to mentor first responders, all first responders, not just law enforcement, and to prevent suicide. And as you know, with first responders now, we're losing them almost as fast per day as we are veterans. So something has to be done. And when you have some organizations that that's, like you said, have done, that this is their only fundraiser. You know, we had Measure AV. Where's some of that money? $100, $100,000 is not enough. If you have 40 groups at $5,000 a bit, you're already twice what you want to spend. You guys need to reevaluate the, the money, or find other ways that you can help these groups. But I guarantee you, the best way to help them is to allow them to continue doing what they've done. People are not gonna be happy. I listen to the complaints, and I know, like I said, the veterans, the PTSD and all of that stuff, and the animals. However, we still live in a free country, despite a lot of stuff and what a lot of people think, but we have a, a right. And as long as we're not hurting somebody else on our own property and using safe and sane fireworks, what's the difference? It's no different than these cars driving down the street with their loud music. It really isn't. Some of them are loud enough that they sound like they're booming down the street. Where I live, and I can hear them going over Goody Hill at night. So it doesn't matter, and the speeding. But I really, really urge you, as like you said, you guys know that I'm involved in so many groups out here. It's important to our nonprofits, because the other money is getting cut off, because people don't have the extra money to spend and donate that they would normally do. Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sessia. I'm here also with Kingdom Builder SolCal Hub. I am also a pastor administrator. We are here just asking for the opportunity to keep our TNT booths open in the community. And as you have stated and know, that this is a way the church is able to raise funds, but it also brings the community together. When we get to see families come by our booth, you know, we also, every year, as a church, we get a chance to pray for them too. A lot of people are in need, and they're looking for hope and joy, and it's an opportunity for us to reach out to the community as well. And the kids in our, and I want to end with this, as the kids and families enjoy it, and we look forward to having safe fireworks to celebrate the Fourth of July at the end of the day.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, City Council, and staff. My name is John Kelly. I'm vice president with TNT Fireworks, the wholesale provider to a majority of nonprofit groups here in Palmdale since 1989. With me tonight are Rick, Cassidy, Brad, and Jaime, also from our office. We, along with the nonprofit groups represented here, are in support of the continued sale of safe and sane fireworks in Palmdale, a tradition that, according to the text on page 70 of this book, began in 1963. As your staff report states, the ordinance was brought before the voters in 1992. Measure B was defeated by a 70% margin that year. The staff report also indicates a voter initiative was held in 2006. I ask for clarification. In fact, I have here two separate articles from the Valley Press and the LA Daily News stating that the council voted 5-0 at an August 4 meeting that year not to hold an election. Included in the Valley Press article was a reference to the '92 outcome by then-city attorney Matt Ditzhazy, stating, because of the people's decision, the council must resubmit the question to the voters in order to enact a ban. Also, what does, because those measures did not pass, any future prohibition may be adopted directly without voter approval mean? Again, we seek clarification. Does the city have the authority to ban without a vote of the people? I heard your comments earlier. I'm just anxious to hear some more discussion on that point. Staff reports, a drop to a five-year low for fireworks-related calls in 2025, along with a new high for citations. It appears the enforcement effort is tracking positively. There are many options for the city to consider. Revel Communications, our government relations partner, provided them in writing to you on Friday. Ideas about drone enforcement, social host ordinances, fine stacking, AB 1403. Please continue this fight against the real culprit, dangerous and illegal fireworks. Don't punish groups who sell products approved by the California State Fire Marshal for use one week of the year. Likewise, don't criminalize residents who celebrate responsibly on July the 4th, especially in 2026, when our nation turns 250 years old. I heard a lot of comments tonight about compromise. I heard for the first time about the CAL FIRE maps. Is it possible that there's compromise with a vendor that's been working with you for over 30 years?
No clapping, please. Violation of the rules.
Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem and all council members. My name is David Cowan. I'm pastor of Love and Grace Christian Fellowship and Love and Grace Feed My Flock Ministries. I just want to read a scripture real quick, is that okay?
Sure.
Okay, it says in Matthew 25, it says, "Then shall the kings say unto them that are on the right hand, 'Come and be blessed of my Father; inherit the kingdom prepared for you from the foundations of the world.' I was hungry, and you gave me meat. I was thirsty, and you gave me drink. I was a stranger, and you took me naked, and you clothed me. I was sick, and you visited me. I, I was in prison, and you came unto me. Then shall the righteous say unto them, 'Lord, when saw we thee hungry and fed thee, or thirsty, and gave thee drink?' And he goes on to say, 'When you did it to the least of the little ones, you did it also to me.'" And that was how we developed Feed My Flock program. The monies that we get, we don't even bring them to the church, nobody's getting profit off of it at all. But we use it to feed the homeless and feed sh- But we use it to feed the homeless and feed shelter. And since they've canceled us, being able to actually take food to the homeless, we're taking them gift cards and stuff like that. So we're not actually distributing food. Now, we're doing it as a mandate to God and as part of our ministry and we've been doing it for the last 10 years. And because of it, our souls have been blessed. The people in the community have been blessed. The women in the battered shelters have been blessed and, and, and on and on. We've had mentor programs where we've taken kids from school that, that don't have the monies and given them mentorship. Taught them how to dress for success and taught them computers and stuff like that. And we're a small church. We're not, we're not a large church, you know, but we use these funds so we can mentor others. Now, I, I want to challenge the perspective that the majority of the people don't want fireworks. We have one of the least fireworks booths in, in Palmdale and yet still we have 500 or more customers. So you figure that if there's 40 or more booths and they do a whole lot more, we don't make no $50,000. Then, then you got to be talking about hundreds of thousands of people that sponsor us on a yearly basis. Give us a chance to speak. Give Palmdale a chance to speak on this and not just take a vote tonight and cancel all of our voices. Thank you.
Come on up.
Good evening, council members.
If I hear clapping again, I'm going to clear the council chambers and you can go stand out in the cold. We've read the rules repeatedly. No clapping, no stomping, no shouting. Please stop. Continue on.
Good evening. My name is Daryl Watkins. I'm an officer at the Palmdale Elks Lodge here. First of all, I'd like to say that I agree with the first gentleman that spoke, having a $0 fiscal impact. It's not my opinion entirely accurate. I know between taxes and the permits and fees, we spent $6,200 of our, the money that we made to run a fireworks booth for a week. But I can also tell you that with the almost $18,000 we had left over, every single penny was spent on a children's Halloween party, disabled children's Christmas party, Veterans Appreciation Day, first responders appreciation day, Mother's Day, Father's Day, Flag Day, and children's Easter egg hunt for Easter. Not to mention other various and assorted events that, that, that we run for our community on a year-long basis. One more thing, just another plug for the taxes. If, if, if you shut down fireworks sales in Palmdale, people are just going to go to Santa Clarita and spend their money there. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wrote down my stuff, so sorry if it's repetitive.
That's fine.
My name is Colby Estes and for the past 12 years, I've been a member of the American Indian Little League Board. We were established in 1964 and have always been proud of our partnership with the city of Palmdale. So this action surprised with no contact, as was mentioned earlier, nobody ever reached out to us as one of the 40 booth people that asked our opinions or our ideas of how to make it not a problem. And every year I participated in the sale of our legal Safe Insane fireworks and it's become a critical funding, fundraising mechanism for our organization. We are one of the smallest leagues in the area. We're the only actual nonprofit sports league in Palmdale still. We've carried our nonprofit for 62 years now. We're very proud of that. And it allows us the opportunity to do things like our fireworks stand. Over the 12 years I've been with AI, we've served over 3,500 kids and have always maintained our independent status. We pay all of our own bills, upwards of $2,500 a month for sometimes for our electric bill and our light bill. And over the same 12-year period, our stand has netted us over $100,000 to our league, which have gone directly back to support our community in the form of free registrations, free equipment and other givebacks directly to our community. In reading the staff report, I'm extremely confused how easily the sale and use of legal fireworks got lumped into that of illegal ones. They are not one in the same. They are not even close. You guys even mentioned that you get complaints of hundreds throughout the year. Our fireworks licenses for five days. We sell them for one day. I don't know how we can cause hundreds of complaints on Halloween, Super Bowl and all of those days if we're only selling them for a week period. Oh, I lost my spot. Sorry. In addition, as I read the memo, it states the only reason this action is even being considered is because it failed on the ballot twice. And now you guys want to vote on it, taking the power out of the election people. I mean, the, the, the voters who you say you're representing by all the complaints you hear. So it's kind of an oxymoron of that doesn't make much sense to me. Over the 12 years I've, I've engaged with our booth, we have paid over $12,000 in planning and zoning fees, $500 a year, which is specifically intended and earmarked for enforcement per your guys' own city code. If you take the $500 times 40 booths, that's $20,000 a year the city has for enforcement. I don't know how we're spending it. I've never seen a report for that. Just because my thing's too long. I'm a solutions kind of guy and today I came into this, which is a annual report that the Sacramento Metropolitan Fire District puts out for their cities. They have 154 booths that they represent. And they do an annual report, how to make it embrace the fireworks stands, how to better make it engage with the community, how to educate people, how to spend the funds that are raised, how to spend the enforcement monies and things like that. I'm not sure why we can't produce something like this prior to taking away thousands and thousands of dollars from our city and our nonprofits.
Thank you, sir. Did you want to leave that with the city clerk so we can read it or we'll, we'll make sure you get it back?
Good evening. I know you know who I am, right? Tanya Elena Schofield. I ran for mayor and school board. So you guys have a history of just making elite moves without the people that voted you into office. That's why you have a fifth city council person and now you rotate the office of mayor. You took out the very ability to run for mayor. You just eliminated without the, the public at large. Your mother's a blessed woman. I love her. 95, 96, still, still praising Jesus. I, I noticed that you, you're criminalizing the people. We have to check in. But my Bible says, "The guilty man fleeeth where no man pursue him." So I guess we have to be, check in, right, before we can come in here and make sure we don't have guns and knives, right? I think you need to be more concerned about people that drink and drive and sit in your seats and have a history of smoking weed. That's right up there. I think that should be more of your concern.
Have anything about this ordinance?
I'm here, excuse me?
Are you going to speak about this ordinance?
I sure am. I want to say that I came to vote. I drove all the way from Vegas to vote tonight and I had to go 60 blocks that way to vote. There's no, I, I didn't want, I, I choose not to do mail-in votes, right? So there's, there was nothing here. I had, it's either Marie Care Park, over here Oasis, or over here at the fire station, way far away from where I live. I think you need to really be concerned about being able to let the voting polls be where people can come and vote and not have to go so far. Had I not had a vehicle, I would have had to pay about possibly $40, $50 in Uber fees to go vote. Have a good evening.
Come on up.
Hello, my name's Faith and I'm a deacon at Kingdom Builders Church. I don't really care too much about fireworks, but I'm here on behalf of my church. It helps us raise funds and pray for the people in our community. And it's a good way for us to connect with families and win souls for the kingdom of God. We've led many people to Christ through this outreach where you can see the Holy Spirit touching them right there at the parking, parking lot. And the fireworks we sell are safe and regulated and we always make sure everything is done responsibly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Yulka Vargas. We have to be very practical and pragmatic about this thing. There's not a darn thing you can do. You can pass all the laws you want. Fourth of July will be Fourth of July. And for celebration of our baseball team, did you see what happened? The entire LA? You can make him all illegal all you want. Now Laura, you were right about your lawn and the fireworks landing there. As you know where I live, by the way, sorry off the, off the topic, I want to really thank you and thank you Sal for, and Marilyn, taking your time and coming there to help us with this very highly critical issue that we have there with the Beryl Springs. But I've been living on that hill for 37 years. Best spot, I sit there lawn chair and I'm looking entire valley floor from Rosemont, of course, to Hatchville, over to Victorville. We can see the entire valley floor. You can pass all the laws you want. There's not a darn thing you can do about it. Fourth of July is Fourth of July. It's a culture, it's a tradition. The, the only thing I do, like you do for your lawn, I have the water fire hose ready, my lawn, the hose ready just in case something lands in my yard. Luckily, I've been fortunate 37 years. Nothing has happened. No fires around me, but there do happen. So all we could do is right now, be practical about it. Leave them alone. These, as you heard testimonies, schools and nonprofit organizations, churches, they all benefit from there. And responsibly they act. Their kids are responsible. They learn how to sell merchandise and be responsible. And by the way, you kill this Safe Insane, you're going to promote more into illegal fireworks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, so I, I agree with just about everything that was said so far. My only, I want to, I want to challenge what some of the other people have challenged and that's the evidence of who, who wants what. You know what I mean? My family, we do Safe Insane on our block. Our entire block does it. I mean, we all get out there and cheer for one another and have fun. And then there's these knuckleheads that live right behind us that are doing their own aerial displays. And we call every year for them to get busted and nobody ever comes, okay? Empirical evidence is different than anecdotal. And when we say we're talking about a vote or something, we're talking about empirical evidence at that point. You're going to the people. I know you get tons of calls, you know? I am a part of my neighborhood watch, go figure, and I hear stuff constantly. People's music too loud and all that. So I was one or two people who are, who are going crazy, right? So what we have to do is we have to, to survey and go out and get empirical evidence because you're hearing, you know, let's say it's a couple of thousand people, whether it's 170,000 people in our city. I'm just saying. So we need to actually reach out to them more and get more information from them. I agree with the safety stuff. You know, it's, but that's not the Safe Insane ones that are hurting people. It's the aerial bombs going off. I've got dogs. They all freak out. You know, my dad was a Vietnam veteran. I remember him dealing with that stuff too. But you know what? We prepared. Everybody knows Fourth of July is coming, so we would get prepared. We would actually go out of town or we would do like some gentleman said, put your dog in a room and let him hear music. I mean, we prepare for that because that's a part of being a community. And as somebody who believes in people's voices, if the majority of the people want to have fireworks, there is the, the compromise of Safe Insane, right? So that is the compromise already. We took all the other ones out. I go up now to the, to the aqueduct, you know, to watch it. It's a blanket of fireworks across the city. I mean, it's crazy, right? One thing that we know that is empirical, you can study this every place you want, prohibition doesn't work. It literally causes things. It just puts power into the hands of the law breakers, not the law writers. So I would just suggest that we do a little more research on this and really get the evidence and get the people's voice on it.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hi, I'm a member of the Antelope Valley Desert Divers as well. And as our president said and many that have already expressed their concern, it's our major fundraiser. If you take it away, we will, we won't be able to do the things for the good to the community that we are doing now. And I don't even live. I can't have, I don't, I don't buy the Safe Insane myself. I work the fireworks booth every year, but I come home and there's people on my street doing illegal ones. And I, I walked out my door and I, all I have to do is turn to the left and major fireworks everywhere. But just this last weekend, as you had mentioned, I, with all the games going on and the Dodgers winning everything, every, I went out and mowed my lawn and there were fireworks on my lawn. They weren't from Safe Insane. They're not hurting anybody. If you can just hold off and like they said, do more research, see that the Safe Insane, you're not, all of the noise is not coming from the Safe Insane. It's coming from all of the illegal stuff. And as you've said as well, you take them away, they're just going to get them illegal. They're going to get them in other cities. They're going to bring them here and they're still going to be a problem. I, I don't know what anybody else can say other than that's where you have to address your, your problem is the illegals. And I mentioned, or you mentioned something about the fact that they don't know the difference? That's not true. They know the difference because every time we're working that fireworks booth, they ask, do you have the M80s or whatever? No, nothing goes over six feet. Nothing on the Safe Insanes go over six feet. I don't know what else anybody can say other than the fact that you have to not take this away from everybody because you're just going to hurt the community. You're going to hurt all these organizations that help the community. And basically that's all I really have to say. I, I just hope that you reconsider this.
Thank you. And, and I did enjoy, a couple of years ago, I went to your underwater pumpkin carving. That was a lot of fun. So thank you. Thank you for continuing to do that.
I have a suggestion.
If you take that away, that's another thing that we'll, we will have to consider taking that away.
Thank you.
I have a suggestion.
Thank you. Yes.
We could put this to a vote of the people. We have a, and I think that would be the, as, as I'm listening to all of this. And we keep talking about, well, I get all these hundreds of calls, which I don't doubt. But again, it's anecdotal, as was pointed out by Mr. Ross. But if we actually had an election on this issue, then the people can, and then we could have arguments on both sides. Fact-based arguments on a ballot, on a ballot statement. And we could have a rational decision made by the voters, which is where this came from to start with. So.
I don't believe public comments have been closed. I was kind of waiting, waiting back there.
I didn't see anyone coming up, Marshall, but I should have figured.
In the late 1990s, the issue of fireworks was being discussed between the city and the citizens of Art City. It was decided that the sale of Safe Insane fireworks would be decided by the whole city of Palmdale by a vote. To qualify to be on the ballot, we had to go out and get petitions signed. I was part of that movement back then and we accomplished that goal. And it was placed on the ballot. But the city at that time chose to word that vote in that we had to vote no to mean yes. So we had to have a campaign before the election to make sure all of our citizens knew that they had to vote no to mean yes. And yet it still passed. This proposed removal without putting the question before the public shows that you know, you know, our citizens want Safe Insane fireworks and that is why you fear putting it on the ballot. We put you in the seats, put this on the ballot.
So if I could continue.
Is there any other speakers on this item? One more and then you can speak, Mr. Laura.
All right. Good evening. I hope you guys missed my beautifully ugly face. It's been a minute. Yeah, you should recuse yourself, girl. You've been gone for the last hour and 20 minutes. I don't know what powdering your nose takes that long to do, but anyways, I'm not going to talk about competence. I'm not gonna talk about competence or lack thereof, but it seems like two or three years ago, there's one person who volunteered to be the mayor, when that was taken from the people, and that person who volunteered came from the audience. That same night, that person suggested, hey, all they gotta do is draft the ordinance to, you know, let the people vote for the mayor, here it is, what, two years later and we can't get that shit done? Come on, man, this is, this is the most asinine thing I've seen in my life. I'm sorry, I get it, California Fire Central, crazy, right, all that stuff, but um, it's not the Fourth of July, it's Independence Day, it's called Independence Day for a reason, okay? And I, and I'm sorry for people that have PTSD, pets, animals, all that shit. It's a celebration of America becoming America, America started with a middle finger, if you don't know that, to taxes, to Great Britain, which we still pay taxes to, okay? America was founded off of FU, it was, okay? Think about it, just think about it when you go home, think about it. What you guys are doing is you're not only restricting our voice, but you're taking away our right, okay? I don't know who can or cannot read, but this right here, number three, the Los Angeles County Fire Code, which is adopted by reference by the City of Palmdale prohibits, prohibits the position, possession, sale and use of all fireworks unless specifically authorized by a license or permit issued by the state fire marshal. Hmm, that's funny, I had fifteen minutes at my house before I came here. LA County website, I looked up the damn code. The county of LA Title 32, Section 56013 states it is illegal to store, manufacture, sell, use or handle all forms of fireworks without a valid permit in unincorporated areas of LA County. So whoever drafted this damn thing is lying on the, on the, whatever you guys give out. Number three is unfactual, okay? So you guys are blowing smoke up people's asses. This right here says unincorporate LA County, fire.lacounty.gov, we could even ask the fire captain in the back if it's illegal to use safe and sane fireworks in Los Angeles County, or is it unincorporated LA County, like it says on their website. So like I said, America was started and founded on FU, okay? We put you guys here, I come here, or I used to come here, told you fucking accountable, I'm tired of it, I really am. And as far as not applauding, put the rules up there then, and when you guys do great shit, don't expect the audience to give you applause, okay?
Thank you, and the rules were read at the beginning of the meeting, and they were also a recording. I can't help you with that. Now, Mr. Loa.
Okay, thank you.
Well, first of all, we are now closing public comments, Mr. Loa.
Sorry, Marsha, I saw you coming up late, but anyway, you know, this, we could take an action tonight and have this matter placed on the ballot in the June primary in 2026. I'd like to propose that.
So I have a motion by Mr. Loa, do I have a second for his proposed?
I'd like to hear more council discussion before we make motions.
Anyone? Feel free.
Well, I'll start this thing off, thank you for everyone attending, it's been very heated, as we knew it would be. Yeah, there's, there's no easy solution to this, I guess the one way to start off by saying, what's changed? I've done a little research, and the, the CAL FIRE maps, the high fire severity zone now affects a little over thirty percent of the city of Palmdale. So that means if you live in Palmdale, in the incorporated area, and I do wanna, I wanna check the unincorporated areas, because I do believe, if the fire chief is listening, I do believe fireworks are, okay? No, I know, you're, you're, you're busy, um, unincorporated pockets of LA County, no fireworks. Correct? All of them. Okay, as far as I know, in the unincorporated pockets, I've been told.
It's illegal, and, and we, we don't have jurisdiction, we, we approved safe and sane in the city of Palmdale, and so that only addresses our jurisdiction, we don't have jurisdiction over the unincorporated pockets within the city. Those unincorporated pockets within the city are governed by the LA County prohibition on fireworks.
To which, the best of my knowledge is all those unincorporated pockets, no fireworks, and now you've got the city of Palmdale, where a little over thirty percent, absolutely no fireworks. Maps will update again in a few years, as they always do, and as I suspect, it will probably have a larger part of the city. So I guess the discussion is, is what percentage of the city where there's absolutely no fireworks allowed, do we draw the line and say, hey, this is becoming very confusing when you've got one street when you can have fireworks, and you have another side of the street where it's, where it's not? So it's, it's become a gray area. It's the state of California, it's the CAL FIRE maps, it's once again tying our hands with a lot of things, it's the state of California. A lot of the issues that, that people spoke about here today, between directly elected mayor and, and housing density bonus, it's all, these mandates are coming from the state of California, so this is how it is, this is how we got here. We had this discussion a couple of months ago, and we had to adopt the new FIRE maps, and we kind of touched base on what are we gonna do about fireworks next time it came around? And Dave Harris was here, and, and he's no stranger to the discussion, and a few of the other nonprofit partners have been following this, and it's a, it's a bit of a bind that the council's in, we're not trying to bamboozle anyone, we know how desperate the nonprofits and these community groups need the funding, there's no question about that. But at the end of the day, it comes about public safety and making sure that we're making a good decision, knowing that people will probably buy the safe and sane fireworks and bring them into the highest severe areas. That's just the reality of it, and to other cities, that's.
So, you know, for me, as much as I don't like fireworks, I am perfectly willing to let the public decide by putting it to a vote. Because it's not about what I like, what I don't like, that type of thing. For me, I would like to hear what the public has to say, because the public's the one that put it on the ballot in the first place, right, Marsha?
Yes, we did.
Yeah, so you can't blame council, it's not our fault, but we get calls.
It was our fault. The safe and sane fireworks were adopted by the city council in nineteen sixty-two, and that's where it all started. And then there were two voter initiatives, one in nineteen ninety-two, and then two thousand and six. So this whole thing was started by council, originally, way back when.
Way back when.
And then the voters tried to overturn what council did, and now we're trying to repeal all of that work.
So, you know what, let's, like I said, we've got, you know, thirty people in here that love fireworks, I've got a hundred people calling me that don't, so let's, let's open it up, let's put it up to all the voting public. I, I, I don't know why we can't, city manager, could you give it some thought?
We can do it now.
Cause, cause by the time it got on the ballot, they would at least get another couple of years of being able to run the booths, right?
That's correct.
Could be on the ballot for next year.
No, we could put it on the ballot for the primary, that's June second, so a decision is made before the Fourth of July. It would take a vote of four of us to just directly put it on.
But even if the vote were taken in June, the implementation of, of, the vote would have to be certified, and that takes a designated time period, there would not be enough ample time in order to implement that until the following year.
What's the rush?
Right, but we don't have, we don't, our ballots don't.
So.
In the meantime, they're, they're legal.
Yeah, until, until then, they would be legal, so they could still do the.
That's the thing, we're having the discussion now, because so, a large part of the city is, is becoming an area where you can't, you have a one, if you live in Palmdale and you buy a firework, there's a one out of three chance you're in, live in an area that you can't, you can't use it. So we're getting ahead of this, we're discussing this now. I do like the idea of letting the people decide clearly on a ballot that makes sense, no more no is yes and yes is no.
Yeah, that's gonna stop.
Let's take our time, let's do it right. But it also, you know, this is a discussion that needs to be had, because the next time they update CAL FIRE maps, I suspect it's gonna be even worse, and like I said, if fifty percent of the city and all the unincorporated areas are no, it's only going one direction.
Right. Yeah, and so I think that there was a reason this came forward now, because if we have these discussions in June, July, August, it is polarized to the other side. And we hear it from the constituents, the closer it is to the time of Fourth of July, the more we hear for those that are on the opposite side of you. Why it looks like so many members of the community are for it is because TNT sent out an email telling you to be here. Those people that are against it didn't get an email, that's why they're not here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand, we, yeah.
And there's, there's another reason why this is brought up, brought forth to us right now during this sort of period in, in our, in our fiscal year, because we are in preparation for the budget, and we are also considering on this same agenda, the implementation of a community grant program, which is intended to offset the losses of community organizations from the elimination of the fireworks. So that's why, so I'm just explaining in part, the additional reason why it's being considered, brought forth now, because the budget is going to be, begin being crafted, and they're gonna, if we're going to appropriate money for a community grant program, they gotta get that in the works now, also if we're gonna.
But we won't need that if we keep fireworks.
We're just not trying to just bring this up just out of nowhere, there is timing issues and, and relationship to our budgetary development for the next fiscal year.
Right, there, there's a couple of talking points that have been said that I just want to address, like, the accusation that we're trying to, to sneak this on, we've been talking about this for the last three months to bring it forward now.
Maybe even longer.
Maybe, yeah, since, since Fourth of July.
I, I have an email from, I have an email from July twenty twenty, was it, dating back to twenty twenty-four? When I was going back and, and asking our then-city attorney, Bill Curley, gave me the history on fireworks. I need the talking in the back to stop, please, thank you.
This predates not even just a couple of months ago, and our, when, when we adopted the, the safe and sane program this past year, like I said, I, we were talking about this in twenty twenty-four, I asked then-city attorney Bill Curley to give me the history of it, to, to give, to opine on the city council's authority to adopt by ordinance a prohibition on them, and he gave me the full history, which is why I know when the ordinance was, I read the original ordinance, I read all the ballot measures, did all of that. So this is a longstanding issue that we've been contending with. It didn't just, just, didn't just arise, you know, today, or yesterday, or a week ago.
Okay, so first we have to make a decision on this resolution, and then, are, did somebody say something?
Oh yeah, sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead.
All right, I was, as far as I'm gonna move to table this, and then also, if now is the proper time.
Can, can we table it and then make a motion to put it to public vote? Is that, is that legal?
Well, or bring it, bring it back, so we can put it on.
A, a financial assessment, we need to know, I mean, we need to know how much it's gonna cost the city to put it on the ballot. I mean, there's, there's a cost associated with everything.
Yeah, so it sounds like the motion would be to table it and then direct staff to do some sort of preparatory work, because we're not just gonna bring the ballot measure back to council cold like that, right, you want a little tea appetite appetizer before we get that far? So would you like a cost analysis, or?
I, I guess a full analysis with the wording, with the like, everything, like a full detailed report.
Cost analysis, public safety implications, all of that kind of thing, the differences, the, the, any, any societal changes, demographic changes since the last ballot measure, two thousand and six, a lot has changed since two thousand and six, this community has seen a significant growth, and so sort of all of the, the, the public safety considerations and the cost considerations.
Yeah, sorry.
So for me, it should go on the ballot. If we can spend a hundred and thirty thousand dollars giving it to a company in case they need more money, we should be able to find a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, put it on the ballot.
Yeah, so I, I'm thinking too of like a memo regarding timing, like how soon can we get it on the ballot? What does that look like, what do we need to send, and how much does it cost?
If we can adopt a vote to put it on the ballot.
Yeah.
Well, why don't we?
But also, we, we can do that at a later date, I think we need more information, I think that there's plenty of options. We want to solicit as much community input as possible, because maybe there's a way we make a decision based on that, based on the analysis, based on the demographic change. I think there needs to be a lot more thought and research and solicitation of other people's opinions, because again, based on everybody in this room, you guys all feel one way, but we, we do talk to the public quite often. I mean, we have our neighborhood watches, when I do my neighborhood watch, there's a line of people waiting to talk to me, and this is one of the items that gets brought up a lot. Our email addresses are on the website, our phone numbers are on the website, like there's a way to get ahold of us, to talk to us, to tell us things, and a lot of people do, and we reply to them, but you don't know that, because they don't come here to do it as often. So, you know, I think that there's a lot of thought and input that can be, you know, I, I think that there's more consideration that needs to happen, and let's bring this back, and then with that more information, we can decide whether it's appropriate to put it on the ballot.
How long do you think you'll need in order to put together at least a preliminary sort of summary of factors to consider?
For my part, as to like, cause to me, the timeline is the most important as to when this would take effect, because that's when it impacts everybody, right? So how, what is the process, and that, like my portion of that, I mean, next meeting, I could.
You can do next meeting, but in order, for the fiscal analysis.
The fiscal analysis might take longer.
We, we can bring it in, in January, or meet in January.
In January, so, okay.
All right, so my original motion was to table.
Second.
This item.
Table and bring back within ninety days.
Correct, bring back a report detailing everything that we discussed about, what it would look like to put this on the ballot, from cost to feasibility, to safety, to everything, and then we all can make a decision together as a community.
Okay, I have a motion?
But I don't, I mean, will you expand the scope of this? Because I, I don't necessarily want to just focus it on putting it on the ballot, because there might be alternative ways to solicit the public input.
Anything and everything.
And to educate and, I mean, I think it's gonna head that way.
We pay try peppy, over a million dollars a year for communications and outreach, can they do a, a, a community survey? Online, reach out, newsletters, whatever we do? At least we, we can try every, every means by which to communicate to our, our community, specifically to our community organizations, but, but get some of our internal, capitalizing on our, our internal capabilities to reach out to our community and get feedback.
Right, I think we should do the analysis, have, you know, it flush out as much as we can, and then be clear and concise on how we outreach to the communities, so yes doesn't mean no, and no doesn't mean yes. Like, let's just be open, transparent and direct as possible to get that feedback, and then let's make decisions from there.
Right, if, so like, for instance, you can ask a question, simple question, do you support banning all fireworks in the city of Palmdale? If yes, do you prefer that the, would you prefer that the city, you put it on the ballot, or did the city council adopt it by ordinance?
But that, that needs to be changed though, I mean, I.
No, you, we can't do that.
Yeah, we're not in public.
Sorry, you're not allowed to speak from the, the audience.
I'll, I'll amend my motion to Councilmember Olson and, and I think, I think staff has direction, right? Okay.
So do we need a motion or a second?
We had a motion, I second that. Did you want to add something to it?
Nope, what's the motion, or we're just tabling this?
Please, please, we both repeat the motion.
My motion is to table this.
And report back.
And report back with a full detailed report of how this can go to the voter, how much, what are our options, other ways of outreach, everything you heard tonight.
And you already seconded?
Yeah.
Okay, you got a third.
So we have a, I have a motion, a second and a third, can we call for the vote?
Start voting.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, moving on to item number six, new business. Now we have time for public participation.
One, give him a second?
Yeah.
Clear the room, we can get coffee.
Because quite honestly, I want to table this until we get.
Well, yeah, but we don't need this.
And I'm gonna, well, before we table it, I wanna see if we can direct them more.
Could you read my, my scratch?
Because I.
He wanted coffee.
Exactly, you don't get both.
I found this tea though, I found tea, it is so good, it's like this orange.
One or the other, you don't get both.
Orange flavored jasmine.
I will second your motion to table.
But do we have to allow public comment first? Call the meeting back in order, Laura.
We can just come out and say.
Back in a minute.
There's always a fistful in town, even when it never.
Because we didn't, we, we didn't advance our political, our, our financial cause, we broke even. We broke even, that's why. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, I guess it didn't really change our finances.
That's what's, that's good, we're good. All right, so on item number 6.1, new business, um, could I please have a staff report? Hi, Nardi, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor, Pro Tem and council members. Nardi Lopez, Deputy City Manager. I am here to share an overview of the proposed community grant program. Um, the program framework builds on council's longstanding support for community-based organizations. It provides funding assistance primarily for services directly benefiting residents living in the city of Palmdale. And the program makes city support more structured, transparent, and equitable. For funding structure, we, um, have proposed a hundred, $100,000 available each year for five years. That would be fiscal year, starting in fiscal year 2025-26. Um, applicants would receive $5,000 of grant funding for a total program, um, cost of $500,000. This supports small, high-impact projects while keeping funds well-managed. Um, the eligibility and focus areas for the program, it will be open to all 501(c)(3) nonprofits and community-based groups within Palmdale that provide services to Palmdale residents and the Palmdale community. Um, the application requests must align with council priorities, which are youth and senior programs, health, wellness, mental health, homelessness, food insecurity, arts, culture, and community events, environmental sustainability and beautification, as well as workforce development. The evaluation reporting process, applications will be reviewed by an independent third-party panel. Um, grantees that will need to submit a report after completion of their program or project, um, including outcomes, spending, photos, if available, and other information. Um, this keeps the process fair, accountable, and transparent. Um, the, the independent third-party panel will make recommendations to the city council, I'm, I'm sorry, to the city manager's office for approval and execution of agreements. Um, if the program is approved, the first round is expected to be launched in early 2026. An information meeting will be provided prior to the launch of the applications to the community, to, in, give them an opportunity to ask questions before applying, and outreach will be conducted in a manner to ensure that it is well-marketed. Um, staff is available for questions.
Any questions, council?
I, I think I'm gonna, um, sort of refrain from questions until we hear from the community and hold back until discussion.
Well, they might wanna, maybe you can answer some of their questions before they ask, but if you wanna do that, we can do that. So, we'll call for public comments.
Can the following individuals please line up at the podium? We have Jason Zink, David Harris, and Kobe Estes.
Jason Zink, I just wanna say how proud I am of all the community organizations, and the positive impact that they do to the community. It's really amazing when you think about it. You're talking about a million dollars that are, is put into these community organizations from the firework booths to help our, uh, kids, elderly, veterans, disabled. And you talk about mental health, right? Isn't that a positive mental health thing? The city spends a $500,000, a half a million dollars on mental health program that serves a, a group of people, not that many, and a lot of them aren't even from Palmdale, and you're only proposing a half a hundred thousand dollars? It's crazy. Why I envision Measure AV, I, I envisioned that 20% of it would go out to grants, to community groups. I envisioned that there would be a grant office that all these community groups could have, and this grant office, uh, person with staff would help all these other community organizations get bigger grants, and they would get paid back from the grants. So it'd cost the city nothing, zero, just seed money. And the city would give 10 or 25% matching grant, so that they could get the other 90 or 75% grant from wherever they're getting the money from. That there would be certain pockets of grants. There'd be small grants for like, the Palmdale High School Band, for five grand or 10 grand. Then there would be middle grants, and then there would be these big grants. And that most of the grant money could not be used for salaries. The county's doing this one thing for this, uh, impact group to go out to Lake LA, I just found out. You know where they're going to celebrate their gala? Beverly Hills Hotel. That's where your county dollars are going, so they could have a big party at the Beverly Hills Hotel. This is out of hand. But I, I really am so proud of these community groups and these people giving their time to make our community better and make mental health better. You guys should do away with all these other things and put the efforts towards these community groups and make them even blossom more. That's what I would recommend. 20% of Measure AV goes to a grant office that helps these community groups get even more money, maybe 10, 20 million dollars annually, more money coming into the city.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm a re, repeat speaker, but...
That's okay.
Um, I just, I do wanna hearken back to, this seem, this smells and looks a lot like Measure AV did, and I remember when, I don't know if his name's allowed to be said in here, but J.J. Murphy did presentations for the public back before Measure AV went on the ballot, and I recall specifically for speaking on behalf of our Little League again. Um, it was meant for the same kind of purposes that this is meant for. I was promised that we were gonna get lights for our fields, cause our light bill is $2,500 a month out of our pocket. Um, I remember it was gonna be for a community event, I mean, for community sports and activities for the youths, and similar to, to what this list is, we even got the $10,000 on the first year of Measure AV. Very appreciative, we bought things with it, paid for a flood. It really did help us. Um, since that first year of Measure AV, it doesn't seem like, at least, and I'm pretty active in my viewing of things and all of that, doesn't seem like it's been quite open the same way it was that first time, that first year. I know, I haven't even seen an application process, and I know, I'm sure it's out there somewhere on some link somewhere that I just missed, but man, it was pretty prevalent the first time. So now to be told that this $100,000 a year was kind of intended to replace the firework stand money, um, it, which is a positive intention, but if you look at the parameters behind this, there is no way that the 40 people that were here from the, uh, at, the groups that were represented today are gonna get any large portion of that, because this is open to any nonprofit, which you can go get tonight. When I go home, I can get a new nonprofit. It takes a lot more to get our fireworks plan. We have to be certified by the state, by the county, by the IRS and everything, so I just hope that, I'm not gonna kick a gift horse in the mouth, uh, we, we will apply, we will beg, like we always do, for every dollar for our kids that participate in our league. But man, I hope, once again, same thing I said with the G-PAC, I guess, I hope we just stay on the path of what this is envisioned for by you guys, and that five years from now, we're not wrapping, you know, wrapping electrical boxes, spending that Measure AV money that could've paid for my light bulbs for my fields, so I could play more night games for my kids after school, since it gets dark at four o'clock and things like that, and just seems to be a common thread of what we're kinda running into right now, where we forget what the things are meant for at the genesis. Down the road, please. Thank you.
Thank you. What happened to David Harris?
Oh, oh, okay, sorry. Like, where did he go? Reporting David Harris for duty. Um, yeah, you know, thank you. Thank you for, for taking the time to, to look at a little bit more on, uh, what you just passed, which kinda coincides with this topic, right? I, I think maybe, uh, uh, you, you take the time to look at it, as everyone just said, I won't repeat everything you just heard, I, I concur, even with Mr. Zink on that one, so, I love you, Jason, you're awesome. Um, but, but I wanna thank staff. I wanna thank, uh, Sal and, and Nardi for, for bringing this forward. It's a good start for our nonprofit community. Um, and, and if the voters vote right, or, we don't know what's gonna happen in January with the 4th of July stands, but I know permitting starts in February, so, um, there'll be some, some timeline on that. Um, and so, when you're looking at, at this, um, $5,000, I, I, you know, it'd pay for half of our insurance, um, and, and I'm not gonna say that's not enough, it's a dollar, right? To a nonprofit that's, that's, that has zero employees, by the way. We, we have zero employees. Uh, I don't draw a salary, none of our, our volunteers draw a salary. So, um, uh, every dollar counts, and it's for the betterment of the community. But, I think this was gonna replace the firework stand, so I think you kinda have some options to weigh now, uh, in your discussion.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you. Hi, Mike.
Hey, I just have a question. Um, do, why does it always have to be a 501(c)(3) that gets money from the city? Why can't it be just people who have businesses or whatever? Um, I know, like, when we did the Christmas thing, we never asked for anything from the city, uh, we always went out and got all, all of our own money. But I know other people that wanna do things in the community that don't wanna necessarily have to go and do the whole thing, cause it's kind of a hassle to do that, you know, you have to put eight, like, 800 bucks up or something like that. There's, there's all these rules. We actually just opened a 501(c)(3), and it costs us, or, (c)(4), it costs us, uh, like, 5,600 bucks to do all of that. Um, so I'm just asking, why does it always have to be a 501(c)(3)? Is there any mechanism that we can do that would open it up to more of the community? Cause you might get more, uh, people who are willing to do things in our community if they don't have to go about doing the whole thing, or maybe they can get sponsorship, I don't know, but I'm just throwing that out there as a question.
Any other speakers? Come on up.
Thank you, Mayor, Pro Tem and council members. I wasn't gonna speak on this, but when I met David Harris, I met him at a community cleanup at Barrel Springs, picking up tons of crap, and I got his attention, and he's like, who are you, what do you do? And I'm like, well, I'm basically pro bono mark, I do everything for free, and he's like, great, I got some more free stuff for you to do. So, keep in mind, he's basically given up his whole retirement just for this community. Um, December 19th, I sold my house of 20 years, threw in 300,000 into Lancaster and Palmdale. The money doesn't matter, but everybody here that comes as a nonprofit and things like that, they're doing it by just prayers. That's the only thing that's getting them by. Austin Bishop knows the business world is the only glue that's holding everything together, so if the businesses and the nonprofits don't get what they deserve, it's literally just gonna all go away. So, do your due diligence, get these people the money. The rent is crazy in businesses now, housing's going through the roof. The point is, $5,000 is nothing. I mean, if I gave you $5,000, you could go on Amazon and have it gone tomorrow, so, get the money, find the money, let's raise the money. In Lancaster, I tried giving everybody a Yeti bucket, the Year Enough Foundation has a bucket, Jaclyn just got her new beautiful place. How long can she be there without support, though? Let's be realistic, 2031's coming, everything's gonna cost double. We either need to increase taxes or find a way to bring more money in, so, if the fireworks go away, great, let's just bring in something that can double it, triple it, whatever, cause no nonprofit likes to sit in a cargo container for three days just to make enough money to insure a bus.
Right.
So, thank you.
Any last speakers? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comments. Do we have any other discussion from council?
Oh, I've got all kinds of discussion on this one.
Okay.
Um, so I've got a variety of different, um, thoughts on this one, but I think they, they reflect a lot of what's already been said. Um, one, I've got concerns with the overall program budget as proposed. So, um, what's being proposed is, and I've spoken about this in the previous item, what's being proposed is $100,000, um, a year for $5,000 grants, that's 20 grants. Um, the, the, this last year's, um, fire, fireworks program, we had 36 qualifying nonprofit organizations that submitted applications, 32 were returning applicants from 2024. Um, so, there were 36, and thi, this budget only affords, you know, 20 grants at $5,000 each. $5,000 is not really even match what they, they on average make annually, um, so it's not even half, it wouldn't even account for half of the nonprofit organizations just to, to sort of offset the losses, potential losses in the fireworks program. So I think simply, it's just not enough. Um, I'd like to see the program, um, be developed in, in a more tiered, structured way, that was already discussed by, um, Mr. Zink. Um, small grants, medium-sized grants, and larger grants. If anybody's ever run a, run a nonprofit, or if anybody's ever written a grant proposal, $5,000, the cost of doing business to do that, to write, the time to write the grant, to learn about the grant, to find the criteria, to write the grant, submit the grant, and then what's being requested of, of our community organizations in the aftermath is that they have to do an expenditure summary, they have to identify, do a, a report with measurable outcomes, financial documentation, evidence of project results. I don't know what kind of progress, tangible progress, results, or outcomes you can discern from $5,000, when, you know, maybe 2,000 of it's going to overhead and, and just completing the application, uh, in and of itself, so, I don't know that, that, um, it's really a workable, um, and reasonable program for, for nonprofits. I don't, I wouldn't do, I wouldn't waste my time for $5,000 if, if I'm gonna have to do all of these things on the, on the, on the front end, and then do all of these reporting on the, on the back end. I mean, you maybe have $1,000 left, um, to implement in your program, so I think that's a concern. I'd like to see, um, it come back, um, with larger amounts in, as, a sort of a tiered structure, small, medium, large grants. Um, and, oh, and then the other, there were a couple other things that were mentioned in our, um, staff report, that says the program incorporates clear eligibility criteria, evaluation standards, and reporting requirements. There are, to my knowledge, um, those clear eligibility criteria have not yet been developed, nor have the evaluation standards, so I just think this is, this program is not, is, is not yet ready, um, to move forward. I think there's a lot to be, um, developed before we, we vote to implement it, or we vote to appropriate, uh, and, and finance it, so, um, if and when we decide, I'd like to see those actual criteria, so that we know, do you have to be a nonprofit? Do you not? Can you be, can you be, uh, some, you know, a small business? Um, and, we wanna support small businesses, too. We wanna do a variety of things, I think we've got different goals, um, but we don't have any of that before us, so, it's a bit half-baked, um, in my eyes, um, and I'd like to see it come back with a larger budgetary appropriation, um, and more clear, clearly identified standards.
Eric?
So I agree, I don't, I don't think that there should be a 501(c)(3) requirement. I also don't think that there should be caps. I think it should be solely defined based on the need to the city and the residents of Palmdale. So I have the different vision that Mr. Zink spoke about. For a couple of years, I asked for that community group liaison, because there are other pots of money out there. It doesn't always have to be the city funds. There's grant money from the county, from the state, there's million and billion-dollar philanthropies like California Community Foundation, they, they are looking for that tax write-off. And I think that if we had a designated person that could work with the community groups to identify that need, to make sure that their paperwork's are in compliance, to show them how to grant right, to show them where the grants are, to show them where the philanthropy is, and then that person identifies a need to the city that they think should come to us for funding, we're open to hear it, and I don't think we should put caps on that. I think it should be based purely on its merit, and, I mean, I, I think we all have different visions of how this should work, but that's mine.
So, I recently asked, um, I don't know, a couple months ago, about why can't we allow small businesses to participate in the grant program? For instance, um, when Northrop Engineers want to take the robotics team out to the desert to fly drones or whatever, why should they be taking it out of their own personal pockets, because they're not a 501(c)(3)? So, there's a lot of groups of regular citizens that would like to do events, especially with the youth, but they would have to take the money out of their own pockets, um, because they're not a 501(c)(3), and it gets very complicated, like you said, to, to get that, that status, the tax number and everything else. I would, I would like to see a... I would, I would like to see us support our small businesses that want to support our community by working with the youth or the elderly or the handicapped. It would be great if we could help them help our community because they have open and willing hearts. They just don't have the financial support to do it. So I would like for us to consider that it not just be a nonprofit availability of money, but to small businesses that bring a proposal to us saying, this is what we'd like to do. We want to go visit senior housing at Christmas time and whatever, you know, sing Christmas carols, whatever they want to do. They bring a proposal to us, we think it's something that is of value to the community, and then we help support them financially. I, I, I think I mentioned that a couple of months ago, but I know we've been very busy since then, but maybe we can rethink about it.
One other point that I forgot to mention that I think is important too. The proposal suggests that we should retain a consultant, a third-party consultant to do the evaluations. And then when I inquired about the potential cost of that in the range of 100,000. We're going to pay $100,000 for a consultant and we're going to give 20 community organizations 100,000. It just, it doesn't, to me, this, it doesn't balance out. So I think we need to have it flushed out more. What consultants are we going to retain? How much are we going to appropriate for the consultants? Versus how much are we going to appropriate for actual community organizations? So I just wanted to make sure that that was thought through when it comes back.
I like Councilmember Olson's idea. He wants to teach a nonprofit how to fish. And teach them how, because I know a handful of people who run nonprofits and 501(c)(3)'s and they get quite, they get quite a lot of donations from, from private businesses that need the write-off. So there's, there's definitely a lot of money out there and it doesn't always have to come from the local government or a municipality. And, and I know we put this, you know, I was under the impression, we put this on there to backfill the fireworks, to make sure we're taking care of the nonprofits in case there isn't going to be. So that's kind of where this came from. However, I was on the council when we had the original grant program. And I gotta say, that was, that was very stressful times for not only the council, but the entire staff. So if and when this comes back, because I'm going to make a motion to table this in a minute. If and when this comes back, implementation is going to be absolutely key. Because the last time we did a grant program, I think it was a disaster. I mean, that's the reality of it. It divided the community. It was very difficult on staff. It became a, a discussion of who gets what, how much are they getting, when are they getting it, how are they getting it? This person knows who. And, and that's probably one of the reasons for the consultant. The outside companies we're going to have to hire to manage this because it's just a mess, you know? It's the cities, we were trying to take care of our own. Typically, cities are not foundations, so we're not really set up to distribute money and help nonprofits. It does become difficult, the optics of it. So with that said, I'm going to make a motion to table this.
Did I make a comment?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll just put that motion out there. I'll make a motion to table this.
I just want to piggyback on what you said. Both of us were on, well, three of us were on the council then. And it was, it was, it just really tore up not, not just the community, pitting organization against organization, but staff itself. And, and that was just a very difficult time. And I, and I think you make an excellent point when, when, when you say that the city really isn't in a position to be handing out these kind of grants. So whatever we do, we have to make sure that it's not going to be as controversial as it, no controversy should be had at all. And that we're doing the right thing to, if we're going to do something like this, that the organizations that come forth merit it and are responsible and are transparent, that they show what they have done. I had brought up an issue in the past, it was brought up tonight too, no salaries, right? That's, that's an important thing because we want the money to go to target the benefit of the residents of the city of Palmdale. That's what's important. But anyway, thank you for what you said.
No problem. And in the meantime, we still have the fireworks booths. We still have a way for nonprofits to support themselves that way. The only city in North County that actually still does the fireworks booths. So I think that's pretty significant. And we will work, we will work our way through this, but that's how this ended up on the agenda, I believe. But yeah, if this were to come forward, I would be, I'd be hard-pressed to say yes because I just, I don't want to put the staff through that. I don't want to put the council through that. And it just became, it just became, it divided everyone. It just, you know? And if it's something similar to this comes through, it becomes like, well, these 20 people got it because they know this person or they, this.
They're buddies.
Yeah, so, and that's why the outside company, that's why we're going to have to hire someone to manage this. It's going to be a bit of an undertaking. So that's my motion and I'm going to move to table this.
I think Eric wants to.
Yeah, no, I'm going to second that. I was not on the council at the time, but I was on Measure V. Not only was I on Measure V, I was on the scoring committee of those grant applications. And there were previous staff members and previous electeds that were lobbying for the groups that did favors for them. And it was disgusting. And I think after that was done, we all agreed that we were never going to bring back a grant program that way again. Because, so this is why I had the idea to give it to.
A third party.
You know, somebody to independently help the groups. And then if something rises to a need of the city, then bring it to us. Because the decision-making for those groups should be taken out of our hands.
Yes, absolutely.
And then during that, we did discretionary funds to help fill the gap of people in our districts who we felt that were in dire need. We were able to assist them without them having to jump through all those things.
And I do agree with Jason when we talked about Measure V early on, in the early days, and that we were going to help support the nonprofits with it. And we did say it should not be going to salaries of these nonprofits. But I don't know that there was a lot of accountability coming back from the nonprofits when we gave them the money. And that was a big part of the grant problem. So we need to reconsider a lot of things. We have a motion and a second, and we'll go ahead and call for the vote.
Madam Chair, members of the council, just a point of clarity. What I'm getting from you is possibly create a business liaison position for the city to assist with grant writing and other things of that nature for businesses and nonprofits throughout the city.
A grant coordinator. Something like that. That was one idea, but this is, the development of a grant program is, is separate from establishing a position, a grant, you know, a nonprofit community liaison. That's two different issues. Tabling it is, is fine. I could support tabling it so long as there's also a report back, bring it back.
Make that part of the report.
I think part of the reason why it was a disaster at the outset, when I wasn't here, I've been told, that there were no eligibility criteria. It was kind of all over the map.
It was awful.
There was, there was no real reporting on outcomes. There was no, everything was just sort of a free-for-all, which is why we need to very clearly define what the criteria is.
And Andrea, part of the problem too is that some people had access to that Measure 80 money and was giving it out without the council knowing.
And that's, I'm all about transparency.
It was, it was a nightmare. And, and then people wondered why the next year they didn't get their whatever money. And we're like, we didn't know you got money.
And, and, but what I, what I don't want, what I want to caution us in doing is because we had administration problems with the grant program at the first time, we shouldn't, you know, penalize our community organizations who are doing that work, the real work out there. They need support. And so just because we didn't, we didn't administer the program properly the first time doesn't mean we can't rework it and administer a successful program moving forward.
I agree.
And I feel bad to staff because I know we're constantly giving you mixed messages on how we want to do this. Because I think it kind of shifts or we think it's going to go one way and we might have our own opinions. But I think that's why when we table it, it's got to come back in various different options on what it might look like. So she wants to do tiered levels and maybe a grant program kind of like before. I want the community group liaison. I don't know, maybe a complete analysis.
That's why we didn't vote no.
Yeah, they're not mutually exclusive. We can vote. We're just going to revamp it with more details, more structure, maybe more money.
Yeah, we're like, bring it forward, but don't, then bring it back. So I apologize because I know what it sounds like coming from the five of us. And I apologize to the community groups because they were, I think at the time, overly promised of what Measure V was going to be to them. I think that there were some around at the time that blew a lot of smoke, up a lot of somethings. You know, I think we, again, should maybe also solicit community input. Like, let's be completely transparent, open and honest of what we can do, what we can't do, and find out exactly what the need is.
I mean, we are legally bound to uphold the purpose, the intent of Measure 80 and Measure 80.
Okay, yes, we're calling for the vote. I think everyone's voted.
Oh, no, it's 10:30, not 10.
Yes, yes, yes or no?
No, table.
It's to table it.
Look at the big screen.
Up there?
Table.
It's up there.
Yeah. That was the title of the item.
One more.
This is the table, right?
He's still the vote.
Okay. Excellent. Are we on number seven now? City manager's report.
Madam Chair, members of the council, join us for the ILEAD Youth Conference dedicated to empowering and supporting young people ages 12 to 17. The event will take place on Friday, November 7th from 6:00 PM to 9:30 at Legacy Commons. Don't miss your final opportunity to witness the AV wall before its retirement. The wall will make its final journey from Lancaster to Palmdale Amphitheater on Saturday, November 8th at 4:00 PM. Honor our veterans, honor our Vietnam War veterans by lining, lining up throughout the route and welcome the AV wall home one last time. We'll also have a candlelight ceremony honoring local Antelope Valley residents whose names are inscribed on the AV wall. The ceremony will take place at the Palmdale Amphitheater on Sunday, November 9th at 8:00 PM. Celebrate and honor our nation's heroes at the Veteran Day Ceremony on Tuesday, November 11th at 11:00 AM at Palmdale Amphitheater. Hosted by Point Man AV Organization, this event coincides with the display of the replica Vietnam Veterans Memorial Wall. And that is on November 11th at 11:00 AM. And Mr. Zink, give back to those who have served by joining us for the Veterans Day of Service on Sunday, November 15th for a desert cleanup at Avenue Q and Division Street from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. So that's a good community cleanup for all of us that we can be out there. Let's honor our veterans through community and action of service. Holiday Craft Boutique. Get into the holiday spirit at the Holiday Craft Boutique on Saturday, November 15th from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Legacy Commons. Shop unique handmade gifts and festive creations from local artisans, perfect for your holiday shopping list. Make a difference this holiday season at Family Volunteer Day. Join us Saturday, November 22nd from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM at Saves to help prepare Thanksgiving baskets for local families in need. Our free vet at the Park Services are returning to Posnyslan Square on Sunday, November 16th, starting at 9:00 AM and continuing while supplies last. Bring your pets for free exams, vaccines, microchips, deworming, and more. All dogs must be on leashes and cats must be in carriers for them to participate. Our Saves senior clients will receive their Thanksgiving baskets on Monday, November 24th from 11:00 AM to 12:00 PM at Saves. So that's a very important day. Make sure you let our seniors know about that. Our Saves family clients will receive their bat Thanksgiving baskets on Tuesday, November 25th from 11:00 AM to 12:00 PM at Saves. Also, kick off the holiday season at the Tree Lighting Ceremony on Tuesday, December 2nd at Posnyslan Square. Festivities will begin at 4:00 PM with official tree lighting being at 4:45 just before our council meeting. So get here early, please. Jolly Holiday. Experience the magic of the season of Jolly Holiday on Saturday, December 6th from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Enjoy snow tubing, photos with Santa, Mrs. Claus, and the Grinch. Plus holiday gifts, live music, and family fun for all ages. I'm really looking forward to Posnyslan Square. Carrie said it'll be bigger and brighter this year, so we're looking forward to it. And that's it.
Okay, great. And boy, this year has gone by fast, hasn't it? My goodness. All right, after the city manager report, we have item number eight, which is non-agenda public comments. Now is a time for public participation in non-agenda items.
We have Denise. Denise Latanzi.
Hi, I'm here to talk to you guys tonight about something that is dear to my heart and hopefully will help raise some awareness here. Mid-October 2019, my husband got really sick. It lasted for several weeks. He was in and out of the ER, constantly misdiagnosed. On November 13th, 2019, he was finally admitted into AV Hospital ER. And within an hour, we had a diagnosis of severe valley fever, fever. I have a page here from the California Public Health Campaign that is really inadequate. And I'll tell you why. It describes valley fever as a respiratory virus, a respiratory, it's a fungal infection that attacks your lungs. But it's so, so much more than that. It can cause a lot of symptoms. In my husband's case, by the time it was caught, it had disseminated into his brain, causing fungal meningitis, which is almost always deadly. So there are some other symptoms. I've helped Lancaster build a public awareness campaign. We do a thing in Lancaster's magazine and hopefully I'll be able to talk you guys into thinking about doing one too. Following symptoms, severe chronic fatigue, cough, sometimes bloody, fever and chills, shortness of breath, headaches, sometimes severe, night sweats, muscling, joint pain or rash. The rash will be on the upper body or the legs. It's really important that if you have any of these symptoms for more than a week or two, that you speak to your physician. If you've gone to the hospital more than once with pneumonia-type symptoms and there's no corresponding elevated white blood cell count, it's super, super important that people ask to be tested for valley fever. Talk to your doctor about it and ask for the testing, which can be ridiculously hard to get up here. Valley fever is endemic to the inlet valley. Certain weather conditions can make it significantly worse or you get more sick people. People die up here every year from valley fever. Hundreds of people are hospitalized in the AV for valley fever. Once you're hospitalized, you have about a 20% chance of dying. Now, my husband's case, he made it through after about a year of rehab, 39 days on a ventilator in the ICU, I should add, at AV Hospital. So it's kind of a miracle he's still with us. He's one of the 2%. So it's really important that people know about it. This is valley fever season. This is the time of most valley fever infections. So hopefully you guys will just educate residents. It's not about, I've had people say before that you have to be anti-development and be, you know, and cause awareness, but it actually has nothing to do with development. It's endemic. It's in our soil. It's very dusty here when the wind blows. And so it's here. We're going to breathe it in and people need to know. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for the information. I appreciate it.
I'm going to call off several names. Eugene Hernandez, Shandell Rosa, Jason Zink, can you please line up at the podium? Michael Ross, Mark Modonato, Roger Soderstadt, Yuga Vargas.
I think a lot of those people left.
Very, very often. And this past month was Hispanic Heritage Month. And I offered many suggestions for the head librarian for books that I felt were more relevant than the ones that were being shown there. And I was surprised because I got in touch with a famous author who lives up north. And she said that she, you know, would come down here for $125. And I thought that was pretty, pretty neat. So I asked the librarian, can we do that? And he says, no, we don't pay anything. So I find that very strange with 43% of the population here in Palmdale is Latino. And we are able to give $300,000 to these wealthy white men, businessmen for AV Edge. But we can't give $125 for an author to come here and speak. It's really, I think that's pretty racist, the city not be able to do that. And I think that we've got to get our values straightened out and what we, what we value and what we don't. And one thing we don't is, to me, is the AV Edge. Wealthy white businessmen from Palmdale giving $100,000, I mean, $300,000 here. $300,000 in Lancaster, what do they do with the money? Does it help our community at all? Thank you.
Thank you.
Bishop and Lois's seats are illegal according to the Voting Act, what the Shankman said, right? So they shouldn't be able to be on the city council. Also, you know, leverage city funds. That's what investors do. They leverage their money. So leverage city funds. you know, leverage city funds. That's what investors do. They leverage their money. So leverage city funds with grants. That's all you got to do. It's so simple. Funnel money through the Palmdale City Foundation to these groups that don't have the 501(c)(3). Push back on the fire districts. They didn't have the aqueduct in the map. They have old data. All those hills behind the aqueduct, they don't even have no forest, they don't have no trees or anything. It's just sagebrush. There are very few even Joshua trees. Push back. Have Laki and Correo and Valderas introduce a bill. How many bills are they introduced for the city? How many bills have you asked them to do? Have you done a workforce development? Have you done Antelope Valley to have its own economic state district, CERF? Have you done for us to have our own conservation district, our own conservancy? So we're on par with the rest of the state of California, our region? Have you talked to them? They only got until the end of this month to introduce the bills. They always do things for small businesses. I mean, yeah, like the storage units and stuff like that. What are they doing for Palmdale and Antelope Valley? What else? Push back, you guys. Push back. Stop accepting everything from the state. Get other cities involved with the pushback of what the state is doing to equality of life here. But I want to talk about what's really dear to me. You guys might as well took a knife and stabbed me in the heart and kicked me in the gut. You guys allowed Palmdale Waterditch to be destroyed. Not only did they destroy it, they took all the landscaping, the desert habitat along it and destroyed it. And you guys know, I sent you emails, all of you and the staff, about protecting that area along Barrel Springs Trail to keep it open so that there'd be water running to make that a magical thing. That was one of the most magical things we had in Palmdale, was Barrel Springs Trail and the water going underneath it. And you guys allowed it on your time, your district, Andrea. Might as well just burn up Palmdale Schoolhouse. Get a bulldozer and go down and push over all the cemetery plots in Palmdale Cemetery. You guys do not deserve to be City Council members. You guys allowed a treasure, landmark to be destroyed. So wrong. I don't know how you look yourself in the mirror.
Hello. I just want to say thank you for that information on the valley fever thing. I've known a few people who have gotten it and it's horrible. So I just have a couple of things. One is, last time I was here, I asked for the rules of how we conduct the business here. I actually have a copy of the Brown Act that I'm studying, but I would like to know, because I know it doesn't necessarily always... They're not always the same. I understand there's another... Yeah, there's some other thing you're using. I would like to get that so we can make, you know, so we know the rules. One of the things that's important to us is Palmdale Freedom Coalition. You know, we've been called so many things. People just don't understand who we are and what we're about. What we're about really is getting the people's voice heard. And we understand that there's a big responsibility for that. It's not just coming here and yelling at you guys. And I will just ask right now for forgiveness anytime I've stepped over the line. I get passionate, but I have decided I'm not going to do that anymore. I'm going to do my best, let's put it that way. Notice how he did not yell tonight at all. But what I would like to say is, we're about, we understand there's a responsibility that we have to serve our community. And there's lots of ways to serve the community. You go out and do picking up trash, things like that. But we've chosen that what we want to do is be a voice in our community. And part of PFC's rule is, we vote on everything in our group. And if the leadership says we believe this and that and everyone votes against it, that's the way it is. And we'll back them 100% on whatever it is that they, that our group, because they're our voice, not Rich, not me. The people is the voice of PFC, the people that come there every week. We've had meetings every Wednesday for the last four years with the exception of three Wednesdays. That's a serious commitment. And there's always a good number of people there, okay? So my point is, is that we are willing to do the work if you'll give us the work. We'll back you up. You're talking about you need somebody to go and find out these things about... We are research hounds. You can give us something and we will do it and we'll do it in a nonpartisan way, whatever it is, whatever, however the dice roll out. We will do that. So what I'm asking you is, use us as a community to do things. You guys know, my wife and I, we did that Christmas thing. We just stepped up and did it, and that's how we got engaged, and we want to promote more of that in the community. So use us. We're willing to do it. Thank you.
Yeah, ditto everything Mike just said. Couple of things real quick. First, at the beginning of this meeting, we had a moment of silence, but Austin, forgive me, but you didn't articulate who the moment of silence was for. I assume it was for military and first responders. I'd also like to suggest that tonight's maybe was for the Toronto Blue Jays. That's just me. Wanted to get in earlier. I want to say thank you for a couple of things. Recently, I was afforded the honor of doing a painting for our sister city in Pozzatlan, Mexico. And I, you know, I, there's a lot of people in Palmdale that might have been able to do that. I was asked to do it. It was an honor. So thank you to the folks who were responsible for that. I think mostly it was Christina Raga-Sines. So that's good. The other thing is, I want to know if there's another way to bring an agenda item to the agenda other than a council person doing it, because there are times when there are things that we want done or at least addressed. And it seems like it's hard to get anybody up here to talk about it. Now, sometimes it's because you guys got a lot of things, other things that are, you know, needing to be dealt with, and I get that. But I would hope that there's a way for citizens to say, hey, look, this is something that needs to be put on the agenda and not have to wait to get, you know, your permission for it, if you see what I mean. If there's another avenue that that could happen through, I think that would be a good thing. And it kind of fits with the message that we've been giving all along, which is, we're the ones in charge, all right? And that's no disrespect to any of you guys. I know you put a lot of time and effort into this, but the way our system works, we're the ones who are sovereign. You guys are supposed to be representing, okay? So I think that if it's a situation where only a council member can get something on the agenda, that's not exactly serving the people as best as you can. So just something to consider. And then the last thing I want to say is, you know, you guys know that there's been some, pardon the use of the term tonight, some fireworks lately. Eric, I sincerely want to thank you for coming out after the last meeting and speaking to us and the things that you said. And for, it was mentioned that he was invited to our meeting. I want to set that record straight. He asked if he could come to our meeting, which I think means more to me. So thank you for that. We will see you tomorrow night. And I will put it out here publicly. Our people have been told, be respectful, treat you with consideration. And, you know, our behavior is important there. So come on and speak. You will be asked questions and some of them might be hard, but we've already talked about that. So thank you for agreeing to do that. That's all I got. Thank you guys very much.
Next speaker?
It's growing up very tall. I didn't hear about my sidewalks. At the last council meeting, I asked to hear about the sidewalks, where they're being built right now. Is there a map someplace? And I never heard. So I would like to hear, because I really want my sidewalks. This message is from one of the Elks that had to leave. It concerns the fireworks booth. They want you to make sure that any paper, anything that's written down about the fireworks, that there is a designation between safe and sane fireworks and fireworks/illegal fireworks. That they are not just all called fireworks. I think in some of the paperwork, that it was designated as a general category for both safe and sane and for illegal fireworks. So please, they want you to make sure that that is done. Veterans Day is coming. I want everybody to know on actual Veterans Day at 10 o'clock at both entrances into, to the amphitheatre, there will be an archway where citizens can give tokens to veterans as they come through. Both sides of the amphitheatre. The veterans will hold back and come through and citizens will be given tokens if they want to hand those out in that kind of a celebration of it being Veterans Day and, of course, the last time with the amphitheatre. Laura and I and Mr. Austin, we went to the breast cancer at the amphitheatre and it was a really good turnout. It was a beautiful day, a lot of people, a lot of walking. Next year, we want to promote caregivers a little bit more than they have been. My sister has been by my side since literally the moment I found out I had cancer. 21 years we've been together in this battle, so... But it was a beautiful day, wonderful day. And just so you know, you may want to write this down for the next council meeting on the 18th. Okay, it's very important that that is Mickey Mouse's birthday. The 18th is Mickey Mouse's birthday on the 18th, so maybe we can close or open or something. Anyway, thank you.
Next speaker?
Hello, family. This is my first meeting ever. It's hilarious. It's tearful, you know. God bless you and your husband. My name is Patrice Rivers and I'm here on Enhancing Forward Action and Equipment Community Glee Club. It's the 15th Annual Gift for Thanksgiving Benefit Concert and Food Drive. By the way, I recognized all of you when I voted, okay, to put you there. Yay! Anyway, I'm a little nervous. I'm a transplant from Washington DC. But I'm here on behalf of my friend Sabrina Wiggins. Let's see. Anyway, she needs some help from you guys. She said last year alone, we distributed over 15,000 non-perishable food items, 125 turkeys, and dozens of backpacks and push carts to the homeless and low-income families. This year, our goal has grown to 16,025 food items and 150 turkeys. However, this year has been especially hard. Many partners who've once helped us are struggling themselves. You know, there's no food stamps. You know, so anyway, you guys should have a packet because I gave them to your lady here. And I think you guys know Ms. Wiggins very well. So we're begging. And I met Sabrina because Sabrina used to be my grandson's daycare provider in Lake LA. I thought it was a lake there. That's why I moved there.
There used to be.
Yeah, I know the story. My neighbors... Anyway, I'm happy to be here and I applaud you all for everybody that's here that you're listening to. And I know that you're going to do right by this community. I believe that. Also, I was listening to you on that (c)(3), you know, 501(c)(3). And I worked with them down in LA. All the suggestions that were given tonight, I watched them do that with Community Coalition and some other nonprofits. God, we've been to the prisons and Chowchilla and CCW to get the lower offenders to vote, unlock the vote. So it's a lot of work that you guys have to do. Just be prepared and be open-minded to helping the nonprofits and everybody else with the agenda.
Thank you. It was very nice to meet you. Thank you for coming to our meeting and waiting till the end. Next speaker?
No further speaker cards.
Okay, so real quick, Rich, I know I'm not supposed to respond, but I'm going to. You think, I think we've come a long way about getting things on the agenda. In the past, only the mayor could put things on the agenda. For four years, I could get nothing on the agenda. It was ridiculous. Now, at least, we can all make suggestions of what goes on the agenda. But if you guys have something that you want on the agenda, you can reach out to any of us personally, call me. You guys have my phone number. Call your, whatever council person you want to talk to, and we will talk to the City Manager and to see if it's appropriate to put it on the agenda. So, and then, Michael, can you come up and get this? This is the government code that you were asking for with the Brown Act. I wrote it down for you. I don't... I hope you can read my chicken scratch.
I can.
Okay, all right. And Marcia, we will certainly remember November 18th.
And I believe Rosenberg's Rules of Order and our council policies are on our website.
I'm losing my voice.
It's Rosenberg's Rules of Order, which is what the council adopted. Those are an attachment to our council code of conduct and those documents are all available on our website. On the city website, on the council page, I believe. And then, do we introduce a motion to extend the meeting beyond 10:30?
Yes, sir. I'll make the motion.
Second?
Motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, we're going to carry on. So does council have anything they want to respond to before we move on? No, we're good. I'm sorry.
I'll be brief, because is this council report time or...
Well, I was going to get there. I just wanted to make sure nobody wanted to respond back to the commentators. All right, so let's go on to... Sorry, I'm losing my voice. Item number nine, council reports, announcements, and requests for future agenda items. Thank you. Mr. Loa?
Okay, I'm not requesting any future agenda items. I should, but I'm not. And I just want to add to the memorandum that's been filed with the clerk that on October 8th, I attended the Palmdale Sheriff's Boosters Meeting, as I will in the morning again. And on October 20th, I did go to the NCTC in Santa Fe City Hall. And then, on October 23rd, the Antelope Valley Fair JPA Board Meeting was canceled due to electrical... They had a problem with power.
Yeah.
From medicine, so it got canceled for that reason. So I did not, obviously none of us did. So that should not be in my... That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Olson?
Most of what I did here is just like business-related. One of the things I want to highlight was on October 4th, the Mental Health Awareness Day Walk. That was a fantastic event, well-attended. And other than that, I just want to say, like, the reason I invited myself to your meeting is because, you know, we can argue and feud and all of that stuff, but let's do it out there. The way that this meeting ran tonight is the way that it should go always. People, developers, you know, lots of interest in the community. If they're peeking into what we're doing and we're just fighting and they back off, that's going to hurt the city. That's going to hurt everybody. So I, you know what, I'm going to attend that meeting, ask your questions. I'll be ready. If you want to feud with me still, let's do it there. Let's do it online. Let's do it in the ballot box. But let's keep these meetings the way it was tonight. This was great.
This was good. Thank you, everybody. My informational report has been filed, so you guys can review it. It's part of the council packet.
All right. My report's been filed as well, but I'll go over a couple of things. I guess my main takeaway tonight is that I'd better get a grocery store built in my city. I want to get re-elected because there's a shortage of grocery stores in District 1.
I have tempted to open my own.
But on a more serious note, to piggyback on Councilmember Olson, I think tonight, I think there was a lot of progress and healing made tonight. I really respect the amount of discussion that was had between members of the public, this council, and I respect the work that staff has patiently put in. Nights like this remind me of why I got into public service, and I appreciate... And I appreciate some of the people that came up to me on the break and said, good job tonight. You guys are doing a lot better. The positive feedback is, is very appreciative, appreciated because we don't get a lot of it.
No, we don't.
But tonight was good. There was healing. There's mending. People are putting aside personal differences and we're focusing on the facts and what we can do to make the city a better place. And for that, I'm, I'm really proud to be a part of that and proud to be a part of this city, of this council and part of this community. A couple of things that were really awesome is the Palmdale Pumpkin Palooza. I attended the grand opening and that was really well attended. A lot of people had a good time. It's right there off the freeway, right by the auto dealers. And we're going to be having more events there, I've been told. So that's become kind of a new thing that the, that our econ dev department's been working on. The kaleidoscope was great. We had it groundbreaking for AS Aerospace, which is a new 100,000 square foot facility, which will bring around 150 good paying jobs. And what's really cool about that company is it's just not making the fasteners and the nuts and bolts for just defense contractors, just for the, the defense aircraft, but that's for all aircraft. So Boeings, commercial aircraft, Cessnas, all that kind of, all that kind of hardware. From defense all the way down to commercial, this company will be making right here in Palmdale. So, and there's Boeing airplanes flying around the, flying around the globe. That's going to be fasteners and nuts and bolts that were manufactured and made right here in Palmdale. So it's a very exciting company that's coming into, to the city. I attended some World Series watch parties with the, with the staff at the Holiday Inn. That was great. And we had the, I attended with Mayor Proton Betancourt, the Making Strides Breast Cancer Walk, where Marcia's gone, but Marcia was generous enough to give me her Mickey Mouse pin for the day because I didn't, I didn't have, I didn't have the pink on. I showed up with no pink and then she gave me her, her Mickey Mouse pin, which was very special. I appreciate that.
So at the Pumpkin Palooza, I took my grandkids. I actually got on a mechanical bull.
What?
The bull was not moving. I'm not going to lie. But there's a picture of me going woo. The bull was not moving. I have a bad spine, so I can't. But it was, the grandkids got a kick out of it. They, they saw grandma riding the bull. So it was a lot of fun. They had a petting zoo. They had horseback riding. They had pumpkins and pumpkin painting. And if you didn't get a chance to go out there this year, I hope you guys catch it next year. It was really nice. Sorry, Andrea?
Oh, my report is filed.
Okay. All right. So with that, we'll go into closed session.
We, we need a report. And then we need public comment on a closed session.
Oh, we do?
Yep.
Oh, wait, don't leave yet. Anybody want to make public comment on our closed session?
No speaker cards on this section.
All right. See, no, closed, public comments on a closed session. And then we'll adjourn to closed session.
Okay, but, so you can make your statement, but I did want to say a few things. So I don't know if it goes before or after, but go ahead.
We have, tonight, we have two items on closed session, 10.1 and 10.2. And for 10.2, Councilmember Alarcon, since you're a litigant in the case, I'm going to ask if you would recuse yourself.
I can't hear you.
So for 10.2, since you are litigant in the case, we are going to ask you to recuse yourself from 10.2.
Okay. So I just want to say a couple of things. The AV Press published an article about the case and I don't know that it, from my perspective, painted a full picture of what the essence of this case is about. I tried every way possible. I didn't, I don't take this lightly. I tried every way possible to get these records. I, I submitted a request as a council member internally. I was then directed by our then city attorney to submit a public records request. I did that as well. And then I had to subsequently file a second public records request through my attorney. Three records requests were denied outright without any justification. I was left with no, no option but to then file suit. Didn't want to do it, but we have a fiduciary. I believe that we as council members have a fiduciary responsibility to know what we are appropriating. And, and as council members, we, one of our primary functions is to approve the city budget, which includes appropriations for our city attorney. How can we do that if we don't know what the city attorney is billing for? So I thought it was, it was necessary to, to disclose those and to review those records. Unfortunately, I was not afforded the opportunity to, which is why the lawsuit was filed. After over a year of litigation, very costly litigation, by the way, over 100,000 of dollars of legal fees that have accrued over the course of this past year, the court just recently ruled and issued an order that I win in part and/or directed the city to produce certain records, certain billable records to me. And so that's great. It's wonderful. There's still more to be done because that was a victory in part. But what, what that signifies is that under California law, even a partial victory mandates the public entity to pay the plaintiff's attorney's fees. Don't want to do any of this, but what, we shouldn't have gotten here to begin with. I think as a council member, when we've got, a part of our role is to approve the city budget and we ask a question, this is not just about me. I know that there are other council members. Councilmember Olson's requested certain documents and, and been denied access to those documents. I think we as, as leaders and representatives that have a role in voting and appropriating funds, we should be afforded the access to the information. We shouldn't have to resort to lawsuits and litigation in order for those documents to be disclosed. So yes, I will get some of those documents and I, and I will gladly review those documents. But because it was only a partial victory, now I've got to appeal. And we've already filed the appeal. And so that's just more, more fees. So this is all going to be on the city's dime and it should never have been there to begin with. The, this battle over disclosure of public records, I think really has fractured our council. And I think if we can just resolve this and just disclose the records, just release the records, we can start to heal and we can start to do the city's business more unified and I think more on a more informed platform than we have been. So I just, I hope that as you guys go into closed session, you guys take that into consideration. I don't want to pursue this, but I have to. We, we should be, as council members, afforded the opportunity to review all records that pertain to budgetary appropriations when we're, when we're required to vote on that budget. So I would hope that, that you guys, you know, consider all of those things as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your clarification on that, Andrea. I appreciate it. Everyone ready to go back? Order, I think we have item number 11, announcement by city attorney. No?
Hello. Okay, there we go. Good night. And for item number 10.1, we had no reportable action. As well as for item 10.2, there was no reportable action.
Thank you. And with that, we'll go to item number 12, adjournment. We will adjourn this meeting to December 2nd, 2025 at 5:00 PM, right here at City Hall. We'll see you guys then. The end. Good night.